Ah, okay, let me, uh, I've been told I should repeat the introductions. So I'm opening this regular Grand County Commission meeting at four P M on October first. Present are Commissioners Evan Clapper, Bill Winfield, Trisha Dean, Mike McCurdy, Mary McGann, and myself, Jacques Hadler. We also have our clerk, Gabriel Waitek, our attorney, Stephen Stocks, and our county, our, our associate county administrator, Quinn Hall. Uh, we've just done pledge of allegiance and we will now move to citizens to be heard. I will open, uh, this session. We will also have a citizens to be heard section at six o'clock. And we also have a public hearing today. If you're here to make comment about, this is a little confusing. There's two different land use code changes on the agenda. One is an action item that results from last week's, um, uh, last week's public hearing and another is for a new public hearing. So if you're here, um, to make comment about anything other than the public hearing for the new land use code items on the agenda, uh, then please come forward. Anyone here in the room would like to make public comment, raise your hand and I'll call you. David?
This might not be the best time for this, but you're, if you're confused, I'm twice as confused.
You're, I'm sure you're good, Dave. And introduce yourself, please.
Dave Cousins.
Thanks.
I represent a family of six people who own about a hundred twenty acres between here and Lionsback. I've owned it for sixty years, had plans to turn it into a subdivision like Cana Heights, were prevented from that by the illness of my dad in nineteen seventy-three. And, uh, just never did financially recover from that enough to do what we wanted to do. I know that several, s- s- certain people I know live in Cana Heights who want to make sure I can't ever do what I want to do with my land. Uh, I present that. Proposed zone change is designed to surrender half the undeveloped land surface of this locale to the whims of national environmental organizations. Coupled with massive tax increases and the county's ability to confiscate land that owners are unable to pay said tax are not legitimate priorities. They are oppressive blatant attempts to forcibly expel longtime residents and workers who every one of you are indebted to for their very land and infrastructure used daily to here to exist. Do your job, repudiate outside interests, serve your constituents. I actually started in the middle by letter. Neither I nor my family feel represented by this council. Two members of seven who do not swear allegiance to a militant nonprofit that seeks and in many ways is now exerting authority over the landmass of this county is not at all representative of the wishes of a proportionate percentage of its citizens. There are many serious issues residents of our county are faced with. Currently, many, probably a majority of citizens are extremely concerned that most of you in leadership are in open defiance of the governing entity that authorized this county to exist. This situation needs to be remedied immediately and should be priority one. The next glaring problem is that of flooding. Sustainable, are any of you familiar with the term sustainable or the meaning of it? I hear that so much, it's used against me every day. Plan must be formulated ASAP and then implemented to mitigate recent floods and limit the harm done by future events. Nothing should be considered that doesn't address those two demand letters. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Um, anyone else here in the chamber who'd like to come forward and make comment? Anyone else comment? Anybody on Zoom who's here to make comment? Okay, uh, yes, yes, sir.
We'll have comments again at six o'clock.
We'll have comments at six o'clock. Yeah, you got it. Okay, um, then, let's see, we are finished with our first citizens to be heard session. So we will move on. We have two presentations today and, uh, we're gonna, I'm gonna reverse the order. So I'm gonna start with our legislative session preview. And, uh, to present that on Zoom, we have our, uh, Grand County lobbyist, Cody Stewart. So I will turn it over to you, Cody, to get started with this. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Hadler. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can hear you great, Cody. Thank you.
Great, great. Well, thanks again for the opportunity and I apologize for not being in person. I always prefer to do so, but sometimes you get caught up here and, uh, near the Capitol and hard to get down there. Um, I, I just want to take a few minutes. The Commissioners asked me to come and present a preview of some of the items that I think would be of interest in this upcoming legislative session. Um, I think there are a number of items that will be of direct relevance to, to the county and its citizens. So, uh, I, I plan to take a few minutes, but I, I will also leave some time at the end to answer any questions you may have. Although as I go, if there are some things you want me to pause and elaborate on further or to explore, don't hesitate to, to, to pause and interrupt me. I'm, I'm happy to, to have this be a dialogue. So first, just by a quick wave of introduction, again, I know most of you, although the way that, uh, the interactions with the county has, has developed over the last couple of years, uh, my, most of my time is, is with, uh, three of you, Commissioner Hadler, Mary McGann, and, and Bill Winfield. Um, a- and I, I really enjoy the opportunity to work with the three of you. I, I think that, uh, whether it's formal or informal, that has kind of become the ad hoc legislative team for the county. And so again, I, I have quite a bit of chance to speak with you three, but the other Commissioners not so much. And I do regret that. Um, although with that said, it, it, it would be hard to have, um, you know, one-off conversations with all of you. So I do think it is important to have a, a, a process by which you do inter- interact with, with me and my lobbying efforts, just to make sure that I am getting one, one voice, one message, and that is a consistent, uh, one that, that really reflects the views of, of the commission itself. So, uh, anyway, I, I do hope if, if there are other Commissioners that I don't interact with as much, if you do, if you would like to reach out or if you're ever gonna be up this way, please let me know and I'd be happy to, uh, get you plugged in. Uh, in the last few months, I've had the chance to, uh, work with the, the commission on, on a few items before the state legislature. Um, you probably saw, uh, our two Commissioners as they testified before several committees in the last few weeks, actually, uh, related to the audit and a few other items. Um, I'm not gonna spend too much time on that, although if you want to discuss that further, we, we certainly can. Really what I would emphasize today is, uh, preparing for next session. Uh, I know that Utah, like a lot of states, has a part-time legislature, which means that it only meets for a portion of the year. Uh, so there's three months of the year where, where really things are busy, January, February, March. And, uh, but, but with that said, we, we can't only interact with them during those months. If we do that, we're too late. We've missed the opportunity to really be in- influential and involved in the process. And so one of my key takeaways today is to encourage you that if, if there are some proactive legislative items you would like me to consider to, to run on behalf of the county this upcoming session, uh, then we probably need to start planning that now. Actually, I shouldn't say probably, we do need to start planning that now. Um, we, we have about three months before the session starts, a little over three months. It's that third, third week of January. Uh, so we have some time, uh, but again, if there are ideas or things you want us to, uh, include in legislation, we need to be reaching out to our legislators, uh, now, literally this week, next week, and through the month of October. Um, maybe to, to help set the stage, it's, it's a good reminder to, to identify the current makeup of the legislature. Uh, as you, as you, those of you listening probably know, um, going into this November, Republicans control about sixty-one of the seventy-five House seats and twenty-three of the twenty-nine Senate seats. And that's unlikely to change much. There may be a few numbers that change here or there. Um, but the point of that is that just being stating the obvious, so the risk of stating the obvious, we have, uh, the Utah Legislature is a very conservative-leaning legislature. So this means that in order for us to be successful, we have to acknowledge that fact. And, and we, I think we have to, as we come to them with ideas or proposals or suggestions, know where they're coming from. Doesn't mean we have to agree, doesn't mean that we have to be in alignment with them. But, but you, I think it, we, we do ourselves a disservice if we don't acknowledge the legislative body. And, and the fact of the matter is, in the state of Utah, uh, I, I've worked, I've worked in the governor's office, I worked at the federal legislature, but the Utah governance model, um, is, is very much a legislative-centric governance model. By that, I mean, the legislature largely dictates the agenda, the legislature largely dictates the priorities, the legislature largely dictates, uh, what happens on the policy front. And so I, I just wanted to start with that, is that, you know, let's, let's be honest with the, the body with which we would need to work. And, and there certainly are some ramifications, uh, given, um, you know, the, the very conservative-leaning nature of that body. As I, I actually had a lunch today with a legislator and I was asking, um, this legislator, what were some, some of the, the items they see coming on the horizon, some of the big issue? And, and I know every, every legislator may give you a different perspective, but this legislator's response was, uh, housing's gonna be an issue, energy is gonna be an issue, um, public lands al- always is an issue in this legislature, uh, homelessness, uh, education. Um, also said that, uh, you know, there's gonna be some interesting potential considerations of initiatives based on the state Supreme Court's recent decision and some of the other ramifications of that and future Supreme Court decisions on the initiative process. So that there's some speculation that will probably be addressed in this session. Um, o- over the, over the last year or so, as I've talked with the council member or commission members, um, what I've been told is our priorities from, from the county perspective, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of specific ones. Maybe if I had to describe them in buckets, it'd be, um, tourism, kind of any tourism-related legislation. Housing is another one, is a obvious, obvious concern to the, to the commission. You know, water, and, and I think childcare was, was one that we have talked about. I'm not sure if that's still as much on the radar, but those were the, the four kind of general area issues that have been flagged to me in the past. And I'd love to hear from the commission if, if those are still the, the priorities or if that would change. At the federal level, I, I think, you know, national parks clearly are of concern, public lands are of concern, um, and of specific concern to the commission is, uh, the UMTRA uh, efforts. And I know Commissioner McGann has been working on that for, for a long, long time. On that point, let me just pause for a minute to, to reiterate, um, as of, as, even as, as recently as this week, uh, Representative John Curtis, who's very likely to be Senator John Curtis, um, has, has informed me that they are very willing and anxious to work with us on federal legislation on that front. And that they actually have some draft language they would like for us to review, which I, which I have and I'll get to you is, is, you know, after this meeting or in the coming days. But that's one where at the federal level, which I, I don't do as much for the, for the county, but that's certainly an area where I would like to be helpful if that's an area you want me to focus. So those are the, kind of the key areas that I think the legislature is going to address this session. Um, I, I guess maybe a couple of quick recommendations or thoughts for you to consider, and then we can delve into a strategy or at least I can get some feedback. Um, given the fact that Grand County is, um, rural and, and a smaller population, this is true for all rural counties and those that are far from the Capitol, it's often easy to get overlooked. You know, the politicians follow where the population is. And so Salt Lake County, Utah County, Davis County, Washington County, Weber County, those counties get a lot of consideration and focus because they have a lot of representatives. Um, it's southeast corner of the state, does not have a lot of representation, so it's often hard for us to have our voice heard. Um, the way to remedy that is through coalitions, through partnerships. And, and the best way I would suggest is to really bolster our relationship and engagement with UAC. UAC is a very effective entity, they're a very well-respected entity, and, uh, they, they are able to bring together, uh, coalitions and groups of counties that can get things across the finish line that we probably can't do on our own. So that'd be one of my first recommendations, really, I think that, that Grand County needs to do everything it can to be a part of, an active part of UAC. Um, and engage with them and use them as a vehicle to help us amplify our vo- voice and concerns. And that's not a short-term thing. That's not something that will happen next month, this year, next year, but I think it's a, it's a long-term strategy where I just think that Grand County's got to realize for us to be effective, we need to really closely work with them. Um, again, the second point, I, I kind of hinted at this earlier, is, is to recognize that because Utah is a legislative-dominant form of govern- governance, um, the legislature has a lot of power and leverage and they can make decisions and, and pass bills that have some real-life impacts on the citizens of Grand County. Um, and so I think we just need to be, be cognizant of that and, and do what we can to, when, when actions are taken, uh, at the county level, be very cautious and, and thoughtful about how that will be perceived at, at the state legislature. And, and, and I, I want to be careful there. I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job. You're elected by the citizens to do what, what you're doing. But I do think it's, it's my job as your lobbyists to tell you that you do need to be cognizant of how you are perceived by the legislature. That perception is based on, some things are not entirely true, um, but we need to be worried and concerned about that perception and, and just be very thoughtful about statements and actions and decisions that are made at the county level, um, how they'll be perceived at the legislature, because that will reflect back on how influential we can be at the legislator and, and the legislature. Um, and the last thing would be too, I, I do think, uh, the governor's office is one that, that would be, is open and receptive. They, they very much are on the lookout to help rural counties. I do know this governor's office cares a lot about tourism, economic development. And so I do think we have a friend and an ally in the governor's office, uh, and so let's utilize that as much as we can. So I, I, I feel I've already spoken a little too long. Uh, let me pause there and see if there are any questions or feedback so far.
Thanks, Mary. Use your microphone.
Oh, thank you. Use my microphone. Uh, and oh, good, Cora just walked in. We had a meeting today, I think one of our br- big priorities besides the housing, tourism. I'm assuming when you meant water was enough and quality, but we're also, what's risen to a high level is the flooding issues in our county. Uh, I might ask Cora to help with this, but one, uh, one of the things that was mentioned in a meeting we had today was that, uh, emergency, the fund for, uh, dealing with emergencies in the count, uh, in the state is limited and hard to, uh, hard to access. Thank you. Yes, would you come up? So, and, uh, Cora can help you with this, but, uh, I, I think if we could have, yes, have some funds, go ahead, Cora.
Yeah, so Cody, uh, so Cora, you're speaking, Cody is our, our lobbyist, so he, uh, helps us work on issues upstate. And at a federal level, uh, Cody Cora is our emergency manager, so she's been dealing with a lot of the fallouts from the flooding.
Great.
Go ahead, Cora. It's a pleasure. Uh, yes, they're referring to the state disaster recovery restricted account. There is a limited pot of money in that account that is currently available after disasters, um, for the state to support areas like Grand County following a disaster like that with our floods. Uh, and that is available to support state assets like Utah.
Cor- Cor- Cora, is the, is the limitation, is the largest limitation, the amount of funds or is it Commissioner McGann's point about the ability to access those funds or the?
Yes. So, yes, the limited amount of funding. So I would love for you to encourage more funds to be placed into that account and then also decrease the restrictions for accessing that, those funds. And I, I'm su- certain that the Utah Division of Emergency Management would be able to assist you with that language.
Good.
Because you are lucky.
Uh, I'd be happy to, to follow you after and you can give me some more feedback and some more direction on this. Happy to pursue this further though.
Oh, that would be wonderful. Thank you so much.
I could forward you his phone number and I'll forward, uh, Cora's to you. So you'll recognize it when you see it.
Great. Thanks, Cora.
So that, I know that's, uh, one of the issues that we're facing, seem to be facing more and more, and would like, uh, more help from the state. It seems if we can find a way that, uh, we can get state funds after there's a disaster, uh, fire, flood, those have been the two that we have faced that have been very difficult for the county to handle. And yet we have not been able to access any state funding.
Yep. That's a good point, Mary. Thanks.
I'm trying to re- okay, go ahead.
Cody, I had just a couple of questions on that. So when you, uh, talked to Representative Curtis and we were talking about the federal legislation regarding the UMTRA site, I assume that would be after the new year with the new, with the new Congress that he's?
Y- y- yes, but that also is something worth talking about. Uh, uh, it is highly unlikely that we could get the bill, uh, passed this, this Congress. Um, but there is still time for it to be introduced, this Congress, which sometimes is not a bad thing, just to have it socialized, to get the bill out there, get people thinking about it, and then he could come back the following year, if he is a, a senator and introduce it in the Senate, the, the same bill, or use it, use the next few months as a chance to get feedback or revisions or thoughts on it. So that, that was one of the things we'll need to just discuss is if there's a, a reason to, to do it in the next few months before the, this Congress ends.
Okay, that's great. I know that's super important. And the other thing I was gonna ask you is you mentioned initiatives and I, I wanted you to, uh, elaborate a little bit on that. What did you mean by initiatives, like ballot initiatives or?
Yeah, y- y- you, you've probably seen the, the news stories about, you know, Amendment D and Amendment A.
Yes.
And the Supreme Court's kind of slapping the, the legislature's hands for, for the ways they went about, um, moving those forward. So, so what, at least th- this legislator today was saying, there, there may be some legislative effort to change the, the initiative process or make some tweaks. It didn't go in detail, but ju- just, at least as of right now, it may fade, you know, maybe by January, February, it'll be less of an issue. But right now, that is very much, uh, uh, an issue of concern for several legislators. And so, uh, there was speculation that it might be an issue that is addressed this upcoming session.
Thanks, Cody. Uh, Bill?
Yeah, Cody, I've been working on this centrally assessed for a couple of years now with UAC, but I definitely would like to keep a firm grip and an eye on what's going on this year. I know, um, Senator McKay is gonna be running some legislation, hopefully to help out the rural counties, especially on that issue. But if you keep that in mind as we move forward, and I know I will be following it as well, but several sets eyes are better than just one.
Sure, sure. And, and Bill, you, you did remind me, sorry, Commissioner, you reminded me, um, there, there also is some discussion of some TRT reforms, which I know is of great interest to the, the commission. Uh, I have not seen language yet and, and I'm not sure the scope, but that is one that that seems to be identified as, as some, some reforms and modifications to that, that formula.
Right, right. Yeah, that would certainly, yeah, anything TRT related would definitely be, uh, a lot of interest to us for sure, Cody. So, so going back, oh, does anyone else have any questions right now for Cody? So, so going back as far as, it, it is October and the legislative session's gonna be here in a couple of few months, uh, right around the corner. What, you, you did mention a few ways, but what would you, what do you think would be our best, um, putting our best foot forward as far as, uh, just getting in front of things, you know, continuing to, obviously, working through UAC that, you know, bills are UAC representative, and I think he does a, a really good job of staying in touch with UAC, but continued like, like we did last year, reaching out to certain, um, representatives and such, um, inviting them down to the county. What other things do you think might be a good way to, 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 good ways to go?
Yeah, I, I, I do think, uh, again, if, if there, if there are specific things you would like to see changed in state law, we, we need to identify those sooner rather than later. If, if, if we, if we want to be part of, you know, a broader effort, you know, this TRT effort, um, you know, if there's specific changes or ideas, and I, and I, we have discussed some of those already, but if, if those are things you actually want to see us push, um, this upcoming session, h- help me identify those, you know, kind of give me the official stamp of approval from, from the commission that these are the things you want me to work on. And then I can just start identifying the led, the let, key legislators, the groups to work with and so on. So a lot of it's just the planning and identification. Uh, so, a- a- and then also, I mean, there's, there's two, two legs to this. There's the proactive, the things you would like to see changed, we can be a part of. And then there's the defensive. And, and the defensive is hard, is, is probably even harder and that there are literally thousands of bills that are introduced. Um, they don't all go through the process, but this last session, about a thousand bills do. And, and so it's, it's hard to, to keep tabs on all of them, so that I, I do need some of your help too, to, to do that. And that if there are issues that you, you know, will be of concern to the, to the, to the county, uh, please help flag them. I, I try to do that as much as I can, but there are times where that I, I don't catch them all. I just don't know, I don't know enough on the ground that's happening in Grand County to know all the specific issues, where, whereas you do have that on-the-ground knowledge. So it's making sure we're communicating, making sure we're, we're having a, an appropriate back and forth. And, and, you know, I'll share with you the bills I think are of concern to the county and, and if you could do likewise with me.
Great, Cody. Well, one thing that I was thinking of and, and I, I just at the recent UAC, I had some conversations with a few other Commissioners in, in different counties as far as like the TRT goes, I suspect we'd have some allies in some of the other rural counties around Utah, especially ones that, that have a significant number of tourists coming through. As far as relating to folks from other counties, I know UAC's a good place for that, but is it also a good idea to, to, to have some direct relationships with folks who might be aligned with our views there?
Well, a- absolutely, a hundred, a hundred percent. I mean, it really, coalitions, partnerships, networks, that, that's what moves things up, up here. So, so absolutely, you, you need to have those. And so I encourage, um, that networking and identifying people who have, you know, similar views. And then let's just start talking about how we can work together and, you know, who, who's gonna take the lead, who's gonna, who's, which legislative we're gonna work with, et cetera.
Yeah. Anyone else have a question or, or a comment for Cody before, uh, we close up the presentation? All right, yeah, well, thanks, Cody. I, I definitely appreciate, uh, getting a, getting a head start on this and, and, um, we'll probably circle back as the legislative session gets closer and, uh...
And, and I'm happy to do this anytime. So whenever you want like a quick report, it can be, you know, two-minute reports if you want, or I can, however you want to do it, but let, let me know what I can do to communicate properly with, with all of you all.
Thanks. Cody's, uh, our, uh, county attorney, Stephen Stocks, has a, uh, had a comment or a question.
Hi, Cody. Um, I wanted to just remind you that you have the ability to reach out to the commission as a whole. Um, they've changed the, the open rules to allow you to be able to send an email to the commission. Because of the legislature changing so quickly, I think it would be helpful for the full commission to be able to get emails about some of these topics, because bills, as you know, change on a dime.
Yeah.
And being informed and aware, you know, but it's hard for us, I, I think for the com- the commission to go up to Salt Lake and attend and us showing up, finally thinking that we're on version three when we're on version fifteen. I think, and, and you know exactly what I mean, where, where there may have been points that change. So I, I probably would encourage you to reach out to the commission.
As a whole.
As a whole.
Okay.
And then send that out, because you never know which Commissioners may have an interest. I know, um...
Yeah, that's a really good point.
Different interests exist. So, yeah.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
No, that is a great suggestion. Appreciate it. All right, um, thanks, Cody. Yeah, appreciate it, man.
Thank you. Good luck. Talk to you later.
Bye-bye. All right, uh, so we are on to our second presentation today and that presentation is our, uh, audit report. And for that, I'm gonna turn it over to our clerk, our county clerk auditor, uh, Gabe Waitek.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll go ahead and turn it over to, uh, John Hatterley and Stephen Turvor from, uh, Larson and Company, uh, to prepare the issued financial statements that they prepared. I think we've got some hard copies to, to distribute amongst the commission and, um, I will give the floor to, to John and his guy to, to present. Thank you. Welcome, John.
Probably the most exciting thing you wanted to do today. Thanks for, uh, letting us crash your meeting for a few minutes and just talk about, talk about the audit and, and how it, how it ended up. Um, these were actually filed late last night, um, and kudos to, to Gabe. I know Gabe was a little bit stressed out yesterday, um, communicating back and forth with state auditor's office, with us, and staying late last night and, and getting everything submitted to the federal government. Um, so technically, the financial statements, as you guys know, are due to the, the, to the state auditor within a hundred and eighty days after year end, which would be June. Uh, but for, for me, the more critical deadline is the deadline to the federal government because of your federal expenditures. Uh, and that is, is always nine months after year end. So that, that was last night. So if, if you miss that deadline, then you can no longer be considered low-risk for at least the next two years, um, which really doesn't mean anything to you, it means a lot to us, because it, it means that we have to then cover significantly more of your federal expenditures, um, which in turn becomes more costly to the county, because we have to do a significant more test work over the federal expenditures. Uh, but then you also risk, you know, every agency that you get, um, federal funding from, they're looking for your financial statements and they want to make sure that they're on, they're done on time. And if you, and if you're not done on time and it's, it's kind of a consistent issue, then they'll just say, well, we're not gonna give you any more money. So it was a big deal that, that the financial statements were, were submitted last night, so I appreciate Gabe and, and I know that yesterday was not a fun day for him.[1788.24] And you guys aren't alone. I had three counties that I had to issue yesterday. So the the problems at Grand County are not Grand County's alone. There's there's multiple counties that have issues that are that they're working on, they're trying to get them fixed. And so yesterday was a busy day for me as well. Uh, to get to the results of the audit, so we'll just start with the audit report. I'll just give you an opinion, what what our opinions are, what we're giving an opinion on. And what our opinion means. If you want to turn to page one in the financial statements, this is the the audit report, and it always precedes the financial statements in every audit you look at. Whether it's a nonprofit, whether it's government, public, private, the audit report always precedes the financial statements. And the first section just outlines kind of the scope and our opinion. So our opinion is an unmodified opinion. That's a that's a clean opinion in 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 accountants geek talk. In that third paragraph, it just talks about the component units that we are not the auditors of. But our opinion, we have to rely on the opinion of other auditors. This is one of the reasons why the audit is late. And so as a county county commission group, I know I talk to you guys a lot, that UAC. We really put a lot of pressure on you guys as the governing body of the county to put pressure on the component units to have their stuff done before June thirtieth. I'm actually pushing the state auditor's office to have the component units due May thirtieth, which gives the counties a month to have their financial statements to you guys and then roll them up into your financial statements, because it does take time to then build them into the financial statements and and everything. And and, you know, part of the problem is is we run into every year is you you kind of get behind the eight ball where you're gonna have funds that are withheld from the state because you're late, because of component units. And then we're trying to produce a hundred page document in a very short amount of time, and and the stakes don't get caught. So um, that that would be my recommendation. So you can see that they can't, the the districts that we don't that we don't audit there. Basically, our opinion on those component units comes from their auditors. We rely on their auditors. We have to make sure that those auditors are are doing things appropriately as part of our test work. Second section is is the basis for our opinion, is just our standards that we have to follow, both generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards. Uh, the next section is your responsibilities for the financial statements. And and really, management of the county is is responsible for the fair presentation in the financial statement. So um, yes, we help prepare the financial statements, but in my perfect world, I would never draft a set of financial statements. It would be, you know, somebody on your staff or somebody that you hired to draft the financial statements. Because our scope as auditors is really, we break down the financial statements into the trial balance, and then we break that trial balance into individual accounts or individual transactions, and we're testing those individual transactions. So we're rolling, basically rolling up, saying, yes, balances that are reported in the financial statements are materially correct. That's the scope of our audit. But it makes it a lot nicer when I have a document that I can read and when I, while I'm doing my test work, or my guys are doing the test work. They can go to the debt schedule and they can say, look, our debt schedule ties to financial statements, all the documentation that we rolled up now ties to the financial statements. That's a perfect world scenario. Doesn't always happen that way. We we do draft a lot of financial statements. But just know that the responsibility of the financial statements lies on on the county. And then also, that second paragraph under that section, um, I think we talked a little bit about la- last year, and this is kind of a result of COVID. Nobody wanted to talk about how COVID was affecting your their organizations, and I know you as Grant County, where you have a lot of tourism. How barren it was during COVID. I mean, there wasn't a lot of people traveling and being able to get out. And luckily, in the state of Utah, most of our governments did very well. That wasn't the case outside of Utah, and a lot of small businesses didn't didn't survive. And but nobody want to talk about it in their financial statements. The people rely on your financial statements to lend you money, to to calculate your solvency, things like that. And 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 where people didn't want to disclose anything, then they relied on almost false information. Let money, and then people pull up shop, and then they're out. So requirements changed, standards changed to where now you as a county are required to look for conditions or events that arise during the year that would prohibit you from continuing as a going concern, or that are gonna detrimentally hurt the county financially within at least the next twelve months. And then the next section, you could look at our resp- our responsibilities. So we have to exercise professional judgment and professional skepticism. What that means and what I train my guys is 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 we have kind of a trust to verify attitude that you know, Gabe does an amazing job. I don't I don't think he recognized the growth that Gabe's had over the last probably year and a half. I think he came into this job here in the headlights, probably times ten. And so he's had a lot of growth, and he and he and he's trying really hard to do what he knows to be right. So we trust that Gabe's doing what's right, but it's our job to come in and verify and validate and make sure that what he's doing is accurate. We're looking for material misstatements. So like we say, we we break the balances down into, you know, individual trans- individual transactions, maybe certain groups of transactions. Checking to make sure the balances are are materially correct. Uh, I keep saying material, because we don't as auditors, we'd never go down to the nearest penny. It would be way too time consuming and costly for the county for us to look at every transaction that happens inside the county. I'm waiting for AI to kind of validate a lot of that. I think at some point, we're gonna see blockchain and AI that's gonna instantaneously validate transactions. But that's not gonna, I mean, I'm not worried about my job going away, because there's a lot more that goes into our audit rather than just validating transactions. So materiality, so every fund has its own materiality level based on the assets in that fund or based on the revenue of that fund. Then then we look at materiality, and so if our balances are off, maybe, you know, a little bit, then we look at materiality and say, well, yes, we understand that your financial statements may be off a little bit, but they're not, it's not a material difference, so therefore our opinion is still good. So we look at your internal controls. We don't give an opinion on your controls. That's a that's a whole separate type of audit. But we do make sure that you have controls in place over financial reporting and over compliance. The better your controls, the better your financial report. And and you can implement controls the day is long, but but if you're not gonna follow them at the end of the day and hold people accountable, then they're not doing you any good. Um, and for for those of you who have heard me speak at at UAC or or other trainings, that's kind of that's a lot of what I train on is internal controls and fraud fraud prevention. That's the that's the way that you as a county control things from from happening is is controlled. So we make sure that then we document your controls to make sure that they're functioning appropriately. We look at your accounting principles, make sure that you're doing it, make using accounting principles appropriately, especially the new ones that are always coming out. Uh, I think it's kind of job security for Gatsby at this point. Uh, I think there's a lot of changes that I don't necessarily agree with. But nevertheless, that's the rules, and so it makes it harder on Gabe to to try and keep up with things. And some of the rules are are a little bit ridiculous and and but but you kind of have to learn how to do it. And so we make sure that you're doing things right that way. And then that last bullet point is we also, you know, are audit, are looking for conditions or events that would affect your ability to continue as a going concern. The next couple of sections require supplementary information, so there are certain parts of the financial statements that are not considered part of the basic financial statements, and that's the MDNA. So the section Management Discussion Analysis, and that always precedes the basic financial statements. If you want to read about the financial statements, I would say the MDNA is a good place, because it's more language driven rather than numbers driven. So if you don't like to get in the weeds of the numbers, then the MDNA is very, a a good place to read. It's kind of like Reader's Digest version of what's in the financial statements. And then there's a section after the notes called Require Supplemental Information, and that contains budget schedules, and it contains the URS, tenure schedules of contributions, and your proportionate share of the net pension liability. Just remember that those those sections are required to be with the basic financial statements, but they're not audited sections. So those do not fall under our opinion. And then supplementary information, if you choose to include combining statements of non-major funds, which you do, that's information that you've chosen to include in the financial statements, as well as the federal single audit. That's supplementary information that's required by the federal government. That information always follows the opinion on the financial statements, which is unmodified. All right, so let's flip to the back real quick, move over the other opinions that we give. And if you have questions, feel free to stop me at any time. So now I'm on page eighty-one. So this report just outlines that we've done, performed your audit in accordance with government auditing standards. Part of those standards say that we look here at internal controls. We talked about that. What we are looking for are significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in control over financial reporting. Really that you don't have controls in place, or there's a control deficiency that you're not able to catch and correct mis- misstatements before we as the auditors do. That that is what designates a material weakness or or significant deficiency. But we didn't have any of those. So we'll move on to the next letter. So the next letter is the letter, the report that we're required to issue for the Utah State Auditor. Every year, they outline certain aspects of Utah State Code that they want to test your compliance with. Um, and they change sometimes, you know, year over year, they're the same. Sometimes they'll, I know every year they adjust them a little bit, and they'll remove some, they'll add some. And the the areas that we were required to complete this year are your compliance with budgetary compliance, making sure that your, all of your funds are within budget, the fund balance, compliance, justice courts, the fraud risk assessment, government fees, and restricted taxes. And we actually give an opinion on your compliance specifically to those areas, which is also an unmodified or an unqualified opinion that's a clean opinion. I always have to add the caveat that this is not a legal opinion. I will leave, we'll leave the legal stuff up to the attorney. Uh, we're not attorneys. But it's also not an opinion on the entirety of Utah State Code, so we're not looking at your compliance with every code possible in Utah Code. We're just looking very specifically at these areas. Um, once again, it kind of goes over your responsibility, what our responsibility is. They've they've mimicked the audit report. So we don't need to rehash that. We've already talked about it. Uh, the next report is on page eighty-five, and this is our report on your compliance and on internal control over your federal awards. So the uniform guidance, which is, used to be called the O M B one through thirty-three, the single audit. It's now just referred to as uniform guidance. So every major program that you have, we have to test both your controls to make sure that you have controls in place to spend that money appropriately. And also, we look at substantively substantially, we look at the actual expenditures to make sure that you are in compliance with any of those grant covenants. Every grant that you that you receive has certain agreements with it that say, this is what you can and can't do. This is what you can spend it, this is what you can't spend it. If you purchase equipment, this is what you have to do with that equipment. And if you sell that equipment, this is what you have to report if you sell with the equipment. So there's a lot of strings attached when you get federal money, spend federal money, and that's what we're testing. We're testing your compliance with that. So that's also an unmodified opinion. If you look at page eighty-seven, you can look the stars that are denoting what the major program was this year. And the airport grant from the Department of Transportation, that was your major program. Um, and that made up the majority of your federal revenue, so that was the only major program this year. So that's the program that we had to test. All right, so summary of audit results. So this is kind of a a summary of of how things ended up at the end of the day. Um, as far as internal controls go, we didn't identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Any federal award findings? There were none of those. We we issued an unmodified opinion. There were no audit findings disclosed that are required to be in accordance with two CFR. That the two CFR is the federal uniform guidance code. And then it outlines the major program. And then this year, uh, so you can look at that last line. And I and I know people get a little bit confused, because it's, I don't know why the federal government does this, but you're either considered low risk or you're not low risk. Well, it doesn't mean you're high risk if you're not low risk. It just means you're not low risk. So um, and and like I said before, that really, on your end, what you can do to prevent that is, A, you have no findings in in or material weaknesses in your audit or federal findings, and it's timely filed every year. I mean, that's how you become low risk. That means that they can trust you if you don't consistently, if you don't have findings, and consistently, if you're on time, then you don't have to have as many, as much coverage over your federal wars, because they think that you're doing a good job with what you're doing. Let's see, so the next page, so page ninety. You could see that there weren't any financial statement findings or federal award findings. However, there were a couple of well, just one state compliance finding, and that was just some budget findings. So it was Fund thirty-two and Fund Fund fifty-six. And and we typically have a little bit more wiggle room now than we used to. It used to be very black and white of if you were over a dollar, you got a fine. And and we complained enough and said, well, that's a little bit ridiculous. And so they they've actually, they sent their own materiality to state auditor. And so it's five percent of whatever your budget revenue is that I'm not giving you permission to go over budget, but typically when you have a budget finding, it's it's a little bit more over than a couple of dollars. So um, I know that we've talked to to Gabe and 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 management about it. And and you can see the responses there. I I I don't expect it to be an issue next year. Our expectation that is that if you have a finding that it gets corrected, same year, I hate having repeat findings. Because that means that you're not taking what we say seriously, I guess, um, in a lot of ways. You know, I'm not, we're not somebody who, we're we're not gonna tear you up with findings, but when we do give findings, we 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 expect to have it corrected. You know, and I've talked a lot about Gabe, to Gabe about, you know, constant improvement. Like I said, you're you're not the, you're not the only county that has problems. And if, you know, you're doing a good job, no, you're not perfect, but our expectation is you get better every year. And and every year, we're gonna add more expectations, because if you, you know, meet or exceed our expectations, then I'm gonna add something on there next year that's gonna help you get better. So is there any questions for me?
Great, thank you so much, John. That was that was a good going over. Any any question for John? Mike?
Not to call the obvious here, that feels like drinking through a fire hose. Was this, uh, I haven't written my notes. Uh, was this presented first to our audit committee, like? Our audit committee?
I don't know. I don't think the final draft was, because the final draft was we issued last night. So I don't know if they saw a draft previous to that.
Okay, uh, that that's one of the controls that I know we have in place is our audit committee. And I mean, that's the reason for the committee to actually exist is not that I don't want to drink through a fire hose, but that seems like a lot that I couldn't break down right now, you know what I mean?
You're right, and and the whole point of an audit committee is for us to communicate to the audit committee. And 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 then the audit committee in turn report to you as a commission. I know that there's, we've helped a lot of people set up audit committees. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding around the audit committees. The fact that you have an audit committee is, I think, appropriate, and and they should be reviewing. I mean, that's their job. Their job is to be reviewing the financial statements. Both kind of overseeing us as external auditors, as well as your internal auditor, as well as management. And the committee is really who we should be communicating with about anything that we talked to Gabe when about, like control issues or whatever. Those are issues that we should also be addressing with the audit committee. So if it, once again, in my perfect world, I would like to have an audit committee meeting before we even start the audit. And we should have a an audit committee meeting near the end of the audit. But I agree with you that, I mean, these were finished late last night.
Yeah.
So you know, by all means, I think the audit committee should review them. I think the audit committee should be meeting at least on a quarterly basis, if not more.
Um, yeah, we've meeting around six times a year, maybe. Uh, Evan, you had your head up?
So just to kind of summarize some of that in layman's terms. Government auditing standards findings, there was not. The federal awards findings, there was not noted. So it was two state uh, compliance issues. The federal awards findings, there was not noted. So it was two state compliance issues.
Just one budget.
Okay. And it was, fund thirty-two was our EMS. And so that was the special service district and their new facility up there, the building on the hill.
Yeah, I can't remember why that was. Gabe, Gabe would know.
Yeah. So they were closing up the building of that facility and we were serving as a pass through for them to finish things up up there. And it's just one of those things where I didn't anticipate there being further expenditures in that budget line for, for that wrap up. And it was just, you know, it, it, it's not a reflection of there being, you know, an overuse of funds that weren't available or something of that nature. Nonetheless, it is, you know, it is a finding based on, you know, you have to budget for, you have to have budgeted for what you spend. So certainly that's acknowledged that there was an error there.
The, the only other one was the FAA reimbursements to a contractor. Were the feds paying the contractor directly or was that another?
There's, there's this, there's this large delay of the, the contractor finishes the work and then several months later, later, the fed, federal reimbursement comes back. And then once we get that reimbursement, that's when we pay the contractor. And I've seen that take two to three months. And sometimes I can just get lost in the wash with staff in terms of when and how it should be recorded. I would have preferred that they would have recorded that in twenty twenty-four, actually, rather than put back into the previous year. And so there was just a, it's just kind of an unfortunate error. But that's the nature of that one, that one.
So out of the whatever forty billion dollar budgets and spending, so it's for the two findings.
Yeah. And, and I, and you know, with budgets, everybody puts a lot of emphasis on budgets. I mean, the G F O A, if you've worked for the budgets. Me as an auditor, I, I, not to sound like I don't really care, but I, I don't really care because the budgeted roadmap, and that's, that's what your, you as a commission is telling, you're telling the public, this is the amount of money that we're anticipating spending during the year. Where we find budget issues typically is you're going to generate more revenue than you budgeted for. And then you turn around and spend that, but nobody cares about the revenue side. State auditor doesn't care how much you budget for revenue. But if you're a dollar or on expenditures, they care. So if you get additional money, then you have to make sure that, okay, we need to amend our budget to make sure that we're accounting for the money that we're going to spend, even though you, maybe you exceeded your revenue by two, three million dollars in a fund. And so now you have a project that you can do. If you don't go back and change that and say, well, okay, we're going to budget for this project, then that becomes a finding. And, and there's this misperception that, hey, we, we got more money so we can spend more money. Well, that's not how the, the code that the state auditor likes. It's, you have to let the public know this is, we're going to spend this fund. So. Yeah, the issues causing the budget finding, it's not serious enough to us that we would call it a serious control deficiency. The fact is, it's, it's more of a black and white theme for the state auditor of, if you're over budget, you're over budget, you have to have a finding. I know that you guys amend your budget. I know you talk about it. I mean, we've talked, how many times, how many conversations do we have about budget? I mean, significant conversations about the budget, you know, because funds rolled into funds and things like that. And so, you know, there were a lot of, we talked a lot about budget. So I don't think that there's a lack of controls budget. Great. Thanks for that.
Mary? I just need some clarification. Earlier on in your presentation, you were saying they were looking at having and certain entities move their, a time that they need to submit ahead of when, was that like our districts that we're talking about? Okay. Because I know that.
Canyon lands, solid waste, transportation. So that's, it's, it's not, they're not looking at doing it. I'm trying to push them to look at doing it. Because what happens is a significant number of the counties have component units. What we call component units are the districts, entities that you're responsible for. Do you have financial control or control to control or? They're typically not starting their audits until mid-June or late June, maybe sometimes July. Well, your audits do in, in the, in the end of June, at the end of June. So if they're, if they haven't issued their report, then I either have to qualify your audit because I don't have that information, or I have to wait for it to get done.
And you were, you were saying you were encouraging, who were you encouraging to do, do this change?
Office.
The state auditor's office. And so it's through the state auditor's office at that.
They're going to be the ones that are going to push legislature to do it.
Because I know this isn't, this has been a consistent issue since, you know, I've been elected is that almost every time our audit is late, it is due that we have not had the districts turn it in.
Every time.
Consistently, consistently. And that's part of the reason we changed our auditors was that we were having, so.
Yeah, in fact, the county, the county audit, the county audit was done before June thirtieth. Like if we would have had all the component units, we would have issued before June thirtieth.
Uh, Trish, hand her hand up and then look at her.
Just really quick, if we don't get it changed at state level, one of the things that we need to do as a commission is whom, you know, whoever's liaisons for those, those component units, we just really have to be on that and maybe make sure that we're relating, relating with Gabe and pushing them to.
And we push from our side too. I mean, we have direct contact with their auditors. We, we push so hard on their auditors that they go to this. They, they just quit talking to us. I mean, we, we, we do push hard from our side. I mean, I know we talked to Jock and Mike at the UAC. And we, we talk about all of the components that were late. We, we have documented conversations with our auditors and they just drug their feet, drug. So in a perfect world, I would love to have them do earlier. And, and you're not the only county. I mean, most counties, like I said, most counties in the state. I mean, we audit American Samoa and they have component units and we wait, wait, wait for that. I mean, it's, it's deadline day and we're getting huge audits, you know, it's because it's a frustrating problem.
Sounds like it. Mike?
To speak on what Trish was talking about also, we have liaisons. We will push our districts, our special service districts a little more. We had that conversation. I mean, even the audit was done and it just wasn't handed over to you guys. So I'll lean on my, my group.
Thanks, Mike. Kevin?
So on, on that same topic, another, another idea that was discussed at an audit, recent audit committee meeting was it just as a condition for funding the districts, they need to turn in their stuff early, regardless of what state codes it says. And then a second idea was discussed as maybe again, as a condition for funding the districts, they have to use, you know, an accounting, you know, maybe more, you know, the same accounting firm we're using to, so that we don't have friction between different accounting firms. I wonder if you had an opinion about.
I mean, I'd love, I would love for them to be our clients because we, we love, I mean, the whole point of what I'm doing is hopefully we're making your county better. And that's why I do my job. So the more people we can help, the more, the better I feel. But at the same time, I don't need them to be, I have great relationships with most of CPA firms in the state. And if, if you were to ask me, there's probably three to four that I would recommend in the entire state that are, are true government, really good auditors. Does that mean there's other people that can do audits? Absolutely. You know, we've been doing it for a hundred years. But there's, there's three or four firms that have really taken hold of, I mean, they're full-time auditors. That's all they do is, is government audits. And you audit differently. You see things differently. You know, the financial statements all end up the same, but the way we audit and the, and the things that we see are different than if you're, if you're not a full-time auditor. So that's my two cents. I mean, even if they're not our clients, I love to talk to them and, and be a resource. I mean, we, we help people that aren't our clients all the time.
I guess the idea is that some of these districts are quite small. And so if we had like a collective contract.
Well, and, and that's the other problem is, is, you know, you, where you have a bid process, you have some CPA firms that will intentionally, they want the work so bad during the summer that they're, they're willing to do it for cheap. And, and you're, you're going to get, the, the result is going to be reflective of the fee.
When, when would a good time to, to lean on our districts be to, to get their audits completed? March?
Most of them, why can't they have their, they're a district.
Yeah.
Why can't they have their books closed in? I mean, we're doing, we're small. We're doing districts in February.
Right. Yeah. Maybe, maybe a reminder through the clerk's office or, or some, something to just, just let us know so that we can reach out to our individual special service districts.
And I, I'll take responsibility for, I think it's been our industry that has created the perception that the audits don't have to be started until June, June.
Right. So everyone just kind of delays.
Because in our industry, what a lot of the auditors, they'll do a tax season. So they're doing taxes during tax season. So, and then they, they're tired of tax season. So they have to take a vacation after tax season. And so then it's already into May and then they're starting counties, which they say, well, they take priority over our districts, which should be the other way around. But why they're starting them in May and June and you're expecting to audit a county, it doesn't make sense to me.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, I've got several things, John, I'd like to go over with some of the comments that you made during your presentation. And then I've got some actual questions that I had after I got a chance to look this over. And I know that part of the reason it was added to the agenda was because you guys were working on it late last night, but it also makes it very hard for a commissioner to dig into this when he's only got hours to do so. But you mentioned that Gabe has stressed, and I want to admit that many of us are aware that Gabe has stressed and some of us are stressed as well. And one of the comments that you made, and I want to clarify, is that you say funds were withheld because we're late getting this in. There's also the portion of this where we're currently in non-compliance with the state auditor, which is a part of why these funds are being withheld, their taxes. And I, I want to make sure that we're all aware that it isn't just because these financial statements are late. And then I had the question about whether or not you were drafting the financial statements in my questions. And you basically answered that you are having to help draft the financial statements. And then you're overlooking them as our auditor. And that seems to me to be a weakness on the commission and on Grand County's part that we're expecting you to help draft our financial statements and then we're asking you to audit your own work. And as many of us know, I have fought long and hard for the last couple of years. I do not want somebody auditing their own work. I, I, it goes against my grain. And then you also made a statement about AI, which scares me a little bit. We had an AI presentation of a UAC at the last conference there. And putting our financials on AI then makes them where? That, that would worry me. And I know you didn't say you're doing that, but you're waiting for AI to come on board. And I'm scared of AI. Maybe that's my age.
Oh, I'm, I'm terrified of it.
So just putting our financials on AI, I don't see as a positive. And then, um, back to what Mike said, I, I do feel that part of our internal controls were bypassed here. And that's our audit committee. And so that's just off of the notes of your, of your presentation. But I do have questions on page ten. Where you've got a prior period adjustment of several million dollars. I'm just curious if that seems somewhat large to you? I mean, an adjustment, and trust me, my budget in a construction company is barely exceeds a million some years and maybe two if I'm lucky, but a two million dollar adjustment stood out to me considerably.
Uh, what page you're looking at?
Page ten, the second to bottom line.
That was a prior adjustment from the prior year.
Right. But doesn't that seem extremely small? I guess maybe I'm. I'm not used to such big adjustments. There should be some kind of explanation with that, I would think.
And, and maybe this will help. So what you're looking at is a comparison to the prior year. So that prior period adjustment was done last year. So that, that wasn't done, that's just showing, so the twenty twenty-three column, that's this year. Twenty twenty-two was what was on your financial statements last year. So that prior period adjustment. And if you remember, what happened was that's when there were a lot of adjustments that got made by the, the other CPA firm that's supposed to be your outside counsel that didn't get back to Gabe to get put into trial balance. And so when that was figured out, then we did, basically that's a culmination of all of the adjustments of all the funds. And maybe it'll help if I explain the statement a little bit. So if you go to page sixteen and seventeen. So these statements are a roll-up of all of your funds. And what these two statements, these, these statements were created with Gatsby thirty-four back in two thousand and three or four. I can't remember exactly when it came out. But prior to that, all you had were fund statements. Well, you as a commission, that's how you operate is funds. And that's what you should be primarily focused on is funds. What these two statements show are the economic viability of Grand County. So these are going to have all of your capital assets, all your roads, infrastructures, equipment, all your long-term debt. And, and yes, that's good information for you guys to know. But what you need to know as commission is, hey, we have bond payments that are due this year. What money do we have available this year to spend? And that's all contained in the fund statements. And so that prior period adjustment basically came from these statements last year, if that makes sense. So it's kind of a roll-up of, yes, I understand it's a two million dollar. That's why it's a prior period adjustment. If it would have been under a million dollars, we would have, it wouldn't have been material. So that's why it had to be a prior period adjustment.
Okay. And so a couple of other questions then. I know that we had an unacceptably large amount of misstatements in our twenty twenty-two financial statements and that we've gone through some of those. But then I guess if we're looking forward here and assessing the effectiveness of our financial reporting, controls who is or should be, I mean, that's you again as the auditor.
Well, let's clarify errors versus material misstatements. Yes, there are, there were errors in, in numbers in the wrong spot in the financial statements, but they were not materially misstated. If, if that makes sense, there's a difference between a material misstatement versus an error in financial statements. The largest one being the TRT last year. I mean, the TRT went from, all of the funds were correct in the financial statements. And when it went to the government-wide statement, which is these statements, then that link in Excel went to operating grants rather than TRT. So there was five million that was reported in under operating grants rather than with the other five million in TRT. So yes, and, and ultimately, you know, I took responsibility for the mistakes that were, were made in the financial statements. So the controls that we have in place are, I have a staff that drafts the financial statements. I review the financial statements. We have another partner in our firm that's a non-engagement partner. So it doesn't even have any connection to Grand County or doesn't work on the audit. She also reviews the audit. In a perfect world, what I would like to see is the outside consultants either drafting or reviewing detail of the financial statements. Because there's, there's always mistakes that are going to happen. And, and, and I'm never going to catch all the mistakes that are going to be in a financial statements, especially where I tie down, I primarily focus on the fund statements because that's what I care about, being accurate, because that's the information that you guys see all the time. And should be looking at every month. It's, that's what's in your system.
I want to make sure you understand that I'm in total agreement with that, that I think that there needs to be a little clear line here to where you're not having to help prepare our financial statements and then oversee your own work. And then I'd like to go to page eighty-nine, your summary of your audit, auditor's results. And I compare it with last year's and they're identical. And that's somewhat concerning considering the fact that there were a lot of mistakes last year. And we have a material weaknesses, no, significant deficiencies, no, non-compliance material, no. And then several others. And I'm concerned because of this and would like to get this county to the point to where we have that separation that we're talking about here. But that is my goal as we look through these financials. And then I have one last one that shows up on page ten. And then I have one last one that shows up on page ten, and that's the TRT number that you have. And it doesn't jive with the TRT number that Gabe has in his expenditure report later in this meeting. And I'm wondering if there's just some interest or mistake or where that would be. That's the transient room tax line, uh, eight million thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for Gabe's is eight million, one hundred and three thousand and change.
Yeah, so this would reflect the accruals of um collections in January and February of this year that were accrued back into twenty twenty-three, and that's what that number would reflect. And the expenditure report refers to the calendar year, so I pulled twenty-three, twenty-three calendar for that report.
So, so so, uh, under, under governmental standards, you're supposed to recognize revenue or expenditures within sixty days. If they're realizable or recognizable in, within sixty days after year end, then you're required to accrue that back to the prior year. So the first two months of the prior year are going to go in the prior year, and then January, February of twenty-four are going to go into twenty twenty-three. But that number, Bill, just for, for your reference, that's the exact number that we were given by the, the, the state. When we confirm that number, that, that number is spot on.
Okay, and again, I'm, I'm not trying to roast Larsen's here, that isn't my goal. The, there, there's a lot here going on, and the fact that we have the state auditor now with the microscope of our whatever you want to call it, is that we've got to get this resolved and get our tax revenue stream back flowing into this county, and that's part of the goal here. The other part of the goal is, is to not have you auditing your own work, in my mind.
Well, and, 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 look, to be clear, we're, we're never auditing our own work if we're drafting. There is the, the review threat, and that's something that we have to, we, we have to get past that. So we all, like me as the partner, I have to make sure that we have enough controls in place internally. And, because we're audited, just like you. So we have other CPA firms that come and audit us. The last one we had, they were out of Florida. Uh, and this was a big conversation of, hey, under yellow book or the government standards, if we're drafting financial statements, there are certain controls that we have to have in place to prevent us from having that review threat or, or auditing our own work. So in reality, this is the final thing that happens. Um, if we were to draft the financial statements first and then do the audit, then we would be reviewing technically our own work, but this is the product of we're auditing the trial balance from Gabe. That's where we begin. In a perfect world, we would begin with the financial, and then break that down into trial balance. Because then we can see how it rolls up in financial statements. So that's one of the ways that we prevent reviewing our own work, but I understand. I would love it if the county were the outside CPA was drafting the financial statements, absolutely out of luck.
A- as would I, and also if the county would do a little bit better job of following through process here, so that these come to the internal audit committee, which we have a financial advisor on payroll now to help us through some of these situations, and then bring it into the full commission as it should have been, so.
Well, that's, that's where I would, I would say that's, we need to have more communication with the audit committee. So I, I'm putting out on the audit committee that, like, they need to be communicating with us throughout this whole process.
Hundred percent agree. That's all I've got.
But let me, I, I, I take the first couple of, of statements. I mean, I, I talk to the state auditor's office quite a bit. Um, in fact, I had a conversation with them today. Now I'm taking off my auditor hat, uh, I'm stepping aside because I know the TRT is an issue. Uh, and, you know, I've, I've been in a lot of conversations with the state auditor about it, and I said, look, this is not within my scope. I, I, I don't want to be involved, it's like, me as the auditor, I'm trying to help the county, and, and I think when the conversations that we had at UAC, you know, I'm but just so you, like, the commission knows what was specifically said to me today was, if you don't play in their sandbox nicely, then there's already legislation in place that's going to basically eradicate TRT, which is, is not fair to you guys. So me, as the auditor, I mean, I tried to have a pretty, I, I'm pretty blunt. I mean, you, you know, talking to me, I'm, I'm not going to beat around the bush. And I'm the same with the state auditor. What I see is there's interpretations of code on both sides. And what I told Seth today was, the conversation needs to happen is, what is your interpretation? And why do you interpret it that way? And the same with Seth and John, is why are you interpreting this code this way? I get the percentages, and, and it's the whole reason that I'm glad that we don't test TRT anymore, because it's so convoluted. And, and it's based on, me as an auditor coming in and looking at your county, I'm not going to tell you how to spend money. Right? That's not my job as the auditor, is to tell you how to spend money. Uh, my job is making sure that your financial statements, financial records are materially correct. Meaning revenues coming in, see the money going out, you know, is it, is it, is it going where it's supposed to be going? Is it, is it, are there fraudulent checks, you know, that, those, those types of things? But I told Seth, I said, Seth, your interpretation is different than what Grand County is. And Grand County gets the, the most amount of TRT out of the entire state. So you need to have the conversation of, what is your interpretation, and why, what is the basis for your interpretation? Have an open discussion. Uh, and I don't know if I got through to him, but basically he told me, he said, well, if they're not going to play nice in the sandbox, then we already have legislation, it's just going to get rid of it. So that's, they're going to dig their heels in and put the news tighter. So take that for what it's worth, but when you have conversations, I, I would have the conversation to look, this is how we're interpreting it, and this is why we're spending it this way, and have a good basis and say, help me understand your side of why you're telling me it's wrong.
I believe most of that really needs to be done after our tax funds are released, rather than before, or at least during that sixty-one day period, that we had a warning period that I think we found, some of us found out about in the local newspaper. So this isn't the time right now to be arguing with the state auditor.
And unfortunately, that's the way they play. I, I don't like to see my clients in KSL. I don't like to see myself in KSL. I don't like to see myself in the news. I'm not that big of a deal. But that, but that's the way they play. So they're going to go play on the media. And instead of just sitting down and having conversations, but.
Um, I had another spreadsheet question on page sixty-three.
Good.
Um, and, and this might be for Gabe, I don't know, but, uh, it, you know, there, there's several tables showing original budget amounts, final budget amounts, and then actual budget amounts. The variance, and from a lot of the funds, you know, the variances are all pretty small, but some of this stood out to me, whereas and I'm just trying to, you know, understand where it came from, like the very first line. Um, you know, there was like a million, you had a million dollars more in taxes in the final budget amount. I'm just curious, was, did a tax come in higher than we estimated, or what? Either as you guys know, yeah, and partly I'm asking because we're in budgeting season right now, we're trying to estimate.
Yeah, so ultimately, all of your taxes, whether, and, and that's, that's everything from sales tax, the property tax, well, you guys have property tax yet, but uh, TRT, uh, the other taxes that you get, like the road tax. So all those taxes add up. Ultimately, you got a million dollars more than you anticipated out of the first year.
Okay, so, so maybe a question, yeah, like, like we made some kind of projection, I forget whether it was zero growth or a slight decline. So it turns out those, those were conservative estimates, and we came above that, is that what I should conclude?
Or could it be collection rates also, or collection rates continue to improve?
That sounds like a fair interpretation to me. And as John said, it's a summation of variety of taxes.
Okay.
It could be that it was conservative.
Okay, it's just, you know, you know, each year we have to make a guess, and if, if we're always guessing too low, that's just worth, worth knowing. Um, and then I, I also, I, I, I always get confused by these inter, intergovernmental revenues, but, you know, those are you know, th- three very different numbers in the three columns. You know, you have, like, we didn't apply for a grant or something, or?
Yeah, anything intergovernmental is something that you're either going to get from the federal government or from the state.
I would say that that number is so big because if that's L A T C F funds, that's a
Okay, so say L A T C F funds moving around created those big Um, yeah, I, I think that's the only question.
And, and we actually, just for your information, that the L A T C F money has not been spent yet, so you cannot count it as revenue. So that's why there's a significant difference between that eight, that the actual amount is. So it's sitting in your bank account, but we can't count it as revenue until you spend the money.
Okay, so our, our
It's kind of the matching principle.
La- last year's budget, we said we were going to spend it, we didn't end up spending it, that's what's going on there.
Okay, thank you. Just out of curiosity, what do we have sitting in the bank of unrestricted and restricted?
As of today, or the end of December? I have no idea what today is.
End of December, but you do have the idea of
Hello, I mean, you go back, basically what, you go back and look at you want to go to page eighteen? So everything in that fund balance section, under the restricted, basically fund equity. So you either have cash or other assets that are going to cover that. So you can see the class, Class B roads, so all of that money is restricted. So any assets that you have in that fund are restricted for Class C. Does that translate into cash in the bank? No, because you have receivables. Um, and then there's some, a few payables that are, so cash, as far as restricted cash, there's the end of the year, thirteen million in restricted cash, and twenty-six million in, is that twenty? I can't even read, sorry. Twenty-five billion in unrestricted cash. That's in your governmental funds.
Thank you.
And that's, that's where I would spend most of my time in, in looking at where you're at at the end of December is in the fund statements, because that's, that's how you operate your, your government.
All right, any other questions for John, or we wrap this up?
And hopefully you guys have my phone number. I, I fully realize if these got issued last night, you guys didn't have time. I mean, Gabe and I talked at length about it last night, and Gabe was like, ah, you know, if you still want to come down, I was like, well, I mean, what I'm presenting is our opinion. You know, I expect you guys, if you guys have questions, absolutely reach out to me. So Gabe has me on to be dialed, so you guys are welcome to call and, and ask questions. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to have. Because I want you guys to understand what's in the financial statements. If you can't offer me that a hundred percent, as a county commission, unless you, you know what's in the financial statements, so.
Great. Mike?
A quick thank you, uh, for telling me there was a problem on, uh, getting you some info. Uh, so that was real easy and real work to get done.
Yeah, I was glad that we got it. I'm glad that, I mean, we had worked for two months and then you got it done in a day, so.
Thanks.
I, I thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot, John. Appreciate it. Appreciate the frankness, too. Um, all right, that's going to be a tough act to follow, but, uh, we have, we have Cora up next with our department reports, and she's here, uh, with emergency management, so, uh, Cora, if you want to come forward to present?
So my name is Cora Phillips, and I am the emergency management director for the county. Um, I started in November of twenty twenty-two, right after the first big flood event. That most people remember. And many people have asked me, well, what do you do for the county? Like, what do you get involved with? So you'll see on my door something very similar to this, emergency management unveiling the mystery. So what I, what do I do? Um, training and exercise development, plan development, public outreach and education, collaboration with stakeholders, grant writing, advocacy, disaster response coordination, I've been very busy with that recently, and hazard mitigation. Uh, many other parts of the world, they call this role disaster risk reduction. Here we call it emergency management. When I first started in the role around twenty twenty-two, one of the big things that was included in the interview was how can you improve alert dissemination? I've been really focused on that moving forward, working with the National Weather Service to try and convey the vulnerabilities that we have in our area. Setting up the INWS alerts for public safety personnel, public officials, who are all welcome uh, to utilize that source. If you do not have that, uh, I'm happy to get that to you. With the public encouraging download of the My Alerts app, so that individuals can set up to receive weather alerts on their phone and set multiple locations. I'll have a QR code if anyone wants to scan it. Within the public safety community and stakeholders, creating a flood leadership chat, this was done in collaboration with Chief Lex Bell with City PD, and that's been a really great way to quickly share information to, uh, alert individuals that an event is possible, and then also, uh, when that event is occurring and the recovery efforts. Grand County Emergency Management has a Facebook page. Uh, thanks to that, I was able to get access to that and go from seventeen followers when I first started to well over a thousand now, so tell your friends. Uh, also working with local media partnerships to really get information out to the public. It's, we have a lot of really incredible local media outlets within our community, and being able to send them a quick message to say, hey, can you share this information for me to help get the word out is huge. So incredibly thankful. Also working on public education, not just myself providing that, but working with stakeholders, creating those partnerships to bring training to our area. I've really taken a team approach to success. I am a single person in my, in my, the Office of Emergency Management, so leveraging those partnerships, building that team is so critical. So here's what that team looks like. Uh, working with Be Ready Utah at the state level, you'll see Jeff Johnson there, uh, holding one of the Be Ready Bs there in the, uh, right corner, and then Jesse from the library when we posted that presentation at the library. He's also done a presentation at the Grand Center for the seniors during the coffee tea time, uh, working with, uh, Grand County EMS to get the word out on our alert system. John and Cody for Street Fire State Lands to get information out about flooding, and also uh, prevention of fire, creating a defensible space around one's home. And then when we had the Ring of Fire Eclipse last year, working with the Trail Ambassadors, Grand County Search and Rescue to provide information at the entrance of City Market, uh, working with Gab- Gabriel who just left to create a holiday coupon mailer to help get the word out on our alert system. And those are the QR codes that I mentioned at the top. To help get the word out on our alert system. And those are the QR codes that I mentioned in the top right corner. Uh, if you have a Google or Android phone versus an Apple phone, you can download that. My Alerts app onto your phone to get those one, critical weather alerts, also fire weather warnings. Uh, also on the bottom right corner, you'll see the Wind Flooded Turnaround Don't Drown signs. Those were purchased in advance of the spring runoff that we had in twenty twenty-three to help prepare and alert. The public, among, uh, many other things that we'll talk about later. Also working with, uh, uh. Army Corps of Engineers Silver Jackets on obtaining those Slot Canyon Flash Flood Warning posters. So it's been a huge partnership. I'm so incredibly thankful that, for those that have been willing to contribute to. Advancing the emergency management program here in the county. Oh, and there's, I don't wanna forget CJ in the bottom corner, he's also helped me with some, uh, PSAs. Um, here's kind of a snapshot of the emergency management page. It's, uh, facebook.com slash G C S O E N. Go there and I try and put updates and information. Some of that information is shared with the National Weather Service, Utah Division of Emergency Management, FEMA ready.gov. A lot of training is involved in emergency management to stay current on new and emerging threats. The way our climate is shifting. So I recently completed the National Emergency Management Basic Academy, which totaled forty-three point five hours worth of. Pre-reps. And then the academy itself, a hundred and twenty hours, which is fifteen days, it's complete. And then there's more training. There's the Advanced Academy, which I was accepted into, which will start this month. Uh, that I'll be going to Westminster, Colorado for. And that will be a hundred and thirty-three hours, twenty days. Writing a ten-page research paper, uh, and it'll be about once a quarter, so. And it follows the fiscal year, so October, and then two next year. In addition to that, I'll be taking the Advanced Public Information Officer course, so maybe next year I'll be even better at presenting to you both. To you all, and to the local media. There's a lot of ongoing training, uh, CERT Program Manager, Mass Casualty, there's so much training to. Be ready for the next tomorrow and week. Uh, it's very dynamic here. Keeps me on my toes all the time. Here's one of the trainings that we did with our local public safety. This is the I C S three hundred level class. It's a command class, so we were able to get Holden Orm, who's since retired, unfortunately. Uh, but this was one of the last classes that he provided for us. This is the I C S three hundred class. Can see we had, uh, National Park Service, the Sheriff's Office, Grand County Search and Rescue, Valley Fire Department. A lot of entities were present. And we did more training. Uh, the top left corner, that's working with Tammy Allen out at the airport to continually do that training. Uh, top right corner, that's Chris Wachowski with USGS. He presented at the local library, stream gauges. And kind of how they work, where to find the data. Bottom left corner is the National Weather Service providing an all-hazard weather spotting class. Uh, they didn't provide one in person this year, but they did. Provide one online. Um, just last week, I had some of the new meteorologists come with Aaron Walter. And took them on a tour of the area to see the impacts that we had in our area due to the recent storm events. And how critical it is to obtain their, their forecast as soon as possible, because we have, when a storm comes through, as you know. There's such a short time frame to see those impacts. In the bottom right corner, that is SISA. And they were able to provide an active shooter awareness workshop to both, uh, city and county employees. And that's not all. There's more. Uh, I was able to work with a team out of New Mexico to bring training here. Homemade explosive, explosive awareness, recognition and response. Worked with Colton Stan with the American Red Cross to provide a shelter training as one, as part of our local emergency planning committee conferences. That happen, uh, quarterly, working with. Umtrow on tabletops and exercises. We have one coming up in December. And then in November, we have a surface transportation, emergency preparedness and security for freight by rail and highway. November thirteenth and fourteenth, and then, uh, three of you are invited to attend the Senior and Elected Officials Course on November fifteenth. That will occur at the Grand Center. As you know, I seventy, Highway one ninety-one, there's a lot that gets transported on those highways. And to be prepared for hazmat is really critical in our area. And then we'll have the Utah Pipeline Emergency Response Seminar. Uh, usually it's, they haven't announced it yet, but usually that's around January, February, so stay tuned for that. I've also been attending many conferences. Uh, the National Homeland Security Conference was in Miami this year. And it was made possible through funding through the State Homeland Security Program Grant. Uh, it was incredible conference, multiple disciplines, and I was really able to bring a lot of that back regarding emerging threats. Preparedness and how to best move forward through building those networking partnerships. Attended the Utah Regional Coordination Council meetings quarterly, the Utah Local Emergency Planning Committee Conference. And the Utah Emergency Manager Association Conference and training. Some of you might recognize some folks in the bottom right corner, but. That was, uh, point of distribution training, lots of other training as part of that conference. And then all the networking opportunities that come with being with other emergency managers with, throughout the state. Uh, one of the recent excitements is that I was able to, in collaboration with Jenny Beth, she's amazing. We were able to get the Pipeline Emergency Response Grant. So you might remember the Wellhead Site Malfunction on a whitewashed sand dunes that led to a major release of natural gas over Easter weekend Jeep Safari. Um, we didn't have these monitors out there, and it was identified as a gap, so. Looked for this opportunity. It became available, applied with the assistance of Jenny Beth, and we were recently, uh, found out that we were awarded. Forty-eight thousand, three hundred eighty dollars over two years to fund the fourteen multi-gas meters. And also some tr- training as, uh, training initiatives. Uh, and use of that equipment. More grant funding. Uh, we kind of talked about it earlier, uh, the state funding from House Bill three and. One zero zero one to total eight, eighty-two thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and twenty-seven cents. That was through the spring runoff twenty twenty-three. Uh, this year, we were able to get, or I was able to get, um, through the Emergency Management Performance Grant, forty-four thousand dollars. It helps fund my salary and benefits. The State Homeland Security Program Grant, and continuing to pursue additional state funding and opportunities made available by just. Federal Disaster Declarations, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, and the State Disaster Recovery Restricted Account and others. Uh, regarding the State Homeland Security Program Grant, there are many projects, and we apply it through, for that annually. Uh, one project, eighty thousand dollars to fund, uh, increased. Protection at the airport through fencing, sea burney identification. Grand County Election Security, which, uh, Gabriel, you might have seen some articles in the paper regarding Gabriel's trip. That was kind of a unique thing that we were able to do through that funding. Uh, the Internet Crimes Against Children, thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-three dollars towards that. Prepare with Pajra, that's a. Uh, preparedness campaign through FEMA. And collaborative anti-human trafficking. Uh, not all of these projects have been implemented yet, but that money is earmarked for that. And then this year, uh, we should get a notice of the award here soon, but thirty-six thousand, eight hundred twenty-three dollars. Were specifically for hazmat to get to a tier-three team. Mask Care Capacity and Resilience, twenty thousand, physical security enhancements, and this is working a lot with, uh, Matt Sanzera's sixty thousand dollars. And simulators for inter-agency training. As you might recall, when I first started, a lot of our plans were very, very out of date and needed a lot of work. Uh, we were able to work with integrated solutions to help alleviate some of the burden on just me. So we were able to. Work on our hazard mitigation plan. It's FEMA approved, and it is now up to date, and I'm. Working on updating with all the recent activity that we've been having in our county, so to cut. Also working on the Emergency Operations Plan. The basic plan is complete and continuing to work on the comprehensive update of that plan, all the different annexes. So I'll be reaching out to you in the near future regarding that. Uh, our flood emergency response plan, Bill Hulse initiated that before I was hired, and just continuing to further that. Fine tune it, uh, and working with Silver Jackets to complete that. And then just continuing to build new partnerships and community-led solutions. I mentioned that I attended the Utah Emergency Manager Association Conference, and one of the presentations was part of the Rapid Disaster Assessment Program. And I was able to bring this low-tech solution to Castle Valley to help them in a recovery response. And so that's Les Golden, uh, presenting to Castle Valley, that happened just last week. When I went to the National Homeland Security Conference, FEMA Region Eight was there and was presenting on Disaster Mind. This was a tool that was developed to kind of fill the gap in, uh, providing outreach to teens. This is a simulation video game that teens can engage, or it's a game that they can play. Uh, the link is there. And it helps them stay calm and make solid decisions during disaster. They worked with teens as part of that. They worked with psychologists. I haven't played the game full way through, but it takes about a half hour if you'd like to. I've heard it's great for not only teens, but adults as well. Uh, and hoping to do more outreach, uh, with them soon. As part of the Cooperative Wildfire Systems, C W S Agreement Participation Commitment, I partnered with Canyon Land Solid Waste Authority. And they have a free landfill day, so we coupled that with creating a defensible space or a home maintenance zone. Around one's hole. And so I created the graphic there and working with Jessica. Uh, you'll see on the right the number of registrants, amount of debris that was collected as part of that to reduce the risk of fire. Wildland fire in our area. So that program was a cost savings to the county and our community members. I've been working a lot with Utah Division of Emergency Management. Uh, there's a lot of projects that are ongoing in our area. That's, it's a really good time. Uh, a lot of the conversations that have been happening, I'm really optimistic in moving those forward. Currently, they're updating our flood risk map. It's a five-to-seven-year project. Uh, the. Data was, unfortunately, the data was collected prior to the flood event that happened in twenty twenty-two. We talked earlier about the State Disaster Recovery Restricted Account. I was able to tap into that account to get new. Lidar data for the Mill Creek area, so that we could capture what changes have occurred in the creek since, in twenty twenty-two. And since. We're also working with Bowen Collins regarding the Mill Creek Watershed Restoration Project Scoping. Uh, to identify some projects in that area to mitigate flood risk. Also working with the state, um, direct technical assistance on the design of a comprehensive flood warning system. With the hope of, once we have that design, of applying for grants to implement that. And then I submitted a notice of interest for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which will be, uh, which was made available following spring runoff. And one of the most exciting things I have is introducing Shabar.
Welcome, come on. Yeah, she can come on up.
So way back in February, I applied to this program on November thinking. Well, this, this seems really intriguing. It was a FEMA Emergency Manager Exchange Program. There wasn't a lot of information available online. It's like, well, how about I just apply and see what happens? So I applied. I heard back April Fool's Day of all days. And they said, we'd like for you to be selected to you. And I told many people that I was selected. And I think a lot of people wondered if I was, you're still here. Um, so. And it finally came to fruition, and Shabar was selected, and I couldn't be more pleased. He's been such a joy. We've been going around the county. The past week and a half-ish. I guess it's been almost a week. A week. So picking him along Mill Creek up to Power Dam, to some of the areas that were heavily impacted by flooding. Just allowing him to tour around the area, introducing him to the many wonderful faces that we have in the county. And Shabar brings so much expertise. It's just kind of the perfect time. It's, it was well worth the wait. He brings over thirty years of experience working in FEMA hazard mitigation. He has a background in chemical and mechanical engineering. He's not afraid of the desert heat. I, I warned him, but, uh. And I would say his mitigation expertise is Jedi level, so I'm really excited to have him here and. Part of these conversations as we continue to move forward, not only as the commission, working with the city and the public. To bring these projects to fruition.
Awesome. Welcome, Shabar. Good to have you.
And as an added bonus, uh, during my participation in the program, my salary and benefits are reimbursed.
Wow. Yeah, that's awesome.
And we don't have to pay for Shabar.
Sounds, sounds like a win-win-win.
It is a win-win. I think that's all I have.
All right. Thank you so much, Cora. And I can't, I still can't believe that we didn't have a full-time emergency manager when I first got on the commission. It's, it's amazing how much work you do. How much more there is to do, so, so very much appreciated. Uh, anyone have any other questions or comments for Cora?
Oh, just thank you so much for all you do, and welcome, Shabar.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here. Uh, it's been a pleasure meeting Cora and, uh, your Sheriff's Office. Senior staff and, uh, my, my commitment here is to work for the county. So I'm not gonna wear the FEMA badge.
All right.
My, uh, the most amazing thing about this program is once or twice a year, FEMA does this exchange with a community or a county or a city. Where FEMA funds all the expenses, uh, where the community official like Cora here is gonna learn a bunch of stuff. For the next six months as she participates in the program, and I'm here for the next six months, and it's not a week or two. To, to support on any of the emergency management programs and bring my experiences to the table. Str- uh, my primary strength is all kinds of mitigation efforts nationwide.
Yeah.
Uh, I worked thirty to forty natural disasters, uh, over the years. I was in Katrina. For Katrina, I was down in Louisiana for nine months non-stop. So we may send Cora to North Carolina now.
Wouldn't be the first time I've.
But, uh, but, you know, I've got a little sense of your community and your natural hazards and man-made hazards and, uh. Uh, like Cora was saying, the timing might be good for, for your county to. Consider some of these projects you guys have been developing, uh. You know, being an engineer, plants are great, right? Plants are great, uh, doing studies is great. I'm not saying those are not important. But let's get in, take something up. Let's build what you need for your community, and I will help her. In putting your projects together. I do know enough about FEMA grant programs.
Yeah.
So, so there might be an opportunity because of your last two seasons and what happened here. The cost of a small disaster is a lot. The flooding and the Mill Creek issues might seem like a few million dollars if you really add the dollars. Might seem like a few million dollars if you really add the dollars and cents of what you ended up cleaning up and disruptions and such. But the cost is much more to the community from a sociological and environmental perspectives. Uh, and the good deal is if you can get FEMA funding, you're paying twenty-five cents on a dollar. And when I say you, I mean, it's non-federal funding. It could be state, it could be county, it could be city. Uh, it could be a rich person in town loves the parks. It has to be non-federal. It could be, it doesn't have to be money. It could be in kind. If you have staff and resources, if you're, I'm just saying this like, public works facilities, if they engage, you can count that towards the caution. Yeah. These things are gonna happen again and again. We just don't know. And they've happened in the past and they'll happen again. And it could be worse next time. Look at what happened in West, West Carolina. Never happened in history.
Yeah.
So anyway, thanks for having me. I'm glad to be here to support and help any which way I can.
Thank you so much.
And welcome, Cora.
Thank you.
All right, um, our next department report is uh, IT. So we have Matt Sanoseros who's our information technology director. I'll welcome you up, Matt, and, and thanks for being here. I'll be right back.
Hi, everybody. I'm Matt Sanoseros. If you don't know, yeah, G Director here at the county. Um. I sent to you a tastefully written report, which is the same thing I sent to you guys every year for the last fifteen years now that I've worked here. Um. I do a lot of different things with IT. Um, I am the IT Director here. Currently my staff with myself, I have a support tech and a GIS technician. And we contract out uh, with the company out of Grand Junction to take care of our public safety radio systems backend. Um. With all of that, I'm still, I'm so many different things. Um, I try to keep succinct within my report. I hope that you guys read it. I don't want to have to read this. If you'd like, I'd be happy to. There's lots of words in it. It goes over a bunch of different things. I cover a lot of different pieces of the county. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have. Um, but just a couple of notes on various projects and I'll just try to keep it short and sweet with you guys. My seat will opt if I'm the IT guy and I'm giving you a. Written report, right? I don't want to be flashy thing. I don't have lots of pictures to show you. I can't really follow the borders. Um, but we've been busy, um, uh, working currently through uh, some projects of expanding and changing up software networking here. Replacing some of the core servers rehearsed storage. Because I love hearing myself talk. Uh, we also uh, have a rotation schedule. Uh, we've replaced twenty-one computers this year. Every year it kind of goes between twenty to forty, depending on where it's at. Um, looking at changing up our data services, phone subscription circuits. Um, a number of different cybersecurity initiatives, um, that are all definitely related to security solutions. Looking at uh, further refining of our disaster recovery uh, plans, protocols. Um, I'm also the appointed member from UAC and I serve on the State of Utah Cybersecurity Commission, which is the governor's board. Um, and I'm uh, supporting to reboot our GIS policy committee. Which is a committee that you guys have formed, so the commission has in the past and it is about GIS projects, make sure that stuff's getting done. Resource to. Um, again, feel free to read through it. I tried to go over it without getting too far out in the weeds on anything. I get into a little bit about uh. Some of the cybersecurity impacts and things that we're dealing with here, um, in particular with uh, V Y O D devices, the proliferation of our tech stack. Uh, how that works into SaaS solutions. Some of the different goals and things that look at uh, for. Some of the major sections here like network, workstations, administration. And otherwise, like I said, I do cover a lot of different things here. Uh, you know, a lot of system functions and development, they're on the first page. You talk about things like strategic management, consultation, software licensing, access permissions. You know, project management, there's so many different aspects on a given daily I have those ten miles. Um, this next year for budget, I am going to be asking you guys to fund a systems admin type position. In my office, I'll allow you to be able to actually hopefully take a bit of constructive time off. So I turn my phone off to get away from here for a day. With that position, it will help be able to get stuff out more efficiently, quickly. And be able to uh. You know, keep up with the rapid expectation of the performance and. The rapidly changing landscape of cybersecurity. So rather than let me sit and ramble on, I'd be happy to entertain any questions or clarifications I need.
You have questions?
Just I know as we're going through budget system here, thank you. We've had a bunch of people considering the need for part-time help in the GIS kind of area. And I would hope that everybody kind of gets together and maybe we make that one position or two or whatever, rather than part-time.
I'd, I'd much rather discuss this uh, in a, in a staff type of situation rather than a meeting.
Great.
But uh, I would highly encourage you to look up the GIS Policy Committee. Uh, it is passed by organs by this body. And it does get into all of the GIS tasking. So I know that there are certainly some needs presented from offices and departments. That's really where that GIS Policy Committee comes in. That will look at those projects, will look at what the needs are, will look at the resources that we have available to us. Come up with a holistic approach to that, including the resources that need to be delivered to that. If we collectively, and there's multiple people that sit on this committee. If we collectively come back and say, and look, we really do have a present need to augment GIS staff. In addition to the GIS specialists that we already have, that, that committee will make recommendation to this body. For that position.
Perfect.
Right? Trying to, trying to follow all the procedures. To all the policy purchases.
Do you have questions?
I might have just one other small plug in here if I could to, um. On the Cybersecurity Commission, uh, that I do serve with the State of Utah, um. I know we're talking about legislation and different things and funding to smaller counties. Uh, the last subcommittee that we met on, uh, which was just last month. Gosh, it's October now. Um. We were making a recommend, we're uh, Cybersecurity Commission is making a recommendation. In conjunction with the DTS, which is the Department of Technology Services for the state. Uh, to increase their funding to five million dollars ongoing. From the state uh, towards their city and county outreach program. And particularly they're increasing that to augment their staff. Uh, with at least two more full-time uh, employees that will be essentially tasked with. Going out to smaller political subdivisions, which include not only counties but cities, other special service districts and otherwise. To push out a number of these programs and. Different initiatives that are available to add zero cost to these uh, entities, but a lot of them simply don't even have an IT person. So worked really hard to be able to get that as the governor's office and that committee is very, very supportive of that. I think we see that legislation pushed. I hope if you guys are conducting any kind of legislative piece, if you hear anything that has to do with tech and it has to do with IT. Please loop me in, like a bunch of people know me, they don't mean it. Um, but please uh, you know, speak out in favor of any of those things as your legislator, please. Um, and then just a couple of small notes, you, you mentioned AI, uh, you guys went to UAC, you have a lovely couple of presentations or many on AI. Um, I would say AI is the devil, but AI is very pervasive and please. Anybody who's sitting here staring at me and anybody who's sitting here staring online at the back of my head. Please be very, very cognizant of what you're putting online and what you're putting into any kind of chatbot. I don't care if it's ChatGPT or any of the other. Interests that are out there. We don't necessarily know where that data is going. And please don't put highly sensitive information on there, including publicly or personally identifiable information. Right? The amount of stuff that people are putting into ChatGPT is very alarming in my opinion. Uh, some of the pieces in this uh, that are going to be working over the next year is also on privacy policy. We're also going to be coming out with an AI policy. Until those policies come out. Please be good. Please, um, that's as far as I'm going to go on AI. Um, but I do want to make a couple of notes uh. About phishing and some of the current attacks and things that are happening, particularly with it being election year. There are a number of various phishing attempts that are happening. They're very, very well scripted. They look absolutely legitimate. And they're going to your inboxes. They don't require necessarily an action. You don't necessarily have to click on something. They're compelling you to. Do something, call somebody, create an action. Otherwise gain access to a system. Don't call the number. Don't let somebody onto your system. Don't get hacked. Use two-factor authentication on all of your systems, including your county emails. Please enable multi-factor authentication. It's the world we live in. So on all your bank accounts and otherwise, there's no reason to have enabled your county accounts. As far as phishing goes, there's some very unique um, attempts that are out there. Um, and we're seeing these and I actually have a brief from CISA this morning. Uh, that's talking about uh, an Iranian fact. Um, this is, this is a observed uh, factor that they're seeing across on personal accounts. Very particularly that they're scrubbing websites for your guys' names. And they are looking for any of your personal accounts. Any of your personal accounts, what they're going to try to do is they're going to try to. Get you into. Click, react, or do something on your account. They're doing these in some very clever ways now, including uh, calendar events. You guys see something pop up on your calendar, no idea where it came from, who it is, or what it's about. Please don't click on it. Don't accept it. You can right-click on it. You can delete it. You can report it as spam. Uh, calendar or is one of the more prevalent ones that's happening right now. Um, and then also, we're also seeing um, document sharing, uh, phishing attempts. I see these in my personal accounts as well. Um, people that just, hey, I'm gonna show this document with you. You look at Google. This person has never seen it before in my life. You click on that link. Possibly could expose you to macros, other ways. Get into some bad things. And the last, finally, one, um, are shortened links and QR codes. Uh, we just have your presentation from Cora and she had you scan. If you guys do insist on scanning something, uh, please make sure you hover over it with your phone not engaged, like, like not unlocked. Review what the link is. Look for various pieces within that QR code that are suspicious. Essentially you're looking for three dots, one, two, three, and then watch jumbled. If there's a misalignment with those, if it looks any kind of suspicious, the typical ones you see. It could absolutely redirect you to a different way. It could make you down. Uh, shortened links are the same thing. Anything that uh, you see as a bit L Y or any of those kind of things. Please be very wary. Those, those will potentially pass you through a number of different proxies. That could download information into trade your systems. Again, I bring these up just because this is a public meeting and there are people that are listening to this and applies to everybody. Not just commissioners, the county. So please. Stay prudent, stay cautious.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Matt. Any, any question for Matt before you? Be all right. Oh, I'm sorry. Great.
I kept going, so.
Thanks. Thank you so much, Matt. Appreciate it. All right, it is uh, it is six o'clock, so I will get to our six o'clock citizens be heard session. Um, and then we will get to our next department report. Um, so if you are here to make comment. Um, then I would invite you forward. I'll give you three minutes to speak. Please introduce yourself and then you'll have your opportunity to be heard. So uh, please raise your hand if you're uh, if you would like to come forward and I will call on you. Uh, yeah. Wait.
White Johnston. Uh, I just wanted to uh. You know, encourage you not to pass any of these, these only regulations that they're all gonna, they're all restrictive. They're all gonna sort of hurt both, especially the. The five acre thing and the, and then the, the uh. You know, raising the acreage on agricultural land, that, that will only hurt people. I've heard other, other people call in and compare us to other counties. Others use eighty acres or so. We don't have a whole lot of private agriculture. Because don't four percent, there's not. I can, you know, a county that has tons and tons of, of agricultural land, I could see the need for this, but certainly not a big county. So I encourage you to not vote for either one of them. The other thing I was really upset about the last council meeting. That I think is just absolutely unethical was for the chairman of the planning committee to come here and give his recommendations. With all the county, the rest of the planning committee voted against it. So I, I think that. Really was just unacceptable. I'd probably like to have the county attorney had. Comment on that because I. I actually think that guy should be taken off the panel. I think that was a book that, thank you. I appreciate all your work.
Thank you. Uh, yes, ma'am. No problem. Please sit.
I'm Suzie Johnston. And just for the record, none of it, I don't think any of the zoning changes that you're making are gonna affect our property per se. But I grew up here and I know a lot of people that it will affect. And I guess I'm asking you to vote no, especially on the twenty acre thing and most especially on the density one. Uh, in the twenty twenty-three Moab Area Affordable Housing Plan, they state that fifty-seven percent of the business here is tourism, which I don't think is a surprise to anybody, but it's two-thirds of our economy. And when tourism goes down here, it doesn't just affect the, the people that work in tourism. It affects everybody. Like I had a chiropractor tell me that this summer her business was down because people were getting laid off and sent home and not enough shifts in there where they work in there. In the, you know, in the restaurants that they work in or biking or whatever. So it, it affects everybody. And the big thing that affects tourism here is housing. I think you guys know that too. I, everybody talks about housing, but where is it? I think we need some low density, some high-density, low-income apartment buildings here, and the best place for them is out on the highway. So when you go down from eighteen to five. Units per acre, that doesn't make any sense to me. Especially when the, the Moab Area Affordable Housing Plan said that seventy-six point seven percent of their businesses. Had lost employees because they couldn't get housing. It's almost eighty percent, but not only that, almost ninety percent, eighty-eight point nine. Can't even get fully staffed. So. Let's help our tourism here, help the whole economy and get some housing going out there and vote no on that. Thank you. I appreciate all you guys doing it, by the way.
Thanks. Uh, yes, sir.
My name is Mike Morris. I'm the owner of High Performance Ford of Moab. I again urge you to vote no. When I came invested all this money in Moab, I was told by my realtor, assured by my realtor and other people. That they were gonna build affordable housing. Um, I can't get employees because I have no place to put them. Uh, they can't afford to live here. Uh, you know, a pay scale for a master mechanic is in the forty-five to fifty dollar an hour. And I'm having to do sixty, sixty-five bucks an hour and try to find a place to put them. So, you know, you guys are just killing this town. If we vote yes on this, then you know. This is a great town. We have a lot going on here for everybody and we need to grow. We do not need to. You know, pack it up and, and just be happy with what we've got. You know, if, if we build affordable housing. Hey, I'll even help, you know, let's build some affordable housing so people can afford to live here. And you know, this is a beautiful town. Let's, let's show the people the beauty of this town. We approved the Jeep uh, Jamboree. We turned around and turned down the Bronco Rodeo, which was a big behind. So they go right out of town. It's crazy. I mean, I don't understand, you know? I spent a ton of money and I got rid of a garbage lot, by the way, I, as you guys have seen next to my store. And uh, I wanna build, we're gonna build there and we're gonna keep going. So if I've exceeded my three minutes, I'm sorry. But come on, let's, let's, let's do what we're supposed to do here. But come on, let's, let's, let's do what we're supposed to do here. Vote no.
Thank you. Uh, yes, sir, in the back.
My name is Greg Klebsen. I'm opposite my parents, Billy Klebsen. I actually live in San Juan County. Not by stand up, but by anything. Uh, I'm not exactly sure what the ordinance is, but why it says bad, it's gotta be bad. So I'd say vote against it. Especially if there's something in there about changing what a farm is agricultural. Twenty acres? Why twenty acres? We farm, my family over here on Fifth West Farm, seventeen and a half acres. We have for fifty years. Why change it? So just so you get more tax money? And no reason for it. But, you know, these guys are, like I said, I haven't read the ordinance, which you want to change, I was trying to. I was in Logan yesterday, so I'm not sure. But I'd say vote against it because it's no point in changing something. Sounds like it's not broken, so why fix it? So, I thought.
Good. Thank you. Uh, yes, ma'am. From the front.
So my name is Catherine Olioke, and I would urge you to vote against this because not only the agriculture, ours has been being decreased, decreased, sometimes through no fault of our own because of sales that happened within the family years ago. But that will really hurt us. And then I've been aware that the low income housing or that would be available that's on the highway, as they've mentioned, if that's done away with, I, I'm really concerned about that. Now, I may have been misinformed, but I know that out by the bowling alley and across the street from there, and surely that's his old place. There's some low affordable housing was turned down and I'm not really sure why. And maybe that was misinformation. But I thought if we're really trying to look for it, why don't we let the contractors build and do that type of thing? And I do know, and nobody believes me outside of this town when I say only four percent or a little more own actual personal property. I am one of those. You probably are if you own a home. And the taxing kills us, but we, as the other people have mentioned, we need the affordable housing. And we've heard it for years and years and years. And then they say, we're going to put affordable and then we get these buildings like on Kane Creek in downtown that they're really not affordable. They're so high that the lower income class, they can't even rent it. They, they just can't. I helped volunteer at Wabi and those, some of them are happy to live in their vans and they make such small amounts that one kid even said, I can't even purchase stuff here at Wabi. I'm so poor. And so we really need to look at this and people say, well, you've got land selling. Well, obviously mine isn't necessarily a good residential area there, right there by Maverick. But, you know, we're trying to keep it for our cattle at this point, but I'm sure you're aware that there's going to be the liquor store right there next to it. And I'm really sad about that. But I just hope that you'll vote against that because it's got a lot of questions for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, yeah, in the back. Yes, sir. Pete.
My name is Pete Gross. First, I want to, um, I want to thank the county commission for the, the letter they sent to the state auditor in response. My understanding from how it was reported is that, uh, the chair, the county attorney and the clerk helped write that letter. I thought it was very well written and soundly reasoned. I want to share my personal marketing experience. Somebody you know, I've guided river trips night in Grand Canyon for forty five years from April through October. Guided Hell's Canyon, Maine and Lower Salmon, Grand Canyon. Our trips were five to twenty two days long, the shortest five, longest twenty two. And probably in that period, probably had about three to four thousand people that I've been participating with, a trip with. Notice I didn't say unique individuals. A lot of our customer base were repeat people and word of mouth. And so, uh, one of the things that I think is overlooked is when we're talking about advertising for advertising county, word of mouth. My friend Lonnie built his company in Lower Salmon in Alaska, all for repeat customers and word of mouth. A lot of you probably know Chuck and Judy Nichols. I did some work with them too. And every trip I did with them was like a reunion. They knew most of the people. It'd be somebody else. It was all word of mouth. You can't buy that kind of advertising. You have to earn. And of course, that's just my anecdotal operations. As the saying goes from W E Deming, you've got to trust, although there's must bring data. So what does the data say? Deals and says ninety two percent of customers trust recommendations from friends and family over all forms of advertising. In business to business communications, that number soared to ninety seven percent. User generated content, peer reviews, your forms are more credible. Um, another tourism is one negative experience negates five or more experiences. Moab is getting a reputation for being overrun, crowded and noisy. And what we need to do is we have apartment product, public lands, and we need to protect that so that that product continues to bring people here. So, um, anyway. I appreciate your time. Again, I appreciate your letter and I would encourage the kind of sort of quote advertising you were doing, which was defending our product is the best kind of advertising we can get. So we can promote a public lens of people who want to come see. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff.
Uh, I came and spoke two weeks ago. I don't take much of your time. I just wanted to once again voice my concern and my opinion about the reduction of resident units allowed on having commercial from eighteen to five. I wanted you to just be reminded of a couple of things. First thing, your planning commission actually recommended against this also. So please keep that in mind. Why do we have a planning commission if you're not going to listen to them and they did not agree with that? The second thing, um, like I said, living Moab a long time, we always talk about affordable housing and I can just promise you that if you vote for this, you're actually voting against affordable housing. Thing is really, really simple. Anyone who wishes to reduce density from eighteen to five is voting against affordable housing. That's what you're paying for. And, and so please, uh, just keep that in mind. Um, plus, if you're going to put an apartment complex, I just think it makes sense to put out a big commercial project. That's where it belongs. Anyways, thank you so much.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, Dave. Oh, I'll get, yeah, I'll get, I'll get to Zoom. Yeah, thank you. Uh, no problem. Well, you go to one more here and then I will get to Zoom. Uh, yes, sir, in the yellow shirt in the back.
I'm taught even me and my family have business here in the area for plus to fifty plus years. And I agree with a lot of things that Mike came by and helped bring me up to speed on the producing the, the density eighteen to out to five. I think that's the right idea. For several reasons, it's already been stated. I just think it's skunting growth here in the area. Business map that is regrows. I think it's, it's good for businesses and stuff to continue to have the more affordable housing, which I think that's what allows.
Thank you. All right. I'll go to Zoom. Uh, there's a Jonathan Scarto with the hand up on Zoom. And, uh, yeah, I'll go to Jonathan first, then I'll get to Paul Cousins after that.
Uh, yeah. Are you able to hear me? Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Uh, thank you for the chance to address you. I've, uh, I, I spoke to you to, uh, uh, I spoke a week or a couple of weeks ago, so I'll, I'll be really quick. I just wanted to reiterate my opposition to the reduction in density. Um, I think it's misguided for the county. There's, there's a desperate need for housing. Um, and the only way you're going to get reasonably priced housing is to allow, uh, a little higher densities than what's being proposed. Five, five units an acre, those are big lots for residential. There, there are no service workers going to be able to afford those. So, um, you know, whatever you do, you need to, um, you know, if you're, if you're not going to be, uh, addressing that problem now, you know, when are you going to address it? That, that would be my question.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. Um, we will go to Paul Cousins next. You may unmute and speak, Paul.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Uh, our family has owned property in Moab since the fifties and, uh, I'm very concerned about the zoning change you're proposing. I am asking you to vote no on the zone change from range and grazing with density of five acre.
Uh, we just lost.
To range and resource with density of ten acres per residence. It's, did you with me?
We lost you for just a second, Paul. Maybe, maybe go back one sentence.
Okay. I'm just, I just, I'm concerned about the change from range and grazing with a density of five acres per residence to range and resource with density of ten acres per residence. It seems like the Castle Valley residents want it. Maybe pass it there. But as far as our land, we, we are opposed to this proposition. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else on Zoom? If there's anyone else on Zoom here to speak, uh, you can use the hand raised symbol or you can just unmute and speak. Doesn't look like it. Okay. Uh, I'll continue back in the chambers then. Anyone else, uh, care to make public comment at this time? Uh, yes, sir.
My name's Doug Carroll. I have several properties here in the valley, uh, both commercial and residential. You know, we're just getting over in twenty three, the commercial properties took a sprint with property taxes. I mean, like three hundred percent. A lot of my properties did. Three hundred percent. And my renters are just still reeling from that, you know? Anybody knows, anybody in business knows that property owner, business owner doesn't pay his own taxes. His, his clients, his, his renters pays taxes. And I can't see why we're changing the ordinance from a five acre, uh, allotment to a twenty acre lot. You know, green space in, in the, in the valley here has a great value. And that, that provision, whether, is that a, maybe somebody can answer the question. Is that a county provision? Green belt, a county provision or is it a state provision?
Per, uh, but we're, we're discussing county ordinances here.
It's not a county. I mean, it's not a state.
Uh, no, sir.
I I would kind of beg to differ with that. San Juan.
Are you talking about green belt taxes? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Are you talking about green belt taxes?
Uh, the green belt provision. Is that a state provision or a county provision?
State. Okay, that's state, yeah.
Does this, do we have the, basically the question is, do we have the authority right here in this room to change that? Or do we have to go to the state, say, we would like to change that? Somebody answer that question for me?
What's a tax? Once, if you're talking about tax, the tax designation of green belting, we're talking about different issues.
Okay.
So the one is, one is a recognition of a certain period or a certain chunk of land that's only used for certain types of use. And you get a tax benefit for that or a assessed value that's lower. That's different than.
That's the green belt provision.
Correct. And then, and then if you want to transition that, if you want to transition that use to something else, you would lose that green belt status.
That's correct. Right. No, but my question is, is that a state stat, is that statewide? If I go to San Pete County and I have five acres, can I greenbelt it?
Depending on, yeah.
And I go to San Juan County and do the same thing.
Yes, depending.
So that's a statewide provision. It's not a county provision.
Correct. But you have to meet certain criteria.
That's right. That's right. We do. We have to have five acres. Uh, have to produce a certain product. Uh, but that's not my question. My question is, who's got the authority to change this?
You're combining a couple of different, you're combining a couple of different issues. One's, one's the amount of density that they're going to have on a particular use of land. You could theoretically have a parcel of land that's within the green belt and then seek to change its use. So they're separate, they're sep, they're in some ways separate issues.
No, I'm not talking about the use. I'm not, I'm talking, I'm talking about the provision itself.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're talking about different things. Please email us at the, um, at, at grandcountyutah.net, uh, commission at grandcountyutah.net and, and we can look into your questions and find someone who could provide an answer.
I think we need to answer that question.
Thank you.
I, as a county, the way I understand it, and my dealings with, in, in other, other counties, they've got the same provision. So I'm thinking it's a statewide provision. And the county can't just say, well, I want to change that. I don't think we've got the authority. I, I may be wrong. Thank you, Greg. Uh, thank you for hearing me out. Uh, I hope you take that into consideration. My, my tenants will appreciate me not having to increase their rent again.
Thank you. Uh, further comment from the chambers? Raise your hand, please, and I'll call on you. Okay. And then further comment from Zoom? Anybody else on Zoom? Okay. All right. Uh, that will end our second citizens be heard session. There's also a, uh, public hearing where we can take comment on those particular issues. Later on in the, in the agenda. Uh, I think we are up to, we're doing the NRC. Or which, anytime after six. Anytime after six. Okay. Okay. All right. Okay. We'll get to, um, NRCS is going to be quick and Dan's been on the, waiting for a while, so maybe. Okay, okay. Let's do that. Uh, we. No, we haven't done that. We have, there's a lot we haven't done yet. Okay, let's, we'll go to our NRC. This is still a department report. We'll go to our NRCS request for assistance under emergency watershed protection program. Uh, that is being presented by our county engineer, Dan Stenta. And then after that, I will move up the public hearing to take care of that aspect. And then we'll get back to our general reports. So Dan, I'll welcome you to, uh, the meeting.
Thank you, Chair. I, I wasn't planning on doing a presentation. This was kind of more of an update, um, to keep you in the loop. I know I brought this possibility of this grant to your attention in, uh, I think your last, or two meetings ago. Due to the time sensitive nature, um, I discussed with Quinn and then we just submitted a letter on behalf of the county, um, to NRCS to start that process. That's already in the works. And this is kind of just a FYI so that you guys are in the loop and know what's going on.
Great. Thank you, Dan. That's really all that was, just an FYI. We did this because it was time sensitive. Any questions for Dan concerning this? Okay. As promised, it was quick. Very quick. All right. Thanks so much, Dan. Appreciate it. Okay. Now we will get back to our, uh, public hearings. This is a public hearing to approve, uh, changes to the land use code. And I would welcome Amy Weiser from Planning and Zoning to, uh, present this. Thanks, Amy. Welcome.
Pull that close to me so people can hear.
No, that's great. I know. We, we have, we have microphones.
Thank you. Um, I will try to share my screen. Uh, let's see if I can accomplish this. So just to, um, people in the audience and on Zoom, I just want to clarify, um, the public hearing we're doing right now is for, um, a series of zone changes that went before the planning commission on September twenty third. Um, which is different than the zone changes that are in action later that have, that have been discussed so far this evening. So I just want to clarify.
And thank you so much for that. Zone changes, you have land use code changes.
So this is, um, proposed changes to the land use code for, um, different sections than the REI twenty, the HC that were discussed earlier. So these were, um, uh, held back from the last planning commission meeting because they were focusing on some other code revisions, but they wanted to make sure that these went forward. These are revisions that, um, staff really wanted to bring forward. They're bringing certain sections of the code in compliance with revised state statutes, uh, different language, uh, updated floodplain, um, ordinances, things like that. So this is more of a housekeeping updating of various sections of the code. So I just want to run through it really quick, uh, so that everybody's aware of what, what this one is. Um, so this is, uh, for three point two. Uh, this is basically, uh, requiring that new subdivisions install public improvements, um, which is there right now. But when we have large commercial and multifamily development, it doesn't currently require that, um, needed public improvements might need to be installed. So we're just adding that into the code so that if someone's doing a commercial or multifamily development and those improvements, uh, some utilities might need to be improved or public utilities, but that might be made a part of their and those improvements, uh, some utilities might need to be improved or public utilities, but that might be made a part of their conditions of approval. Uh, the other one is the accessory dwelling unit standards. We're just bringing this into compliance with state code. Our section was a little outdated, so we're just, all the language that we're proposing is bringing it up to, uh, state code standards. Uh, Article six, this was, um, again, our, um, fence section was a little bit out of date. So we are just updating that section and I could pull that up in a minute. And also, um, we have, uh, an adopted floodplain prevention ordinance. It's ordinance number five ninety-eight. But it was not, it was, um, adopted by the county commission, but then it wasn't referred to in our land use code. So that's simply what this is doing is acknowledging that there's that document, um, as part of our floodplain, uh, prevention. Also, uh, we added a separate natural and historic drainage ways section, um, and so I can we can look at that. But again, this is just bringing our code up to date. Uh, also, we added additional submittal requirements for preliminary plots, um, especially for developments outside of the groundwater and sewer service agency service area. Uh, and how about does it? Um, uh, and also, oh, for a site site plan applications, making sure that commercial and multifamily developments, um, need to submit a site plan application as well. Uh, the planning commission forwarded a favorable recommendation to the county commission as follows. Uh, for Article three, the proposed revisions, uh, the planning commission approved a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to the county commission for all proposed revisions, um, as amended during the meeting. They did amend a few sections and that's updated in what's in your packet. Uh, for Article six, uh, the planning commission approved a motion to forward a favorable recommendation for all the proposed revisions as amended during the meeting. Again, that's reflected in your packet. And for Article nine, um, again, they forwarded a favorable recommendation, uh, for all the proposed revisions. Um, I can pull up any of those exhibits if you need them. Um, so that's, and I'm here for questions if you have.
Thank you, thank you so much, Amy. Um, I, yeah, I looked through those earlier today. Anybody have any questions or comments for Amy before I open the public here? Kevin?
I did have one about the, um, chapter six, um, with the floodplain provisions and I, um, I guess it's more of a question than a statement, but my recollection, when we've talked about this in the past is that we have, we have this ordinance five ninety-eight, which you refer to, it's not in the packet right now, which, um, you know, talks about the floodplain. And in there, it says, it's sort of, I think there's some language that says these are minimum requirements and the land use code can you know, impose additional requirements. Um, and then it seems like there's a lot of things being struck on the land use code here. So I'm just wondering if, are we actually, I mean, is this strengthening floodplain provisions or weakening them? I, my guess is it's actually weakening them a bit and and, uh, you know, that may or may not be a good idea, but I think it's important to understand. Um, I mean, I, I think some, some of your predecessors, not you, you know, were sort of saying, oh, this, this is obsolete because we've got ordinance five ninety-eight. But ordinance five ninety-eight itself says that, you know, it can, you know, be supplemented by things in land use code. So I, I, I just wanted to flag that issue and make sure we understand what we're doing if if we do.
So this was recommended by Dan Stenta, our county engineer. Um, he felt that ordinance five ninety-eight provides all of the language that we need for floodplain, for flood damage prevention, and it doesn't need to be reiterated in the code in its, uh, in its entirety. So a lot of this language that you see struck through was very much out of date. Um, and we also separated the natural and historic drainage ways into its own section. So the floodplain damage prevention ordinance five ninety-eight spells out everything that, uh, we currently need to address those issues.
Thanks, Amy. Any further, uh, questions or clarifications? Okay, I will now open this, uh, public hearing, um, to approve changes to the land use code as, uh, presented by our planning and zoning director. Um, the public hearing will remain open until five o'clock on Wednesday the, uh, night. And any comments, uh, can be directed to commission at Grand County Utah.net and will be entered into the record. Um, I will now go to the room here. Is there anyone here who would like to make comment on, uh, this particular, uh, public hearing? Please raise your hand if you would. And is there anybody online who is here to make comment on this particular public hearing? Okay, looks like not. Okay, public hearing will remain open until next Wednesday at five o'clock. Uh, again, please direct comments to commission at Grand County Utah.net and this will should, uh, come back to us at our next meeting. Um, we will now move on to our general reports. Uh, we're up to our commission member disclosures. Any commissioner have anything they need or, uh, would care to disclose about anything that's on today's agenda? All right, looks like not. So we'll start with general commission reports and future considerations. Uh, Kevin, are you ready for, uh, a report?
Um, sure. Um, so today I, uh, attended a cooperators meeting for the, um, Airs Ears Plan, so they're just about to release their final plan. I think it's out on Friday. My my general impression is that compared to the preferred alternative from a few months ago, it's moved, you know, more towards the traditional plan and less unusual. Watered down in some ways, um, in different ways. But anyway, that's, if if anyone's really eager to see the advanced copy before, let me know. Um, into a few budget advisory board meetings, last thing, but I I think we'll be having a full discussion of that. Later, um, Bill and Jacques and I attended a fire meeting, um, maybe I'll let Bill take the lead on discussing that one. That's okay. Um, and then I, um, I lost, last, last week, I, I had a meeting with, um, Gabe at the state auditor to discuss, um, some issues in our audit, sort of spirit of better understand each other's positions and trying to narrow differences. Um, I just want to make, you know, yeah, I don't, I don't know what the outcome of those discussions are going to be, but whatever it is, it will have to come back for the full commission. But I just want to make sure, you know, that I, I think I have a good feeling for what a majority of the commission thinks on this issue. But if someone wants to give up or doesn't think they should be having, please let me know. Like, again, it's, you know, nothing official happening, but just, you know, exploring.
All right, Evan.
Uh, the end of the month was quiet for me and I did attend the, uh, the open house put on by our consultants regarding the land use. So that was, uh, surprisingly well attended. So kudos to those organizers and making that happen. Um, I appreciated seeing, uh, all the folks in the room and the feedback that they were giving to, uh, some of the ideas. Um, future considerations, uh, Mike and I will be substituting for Bill and Trish at the Mill Creek meeting this upcoming week. And I'm not super familiar with many of the projects that are on proposals. So if you guys feel strongly about it, it sounds like, uh, the majority of them are within city boundaries and they'll be the main stakeholder. They're just kind of waiting, but, um, uh, I just wanted to put that out to folks that, um, you can get with either of us before.
If you'll, I will try to, but if you'll email or remind me, I can send up for a PDF from the last meeting.
Okay, excellent. Thanks for me too.
Did I not send a date? Have I?
There was a few.
I'm in the same boat there.
There are so many, uh, flood plans and discussions going on. I'm like, wait, this one's from Tuvalu. Anyway, it's, uh, not new discussions, but, um, yes, that's all I got.
Thanks, Evan. Uh, Bill?
Yeah, as Evan said, we've done multiple budget advisory board meetings. Um, then on the nineteenth, I participated in a state fire, Moab Valley Fire and myself phone call, which then instigated the meeting on the thirtieth that I will get to a little bit later in my report. But it became clear that the state wanted to make sure that everything was up to snuff with this annexation process from their point of view and to get both legal involved, our county attorney and their attorney general, I believe was his title. But I'll, I'll get to that in my, in my notes a little bit later. I also attended the Utah Airport Operators Association Conference in Provo. And it was a huge learning experience for sure, but the most fun that came out of that is the future air traffic taxis that are coming and the military has already ordered quite a few of them. But basically you get picked up in a Uber craft and delivered across the river or wherever. It's taxi service via air.
Like, like back to the future.
It, it looked pretty cool. I want to ride in one, so.
Better write some new codes.
There we go. Um, audit committee meeting also, we were a part of, um, Trish, Kevin and I. And so had some stuff out of that. That was quite a while back, I would say, on the twenty-third. Another budget advisory meeting. We also had the southeastern Utah Watershed Council meeting that I participated. Trish is the chair on that. I'll let her fill you in. And then I had to leave early on that one to go to the state fire meeting, which the state was just trying to, as I said earlier, give an overview of what they expected out of this to make sure that mainly all of the participants, participants and the county residents are covered under the initial attack. And so by the annexation process, we're moving the initial attack into TJ and the Moab Valley Fire Department's territory. And yet we're still maintaining the state fire warden under the county who is Bruce Jenkins and he's got Cody, his assistant. So there's, the state fire warden gives the entire county, which is us as commissioners to oversee an umbrella policy that if a fire turns into a catastrophic one, then the state steps in and takes the cost of that fire and they handle it. And so there's just a lot of moving parts and it, it was a very informative and somewhat long meeting. And then I came back later that night for the public meeting and there were about maybe five members of the public from Green River, Castle Valley area, not Castle Valley Township, but proper. And then a few others just sparse throughout the county that had some concerns. Willow Basin, somebody was there for and they voiced their concerns and none of them were un-unhandleable, I guess. TJ was able to go through and show them where he'd be able to take care of their needs. Um, what else have I got here? Uh, flood mitigation ad hoc meeting, Mary Trish and I also participated in that with some members of the public and they can fill in. But it, it had a lot of positive suggestions for what could be done to help some of this in the future. And I think that's the end of mine.
Great, thank you, Bill. Uh, Trish?
Okay, I'll try to go really, uh, quick. I went to a MOP meeting, Moab Area Watershed Partnership. The one thing that kind of, two things that stood out, we're going to talk about the Guissa grant later on. So, um, just one is, you know, we do have some E. coli issues specifically in Lower Pack Mill and Castle Creek. Um, the other thing is, um, USGS, they just kind of gave a little update on that, the twenty-third flood. They said out of Mill Creek, it was at like sixty-six hundred CFS. Um, it overflows the gauges at thirteen hundred. I don't actually want to, anyways, but basically they said the water coming out of the North Fork of Mill Creek was quite huge. One thing I want to add on to that is my next water workshop, we wanted to have Chris come and do, uh, presentation on flooding. They have an amazing presentation on just kind of their flooding historical data. And then there's another individual USGS that kind of has done, I don't know what you call that, but looks at the geologic history of the valley and is able to surmise the, the floods that happened before we had gauges. And so he would do that presentation. So I think just as far as it'll be of interest and I'll get more information to you as I put that together. Um, I went out to Castle Valley and talked to residents about, uh, tax taxes. And so, um, hopefully that helped just to have somebody there and listening to their concerns. I went to the Guissa meeting again. They were going to talk about a grant that they're proposing. A couple of things that stood out. One thing that they said was water use is down, but the revenue is the same because they have increased, um, fees. And so it's always a good thing when water use is down and they're staying solvent. Um, again, they talked about major issues with that flooding specifically coming off of Johnson's up on top. So they had some infrastructure damage, then came through that dry wash down through Chapman Heaven and Easy Streets. Um, a couple of things, a snow and lake report, the precipitate is twenty-five point one inches. The average is thirty-one point two, so we're down. And then the soil moisture at approximately ninety-five hundred feet is five percent. And last year, thirty-three percent. So soil moisture is quite, uh, low. That's the rest. You guys have kind of covered all of those things. Oh, I did go to the Moab Regional Hospital with a number of other people. Um, just, they were kind of just celebrating that they've all of their new infrastructure, forty-four thousand square feet, I believe it was. So, so that was great. Uh, and as far as the watershed council that we had yesterday, it's, it's, I thought it was a great meeting. We're bringing together, you know, San Juan and Grand County. And we kind of have been just doing, I guess, process. It was a new mandate that came out of the Colorado River Authority. I don't know if I'm saying that correct. Anyways, it's a new mandate, um, but I think the first couple of meetings were more like, oh, no, another meeting. And then I thought the meeting the other day was just really great because we could start dipping our toes into like, what are the needs of this region? The one thing they did point out that would be relevant to specifically Kinslake is I guess there's some funding for dam, you know, infrastructure and making sure that dams are secure. And I believe it's FEMA funding, so I don't know if you guys knew about that, but I'll throw that out. I know that San Juan County is looking at Lloyd's Lake, for example, and they want to make sure that they're near the top of the list. And if Kinslake is in that same boat, um, but that's it for me.
Thanks, Trish. Yeah, Mike?
Mine's a little more simple. Uh, my meetings are all sort of the first of the month coming up this week. Uh, I want to reiterate what Evan said, need a little background information heading to that meeting so we can represent you guys the best. Uh, I hope to hear from you, Quinn, on that one, uh, before tomorrow or, uh, the third, so, all right, thanks.
That's very sweet, short tweet. Mary?
Yes, I had an economic opportunity advisory board. We talked about the opportunity grants that will be the rural opportunity, the opportunity grant, the rural county grants and how to better, uh, engage the community and to develop a timeline. So we can be very timely and get, you know, really good, um, grants. Proposals collect from the state who works with us from the Economic Development Department in the state discussed how she can, uh, give us assistance and how to work effectively with the state and the assistance available to help us from the state. And so I'm really, we, she's been great. She's good to work for with and she's at every one of our meetings, which is a lot of nice support from the Economic Opportunity, uh, State Board. Our next, uh, everybody was given the trails to tomorrow's study. And everyone is going to create, uh, to, to spend this month studying it in depth in an in-depth way. And then after we study it, we're going to start to kind of work on creating ideas for a path forward using that study. We had, I had a housing authority meeting, uh, HOSU is close to me and settled in their new building. I was unable to attend the meeting at the new building because I wasn't feeling well that day. I just attended on Zoom. Uh, we will not be getting any new vouchers in the foreseeable future, which is, it's too bad. Uh, uh, but right now we have, uh, seventy families with vouchers and four of which are veterans. I won't go through all of the vacancies and such because it's already late, but, uh, there's vacancies for all of our affordable housing. I mean, there's a waiting list on all of our affordable housing units. Uh, I had a solid waste special service meeting. Uh, Chris Sobel is, uh, the man, now the manager of Solid Waste Special Service District. Uh, they, uh, just finished the survey. Uh, they've uh just finished the survey of the Moab landfill. Once the survey is completed, we will have a better idea of the life of the Moab landfill. And they're working on cell five at Klondike for its expansion. And we voted on a sixth board member.
Agreed.
So, and then they reported on the rest of the meetings that I attended. That's the nice thing about being fast and light. Our second to last.
All right. And I suppose we'll see the next, that board member at the next meeting. That's great. Okay. Um, I uh, I attended a Museum of Moab um board meeting where we talked about uh different ways of fundraising and how we can get uh more locals involved in that and involved in the museum. Uh, then we talked about the, the, the big exhibit that that's been planned for a long time is the uranium exhibit, the U-92 exhibit. Um, it is delayed a little bit, but it's delayed so that that could be as, as awesome an exhibit as possible because it's a big part of, of history. Um, so definitely looking forward to that. It's coming next year. That'll be, that'll be super fun. Um, we also talked about uh getting, looking for sponsors for the exhibits, so specific exhibit sponsors for that, which I think is a great idea um for the museum. Then I also, like others, met with the, the Future Land Use Code Consultants and attended that open house and I was pleasantly surprised at how well attended that open house was. That was, that was, that was great. Um, the most fun thing I've done in a really long time uh was, I guess it was yesterday, it's like forever ago. But it was the, the Wish for Wheels. So there, there's an awesome charity that, that teamed up with some locals. The Synergy Company helped sponsor it and also Trail Mix was involved and I was involved with Trail Mix. But we just, we literally in two hours built 125 bikes that were uh provided. And those bikes went to every single second grader in Grand County. So we had a, a good number of volunteers putting those bikes together. And then we presented the bikes to the kids over at HMK and then I wasn't able to, to do the one over at the charter school. But uh, but, but getting a couple of kids and, and getting them on the bikes, the kids that I uh helped out hadn't, didn't actually know how to ride bikes really. And it'd been a really long time since I taught my daughters how to ride bikes. So that was, that was really, really fun uh seeing all these kids. It's, it's awesome because some of them just got on and started riding wheelies right away. And others, you definitely needed the uh, needed the hand under the seat, you know, guiding them a little bit with the balance and, and how to, how to use the coaster brakes. So, so again, that was, that was super fun. It's an awesome charity. It's called Wish for Wheels. And, and, and I definitely appreciate all the support that everyone gave to making that happen. Because every second grader definitely deserves a bike. And after that, I also attended the fire annexation um meeting that, that Bill and Kevin stock, uh spoke of. And I, I think Bill's summary of that was really good. I, I think that was um uh, well, well said. And I don't have anything to add there. Uh, I also wanted to um mention that a couple of meetings ago, a few of us had, 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 we'd been in a Trail Mix and a motorized trail committee meeting and BLM was looking at doing a e-bike scoping period in September and they decided to delay it. They're actually doing that now. So the scoping period started today and it's going to run through November 1st. And if anyone wanted to make comments on uh potential changes to uh e-bikes on BLM trails and land, you can do that on the BLM e-planning website until November 1st. And that is all I have. So I know Jameson's been online forever. Um, so I will start our election officials reports off with Jameson. Are you uh there Sheriff?
Yep, I'm here.
Awesome. Thanks for waiting.
Let me share my screen with you. All right, this is the August monthly stats. Uh, we had 2,796 calls into our dispatch center, 659 911 calls. Deputies responded 875 calls for service, 256 traffic stops, 28 arrests. We served a lot of papers, 113. And our search and rescue calls were at 13. Um, today we found out uh that we, we submitted a grant for the pre-trial release deputy to the CCJJ. We were requesting $133,000. Today we, we found out it sounds like we're successful in this. We're just waiting on a formal signature. Those funds are to start a pre-trial service program. We currently don't have one. Pre-trial program is to give more pre-trial liberties. Um, not everyone qualify for this program. It's based on the judge's order. The program is basically probation before they're convicted. So this is a, a pretty big deal. Um, we've been getting feedback from the transportation office of the school bus that there's been several violators. And so what we did is we've created a social media video, talked about running school buses, stop signs, defiance that come with that. Um, and then what I've done with our offices, I've instructed the deputies to follow the buses if they're not busy with other calls. We want to make a clear slogan here that school safety starts with children getting to and from school safely. The school buses do have high definition cameras on them. So when the transportation office has a violator, they can report those issues to either my office or the city police department. We can then go and issue a citation. The staff and I recently attended the annual sheriff's conference in St. George last year. And next week, I'm hosting the Sheriff's Association Monthly Meeting at Red Cliffs Lodge. And that's all I have on that. If anybody has any questions on the pre-trial, feel free to ask me. Um, once I get the six, once I get the formal signature, I can give you a little bit more information on that, but if you guys have any questions on that, feel free to ask me.
All right. Um, thanks, Jameson. Also, I, I wanted to say on the, on the school bus thing, that goes for, it's not just for, for cars. That goes for bikes and, and other folks also have to stop for those.
Yep, correct.
Awesome. All right. Um, yeah, that's, that's great information to get out there. And I know that's a, a super important topic. Uh, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any, or any, any questions for Jameson while we're police here? All right. Thank you, Sheriff. Uh, I will move on to our uh county clerk, uh, Gabe, anything to report?
Thanks, Doc. Um, so the next time, election season upon, is upon us, as I'm sure we all know. Um, next time this body meets will be the day that um, my office can kind of give the go ahead to our election printers um, to send, to get those ballots on their way to mailboxes. Um, and they should hit local mailboxes here in those few days after October 15th. If, if past history in elections is any um, is any test, we usually see it happen relative quite, quite quickly right after that, that first date. So 16th, 17th, 18th, obviously I don't want to make any guarantees there, but that's when ballots of the mailboxes. Um, we just posted uh the uh, uh, the first round of financial disclosures of all local candidates. That's on the Grand County website on, in the elections tab. Um, there was a September 30th voluntary uh disclosure date that I put in. Uh, we had initially, or we had talked a few meetings ago about um a new ordinance related to financial disclosures. Um, and because currently the, the current uh deadlines uh in place for the such disclosures uh weren't timely as it relates to um providing more, as much information as possible to voters when they get their ballots and when they would likely return those ballots. Meaning, and what I mean to say by that is it was right up close to election day where, what, when, which is after a lot of voters will have already voted. Um, so I instituted a voluntary financial disclosure deadline and there was great participation. And I do appreciate all the candidates in complying with that. Um, the first extract is um to be sent to the printer this Friday, actually. So uh, what that means is everyone who's active, registered and um set up to receive a ballot, we're going to send a, an extract file to our printer for them to print ballots and have those ready to be sent out on the 15th. So that, that process already starts, however, um the voter registration deadline quote unquote is October 25th. So folks can still vote or still come in and register and um and, and vote with a regular ballot up until that date. And then um, and then of course, the, the folks can still vote uh up to uh election day via provisional ballot after the 25th. We have a public logic and accuracy test scheduled for Monday, October 14th. That'll be the day before the next commission meeting. Um, and that's just the, that process whereby we publicly um test and uh verify the results and make sure that all of our election related equipment is operating as it should, as we expect it to, just to make sure that. And, and we do that internally um before even the public test. So there are several tests that go on, just so we're, we're knowing that that um that our tabulators are counting ballots as they should and, and, and so, and the um, the voting, the uh ballot marking devices that are out in the lobby, that those are marking ballots um just as they should. Um, in-person voting will be available starting uh the 22nd of October up and all the way up until election day. And uh, yeah, I, I guess the only other thing I want to say is as those ballots hit mailboxes and folks are getting their ballots, um, we really just encourage folks to, you know, I know we all like to sit down and really, especially this is a big general election ballot, two-sided. So everyone wants to study and make, make sure that they're, they're voting their ballot on, you know, with, with, you know, thought and lots of thought and care. Um, but get those ballots in. Uh, don't wait all the way until election day. Um, that really helps our, the efficiency of our processes and helps folks that are, are coming in last minute to vote. It just helps, it, it just helps everything run much more smoothly. So even if you can get it in that Friday before the, before election day, that helps us a lot. Um, and yeah, other than that, I'll just leave it to the election notes. Got budget advisory board meetings back to Wednesdays at 10 a.m. Encourage any members of the public or any commissioners that are on, on that board if they're available to attend. Thanks.
Thank you, Gabe. Uh, Stephen?
Yes, um, just a few for everyone. Uh, went to the fire annexation meeting. Um, I think what's likely going to be a substantial discussion regarding liability, responsibility and delegation. It seemed like those were the favorite phrases for the director and the director's counsel. Uh, again, the fire annexation, one of the tricky elements of that process is making sure that Grand County will continue to be liable for fires and the responses for fires. Although we would be delegating the action, uh ultimately, ultimately we still are responsible for making sure that they do that. So creates a kind of an odd, uh, odd dynamic, but her, uh, the director's attorney and I are working on that and trying to see if we can come into a, a good understanding and a good agreement. Um, next, I attended the audit meeting. Uh, I attended the Utah Prosecution Conference up in Salt Lake. I turn around uh next week, Sim Gill has invited uh me on, I guess their dime to go up and attend the National Best Practices Prosecution Conference up in Salt Lake. Um, so I could not turn that down that they would uh cover the cost of the hotel and only a hundred bucks for the registration. I have attended also the arguments for uh VRC. I handled those on Friday. Um, the judge was very supportive of the position that the county had. He seemed to have uh many questions for the defendants in the case. And he indicates that he'll get a response 60 to 90 days. Um, I think it will take usually that, that long for that, but we had um really great showing there. And he seemed to really appreciate that. We had a lot of help from Matt Church and his team. So appreciate them.
I just want to clarify that BRC is the Blue Ribbon Coalition lawsuit for people who aren't. Yeah.
Correct. Yep. We're down to just one item. As the commission mayor called, it was originally 13 items, naming all of you personally. Uh, we've removed all of you personally as uh litigants. Um, we should reduce that down to just the city and the county. And from the original 13 complaints, it narrowed down to one complaint. And we filed what's called a declaratory judgment, uh, which focuses on certain elements. Uh, we had a long discussion regarding standing. If you guys are excited about it, I'm more than happy to run through the arguments that we made. I don't think most will, but hey, we're always here. Um, I attended the uh Mick Public Lands Day. That was very well attended. We also attended Justice Coalition. That's a meeting that we have uh quarterly with the courts. So judge, uh, we had Judge Welsh O'Donnell, Judge White, Judge Torson, uh, public defenders. And we discuss uh kind of issues that are coming up and talking about changes to uh the codes and kind of the responses to being virtual. And they codified some of the uh court appearance uh issues. And so last two things I'm going to note, uh, we had a great opportunity to meet with the assessor. Uh, Commissioner Winfield, Commissioner Dean and the assessor uh took time out of their schedule to talk about a really critical issue. Um, we spoke about how to, how to transition onto yearly um assessments of the properties. We talked to her about what her, her office would need, what support they would need. Uh, it was a good conversation. She was receptive. Uh, again, I just want to thank her. She didn't have to come meet with us, but um, I thought that was a really great uh communication that we had. Um, we've also, also met with uh Peter, Peters Propan. I'll talk, talk about that in a moment. And the last thing, uh, two more things, sorry. Um, I've talked to Aaron Lancaster. He's one of the attorneys that does conflict prosecution work for my office about continuing to help more work, um, to do more work at our office. Um, he seems like he'll be able to take more hours on. I know Bart Coons is listening in. We're also uh trying to uh wrestle him into taking more work on for us, especially in the realm of planning and zoning questions. So the attorney's office is getting a contract held that way. And I think that's been a really good benefit because we don't have to pay for uh retirement or insurance because they're already covered with that at their other works. And then last, pre-trial services. Uh, this is something that nobody hopes that they ever have to encounter, but pre-trial services really takes away a lot of, a lot of weight to put on to the jail staff. If I have a certain circumstance or a certain case where I have a defendant that does a, a certain thing and involves uh maybe either narcotics or something difficult. If we don't have some sort of mechanism to kind of help monitor them in the community, then I'll, I oftentimes have to argue for incarceration because there's not any services. And so when the CJC met, and I know Commissioner Clapper and Commissioner Currie know about this. When we met originally, there was really a lot of restrictions on what we could get funding for. And that's been the number one issue because we're not a big city. We don't have advanced uh help for probation services. And so I know that's not something very exciting, but it's huge for a lot of folks that have uh especially dependency issues and substances. So that is a huge win. It's really exciting. Uh, but again, uh, might not be as exciting for all us, you know, law-abiding citizens, but that means a lot for uh both the budget for the uh sheriff's office, for the jail and everything else. That's enough. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Stephen. Kevin, busy. All right, uh, admin report, Quinn?
I think I went to a bunch of the same meetings everybody else did and probably a few others. Don't need to be discussed here. I did want to get out in front of one thing, the December 3rd commission meeting. The agenda deadline for that will be the week of Thanksgiving. So I, Alicia and I would love to package, publish that packet on Tuesday. Instead of Thursday.
Yeah.
So just keep that in mind. I know it's still a month and a half out, but it's.
No, that's great. You can't, can't say that too early. Like, like everything else, everything kind of comes in the last minute.
Be aware that that will be, that is the week of the Thanksgiving holiday of that, all the
Yeah.
stuff for that next packet we do.
Great. Also, while we're on that topic, um, the commission meeting, the first commission meeting in November, I believe traditionally fall is going to fall on election day. If we, do we, did we, it's Wednesday. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So yeah, just letting everybody know that too. So that meeting will actually be on Wednesday, the 6th instead of Tuesday, the uh 5th because of election day. Thanks. Okay, let's see, we are now up to our general business and action items. And uh, uh, due to request and because they've been here for the entirety of the meeting, I'm going to move up action item number nine. And that is the Peters Propane Appeal of Zoning Interpretation. And uh, this presentation is to uh Stephen Stock, our Grand County Attorney.
So an update on this, and this is going to be kind of a, a new, uh, it's kind of a different way of resolving this matter. So uh, this originally came before the Planning and Zoning Office for determination based on uh, an application that had been provided by the applicant. While the application was pending, uh, it was at, at a certain point it was denied and then they immediately sought the ombudsman's office uh intervention and conversation. I had the opportunity early on to discuss with the ombudsman's office, kind of the county's position, the applicant who's here as well. Um, discussed their position as well. The ombudsman indicated to us that they were going to issue a written decision. And um, sometime between that call that he said he was going to write a, a written decision, he later contacted the applicant and indicated that the uh based on his review of everything, he was likely going to roll in favor of the applicant. Uh, based on that, uh, that got passed to me. I, I expressed a little bit of frustration with the ombudsman's office because they didn't let the county know. They just told the applicant. They just told the applicant, uh, and I got to hear it through the grapevine. So I called the ombudsman's office, uh Chrissy Hoffine and I chatted with them about the basis for the decision. Uh, but essentially they cited two ambiguities in our code. And really the argument whether what they were applying for would fall under the definition of the fueling station or not. Uh, the ombudsman's position was that the code was ambiguous enough that they would not be able to support the determination that the county had made. So it means that the ombudsman's office would likely be uh willing to provide a written opinion in favor of the applicant. So to avoid having to go through that process, uh my recommendation would be to reverse the decision or the zoning uh decision by uh P N Z. And I've talked with uh Amy Weiser. We actually, in fact, Amy Weiser and the applicants and I all met in my office this morning and discussed how we kind of go about the process. Um, the ombudsman in their call with me indicated the county um should have the applicant go back, reenter into the planning stage. Um, there are some things that I think the applicant and the county could work on to kind of meet and make common ground. Um, talking about reducing the size of tanks or figuring out how driveways and roadways work and and ultimately come to an agreement uh through that natural planning process instead of uh bucking the trend. And so I know the applicants are here and I know um Ms. Weiser here, planning director is here. Um, that was our conversation that we had today. That was the conversation that I have with the ombudsman. The reason why I'm making that recommendation and as uh is because we we know uh that if there is an adverse decision from the ombudsman's office, there could be penalties that are associated with it. Um, and so my recommendation to commission is to reverse the decision made by uh P N Z and have them go back and process the application. Uh, my understanding is it's already gone through a big chunk of the art, the D R T review process. Um, there'll be some additional comments that will have to be made, but that's where we're at. And so I think I've stated everything fairly, but I I think it would be appropriate to invite up the pizza director and the applicant.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah, Amy and uh yeah, we'll come forward. Thanks.
One, one thing I'd like to start off with is the tank size can't be bought. Tanks already purchased. It's thirty thousand gallons capacity. It's it's they've purchased, so there's a lot of things that we can work around. So we are definitely open to that as a work ethic.
Great. Then A- Amy, do you have anything to add?
Uh, just that, uh, you know, we all spoke this morning and we set up a meeting uh for Friday uh with planning staff and our engineer and hopefully Bill Jackson from Rhodes and hopefully also uh Mark Larson. Are you not representative? Great. So we're all gonna get together and and come up with a way to move forward. So.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes. So we we talked about maybe trying to resolve this without this process, but I think it's the cleanest would be to uh make a formal reversal of the uh planning and zoning director. There's not a, there's not a written out motion, but um essentially we want to make a reversal of the planning and zoning director uh decision on this and then send it back to uh the planning office to uh process the application.
Okay.
The the argument originally, and I I can look at my notes, originally the argument was that that specific use was not permitted in the area.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to reverse planning and zoning's decision to not allow Peters propane um to exist. I'm just kind of making this up on parcel number zero two dash zero 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 seven dash zero one two two. Send it back through the process, the planning process. If that makes sense.
That's not good, Stephen. Okay, great. Okay, motion on the table, uh Commissioner Aden, second from Commissioner Winfield. Any further discussion on this before we vote? Kevin, looks like.
Yeah, I I guess I'm, I mean, I'm I'm not familiar with the details of this case. I I haven't I could super carefully, but just procedurally, it seems a little bit funny to me that we're not getting an ombudsman. We're just getting someone in the office saying, I mean, is there, can we just ask them to actually write the opinion?
So there's there may be a strategic decision as to why the county wouldn't necessarily want them to go through and write the decision. So in in my conversations with him, he said, number one, the ombudsman's office is overly bogged down with the reports that they have to do. So originally they had indicated to both the applicant and I and the applicant correctly, if I'm saying anything wrong. Originally, the idea is that perhaps the county and the applicant can enter in what's called alternative dispute resolution. We can work together and try to resolve it. Communications kind of broke down, and he said, I'm going to write a a written opinion. The difficulty with the written opinion is it's gonna take a a longer period of time. And so we, I thought he we were waiting for a written opinion. And I think the applicant until uh he got contacted, thought we were waiting for a written opinion. But at a certain point, he indicated that he he was uh based on his research and information, he was going to rule in favor of the the applicant. So we could theoretically wait for that, but then at that point, that's gonna be in another two weeks and it delays it further.
Trish?
So just a couple of quick comments. Um, you know, this is an industry that really regulates itself, uh but the distribution of propane. So I don't think we could attempt to regulate it. I I the industry regulates itself. Um, this is a much needed service in this community and surrounding communities. And then lastly, these people have, they've been, they've been in this process for a very long time. So I hope that when it does return to P and Z, it'll be expedited, and I know that you'll do that, Amy. So thank you.
Thanks, Trish.
So when it goes back to P and Z, we're looking at just saying that what we said was non permissible before is now permissible in this zone? Or we're looking at a zone change or no, it's a it would be a permissible use within the zone.
So it would be just a different interpretation of it?
Correct.
Okay.
And then they still still need to go through the remainder of the development review team process. So and one of the things that they need to look at are uh it's gonna be the drive, it's currently a driveway. Uh, and they need to look at what we need to do to make that possible for uh customers or consumers to utilize it to get fuel.
All right, any other comments before I call for a vote?
Um, yeah, I guess it's still. Yeah, so it it feels a little bit funny just over overruling a decision without really I, you know, ba- based on, you know, I remember that, you know, um, and and I understand that the ombudsman issues a decision, you know, that's something that stakes much higher for us. We might go back down to that point. And 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 again, I'm not, I haven't like immersed myself in the detail details of this, which is
I mean, I mean, the difficulty runs when the county, if the ombudsman's office gives an adverse decision, then we would have to do an emergency meeting to meet and either rectify it or they're suing the district court, and that's when penalties.
I mean, couldn't we just do what we're doing right now at the next meeting?
That's that's theoretically, you could you could wait for the decision from the ombudsman to come back, but it's, I mean, we kind of see the writing on the wall. Uh, but it's the commission's decision. I'm just giving you the information that the ombudsman provided me.
And I would just like to add, I'm I'm, again, this is my eighth week, but I would like to add that um I know the applicants have been uh it was submitted quite a while ago and they got caught up in some of the turnover and some of what was happening in the planning department. And um I think we've all come to a great resolution today. I think um Stephen and myself and the applicants and we feel really comfortable moving forward this way. Um, and and I think we're confident that we'll get things worked out. So I think it's a great resolution to to sort of the waiting for this decision. So um yeah, our recommendation is to move forward as quickly as possible.
Thank you. I see that our uh our county engineer, Dan Stent, has got his hand up on Zoom, so I'd uh call on you, Dan. Are you? Yeah, there you go.
I I just wanted to fill in a little information since um Amy was Amy was not on board when the determination was issued and it was right after Elisa had left. And I was kind of filling in. So the crux of it, um Commissioner Walker, is that the use could be classified as either a fueling station, which is allowed in the highway commercial zone, or it could be classified as a fuel storage facility, which is limited, a use that's limited just to industrial zones. And so the determination was that based on the size of the tank and the the a lot of fact, there were several factors. It was quite a quite a lengthy written decision, but was was the classification of the use was a a fuel storage facility as opposed to a fueling station. Um, and and I believe that's what the ambiguity that the ombudsman is is referring to is that our definitions of those two uses are are not discreet enough to to make that distinguishment.
How large is the tank? Just linear?
Thirty thousand gallon capacity.
So that's like how long by how wide?
Think it's forty five feet long, circumference is eight feet. But it's not out of line with any of the gas service stations' capacity for fuel storage. It's right in line.
It's gonna be above ground, I assume.
It ha- it has to be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Mike?
Benny Walker's too long. Sounds good. Propane service is needed.
All right, um, I'll call for a vote then. Uh, motion's on the table. I think it was made by Trish and seconded by Bill. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And all opposed. All right, motion passes six to one with Commissioner Clapper in opposition. Thank you, guys.
Good luck. You too.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, thanks. We're on to agenda item number one now. That is the Moab Information Center lease renewal, and this one goes over to Quinn.
To tell you real, the one year option to renew. Two year with one year to of renewal with an option to renew for a third year.
Okay, Bill?
I move to approve the Moab Information Center lease.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? This is something that uh we do every couple of years and and it just keeps the the Moab Information Center
Yep, we did it every year for a couple of years. This is hopefully getting
Right, getting it getting into every other year. Yeah. Any comment? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands, and that passes unanimously. Um, all right, we are on to agenda item two, letter of support for Grand Water and Sewer Service uh Service Agency's application for funding through the Upper Colorado River Basin System Conservation and Efficiency Program. And I'll invite uh Ben Musselman and uh Kevin, I'm sorry, Kevin, I I know who you are. I do, you're, I just senior moment.
GWSSA seeks a grant from the Upper Colorado River Basin System Conservation and Efficiency Program funds. The purpose of the GWSSA grant application is to design and construct a diversion point on the Colorado River near the Highway one ninety one bridge on Utah State Natural Resources land, locally known as the Scott Mountain Reserve. GWSSA asks the Grand County Commission for a letter of support for this project and five thousand dollars to hire Sunrise Engineering to provide technical expertise for the grant application. GWSSA wants to show backing from all partners that will benefit from installing our Colorado River diversion. San Juan County has written a letter of support and pledged five thousand dollars for the work. GWSSA has applied for a letter of support from the Grand Conservation District and a one thousand dollar grant. That hasn't been answered yet. GWSSA has committed five thousand dollars of our funds to fund the preparation of the grant. GWSSA has hired Sunrise Engineering for ten thousand dollars and will provide staff and technical assistance. GWSSA estimates estimates that development or developing the grant will cost fifteen thousand dollars when it includes staff time and other resources coming from GWSSA. If this grant proposal is successful, the diversion project will not require any matching funds. The Bureau of Reclamation will provide one hundred percent of the award funding. So why are we interested? Grand County Water Conservation District owns rights owns rights in the Colorado River to twenty five hundred acre feet of water with priority dates of nineteen fifty eight to nineteen sixty nine. Currently, there is no way for GWSSA to catch the water provided by our water rights as it passes Moab. Forward thinking managers then saw the need to provide an additional water source for Grand County. San Juan County also owns water in the Colorado River and wants to access its water. The diversion project begins a larger project to benefit the people of Moab City and Spanish Valley. A subsequent phase will establish a pipeline system to pressurize the irrigation system owned by Moab Irrigation Company. This secondary water system will provide pressurized irrigation throughout Moab City and another water access to Moab Irrigation Company and and another and being another uh water access to Moab Irrigation Company. Right now, their diversion, I think, has just been repaired. They were unable to use it for a while after this. It will relieve as much as fifty percent of water use from the Moab City culinary water system by people who water lawns and gardens with culinary water. This is the most efficient way to reduce the use of the deep Glen Canyon Aquas and conserve them. The final phase of this project will install a system to pump water from the Colorado River to Ken's Lake. When the project is complete, it will complete, it will connect the four water systems in our watershed. Moab City, Moab Irrigation Company, GWSSA and San Juan County. The benefits of interconnected systems have been shown twice in the past year. A San Juan County pump failed and GWSSA sold water to San Juan County until they could make repairs. In June, a GWSSA pump failed and San Juan sold water to GWSSA to bridge our need until our system was repaired. Customers of both systems provided with water throughout each crisis. So that's the basic uh purpose of uh what we want to do in taking this first step in applying for this grant. And uh Ben was gonna talk more about.
The uh the criteria for the grant, uh the project deemed projects deemed eligible to receive this funding must restore ecosystems and habitat, plants, animals, fish impacted by drought. Project must create wat- waterways, habitat, ecosystems, connectivity, restore streams that have increased erosion rates because of drought and or and improved water quality that has decayed because of drought. So criteria one, uh historically, the Colorado River flooded the masses in wetlands regularly because of the drought and dams above Moab on the Colorado River and its tributaries. These flooding events are much rarer. This project would move Colorado River water into critical parts of the wetlands like natural flooding used to do. Utah Division of Wildlife has been trying to fill and maintain some a small series of ponds near the bridge and parallel link the river as a habitat for water fountain and danger fish recovery. They have uh they have been pumping from a well near the bridge, but the water is poor quality and they could not pump it up to build the ponds. Uh, with its location next to the bridge, the pumps in the diversion would help flood the wetlands and channel water into the ponds, allowing for drought mitigation and habitat recovery. Uh, criteria two, restoring streams that have increased erosion rates because of drought. This criterion may not be immediately applied to this project, but it would be fulfilled as subsequent phases are completed and pressurized water is added into the Moab Irrigation's company's system with the proper agreements in place, more water can remain in Mill Creek and flow through Moab into the Colorado River. Uh, criteria three, improving water quality that has decayed because of drought. The recent U S U G S report on wetlands, which is yet to be published, shows that some portions of the wetlands have been impacted by the brine layers located beneath the wetland preserve. The impact may be more pronounced because of the drought and freshwater flowing into the wetlands from Moab Valley. USGS has also shown that the brine is moving into the Colorado River beneath the wetlands. Moving more fresh water from the Colorado River into the wetlands may help suppress the brine layers, increase the health of the wetland vegetation and decrease discharge of brine into the Colorado River.
So that was a mouthful. To recap, the availability of Colorado River water at Ken's Lake provides water security in the future. A valleywide irrigation system would conserve groundwater sources during outdoor watering season. Water for recharging the groundwater aquifers potentially increases the ability of both groundwater sources to provide adequate quantities for use to provide adequate quantities for use in the future. GWSSA believes that having Colorado River water in the south end of the Spanish Valley will benefit everyone from Moab City to Spanish Valley and support the ecosystems that have suffered from drought and increased water use as our valley population has grown. Um, so the initial phase is to establish this, um, uh, diversion Colorado River and enable GWSSA to draw water out of the river that it already owns. Uh, there, that is the first phase. We, uh, want to be able to deliver that, some of that water. It could be our water, it could belong to the state into the Madison Reserve. Uh, sustain. Uh, then in the future, the project would become bigger. It would not be covered by this grant, perhaps by other grants or by other methods of funding. Uh, to provide a county-wide or actually watershed-wide, uh, system to help us manage our water. Uh, John Wesley Powell advocated a system of transcending artificial land divisions and admonished neighbors to cooperate within watershed. San Juan and Grand Counties can cooperate to develop a policy uh, and a system that will benefit both counties. San Juan owns its own water rights in the Colorado River and needs a system to deliver to its distribution system. Cooperation will ease the burden on both counties to secure their water future. This project can be the first phase to a project that will benefit everyone. Any questions?
Um, yeah, it looked like in the, uh, in the, in the letter that was provided, the letter of support, mostly it it talked about the Matheson Wetlands Preserve. So I was wondering if the Nature Conservancy and the Division of Wildlife has weighed in with their own letters of support or where they're, where they're at on that, since most of that affects the preserve.
Division of Wildlife Resources has given verbal support at this point and has basically acknowledged or told us that if we can get the grant, they'll work with us to get the land to put it on because it's their land. So I think that's a pretty big buy-in from them. They have not done a written letter of support yet. Uh, the Nature Conservancy, uh, typically is not in favor of, of, uh, pulling water from the Colorado River, but with the returns and the, and the benefits that have been talked about here with more specifics, they they are open to the idea. In fact, they are applying for the same grant for similar processes that uh, we feel we could probably provide better, quicker, uh, and then, and then utilize there the other later as well. But as far as a letter of support, no, they want more specifics and it's coming so fast. I don't have specifics. As far as pumping capacity, pipe size, what is it gonna look like? I don't know. We have fourteen more days to get the grant application in, so we're running a marathon trying to even get to that.
So, yeah, go ahead, Kevin. You, you, you mentioned cooperation. I, I guess for the past few years, we've been participating and hearing about the the unpronounceable acronym. Um, and so I, I guess that seemed like it was, it was a comprehensive view of water issues and involved all the major players. I'm just wondering it, but this feels like a project that just, you know, some people are proposing is that I, I, I guess I'm more comfortable with, um, sort of, you know, comprehensive plans rather than trying to piecemeal things, but maybe you could say more about how this relates to Rump or.
Yeah, moving water from the Colorado River was one of the options. Uh, it is one of more, one of the more expensive options that was, uh, covered with the Rump plan. But it is the likely the most sustainable. Um, even with the potential for call on the Colorado River water rights, percentage of our water rights could be lost, but it still leaves us with a vast amount more water than we currently have access to through our current resources and our groundwater operations. But it is part of that study. I don't remember if it was one or three of that.
But I guess the study was just trying to mention all, all the possibilities.
Yes.
Possibly as a later.
Yep.
Phase.
Yep.
I mean, I, I guess in the analogy that that comes, you know, when we do planning, you know, you know, our default is we try to do it in a kind of comprehensive, you know, we, we look at zoning over the entire valley as opposed to, you know, spot zoning. We try to do the ordinarily taro thing when there's a strong heat. But, you know, I think the people who want to do, like, you know, someone wants to change the raising, raising, grazing zone, you know, they, they need a good reason to do it outside of the usual process. Um, so I'm, I'm just wondering why it seems like, you know, starting laying the groundwork for a pipeline, that, that's kind of a big deal. It doesn't feel like a decision we should be making in response to some grant deadline that's two weeks away. That's my concern.
Well, we're not asking, uh, for the county to, uh, financially support the installation of additional sources. We do want you to understand what our thoughts are. But we would like to be able to plan for the future as a water agency so that we can provide, uh, best service that is possible. And, uh, we also want to be able to use the, uh, water rights that we now own in the Colorado River. And we want to be able to show advantage issues so that it's less likely they'd be taken.
Mike.
Oh. Discussion. I'd like to make.
Okay, sure.
I move to approve the letter of support for Grand Water and Sewer Service Agencies' application for funding through the Upper Colorado River Basin System Conservation and Efficiency Program.
Thanks, Mike. Alright, so a motion to approve from Mike, a second from, uh, Commissioner Winfield. Uh, continued discussion. Uh, Bill, you had your hand up earlier? Ah, I got you, okay.
I guess, um, so I, we had that Southeastern Watershed Council the other day and, and Jack Kinsman from the Colorado River Authority talked about this grant, but then talked about another grant that's gonna be coming out. He'll send that out. So I'm just, I'm just throwing out ideas here. That one will actually have, will be a little more open-ended. I mean, this one obviously has some pretty strict stipulations. And then I think that that Watershed Council, it was a very open discussion about what are the projects that are needed. I thought San Juan County was very open and honest. And I'm just wondering, since you don't have a letter from the Nature Conservancy and/or the Division of Wildlife, if it wouldn't be a stronger proposition to wait for that ne- next application, just hear me out, you could ignore them if you want. And then we get all the players on board, including the city of Moab, including the Moab Irrigation Company, and I think it would be, and San Juan, right? All of the players, and I think it'd be a really strong proposal, right? If we all get together as those entities via the Watershed Council and we come together with a plan. Um, that's just, that's just an idea. I mean, knowing that that other grant was coming out, and sorry, I sh- I, I just, I haven't been able to disseminate that information yet. Um, it just, you know, I, I just wonder how strong this proposal would be when you're lacking the Nature Conservancy's and the Division's letters, right? Because in theory, it's impacting the wetlands, so just, just a thought.
Mike, or yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, please respond.
Then we hope to have those, that.
Okay. By the fourteenth.
Before the application deadline.
Okay.
And, uh, we have verbal assurances. We don't have.
Right.
Uh, Mike?
What do you answer?
Um, you, you said the, so the Nature Conservancy is going for the same grant, so they're essentially a rival or?
Um, different purposes, but it's kind of the same end result. I don't know the specifics of their grant. It has something to do with the water discharge from the Moab City Sewer Facility.
Yeah, I heard that. They were gonna, you know, be able to, um, you'd need to treat that water. It's like tertiary treatment to be able to pump it back into the wetlands. Cause we're one, my understanding, we're one of the few entities, what Mark Stilson said, that doesn't reuse our wastewater.
Yeah.
And the two projects could supplement each other very well because they're.
Kevin? Very good. So I didn't see me.
I had, I had something, I had two questions. One was, uh, you said you have, uh, verbal uh, knowledge that they're gonna support, get the letters to you before the date.
Was it, and that was the, just, that was the Division of Wildlife?
Division of Wildlife.
But not necessarily the.
Yeah.
And you said the Nature Conservancy is, is off. I'm getting a little lost. There's so many words. Sounds some of that, are they applying for the grant as well?
They're applying for some of the same grant funds, yes, for a different project.
There's five hundred million dollars available to this, uh, Colorado River group. And, um, we're asking for a grant that may be around the five million dollar level. So Nature Conservancy is looking at that same big pot of money, suggesting a different project.
Right.
So.
So potentially both grants could end up getting granted, one of us. Right, okay, gotcha. That, that helps clarify things a bit.
So, uh, when you, okay, cause some of it sounds really, you know, like I can see the covering of what Matheson Wetlands and I really like, you know, that it's gonna stop the brine, cause we were talking about that not too long ago. And that's, that's pretty devastating if it gets up to a certain point. I guess, uh, is this going to be phased? Because I, you know, the only part that I got a little, I little confused or had more questions or felt like it was kind of rushed was the pipeline and, and such. Is, cause is that going to be phased in? Is it the first part? So what we're kind of applying for today is will be in phases. So like the first part, it would be the phasing of getting Matheson Wetlands, the water back that it was, I remember it from.
Yeah, the first phase would be getting the diversion established. And then additional phases, which have not been engineered, but is in the planning of the, um, water, uh, departments are doing is to, uh, build those additional pipelines to deliver that water more widely than the Na- Nature Conservancy's wetlands and Utah Division of Wildlife.
Great.
Travelers, what's the grant for?
Our amount, uh, like you say, everything hit us so fast that we don't have the, the full amounts. We think we're estimating around five million dollars of what this grant would be if we're successful in getting it. Um, it kind of hit quick and we had a lot of, uh, state agencies contacting us saying you guys should be putting in for this, and that's why we're kind of trying to make a push. It's gonna be a sprint.
So will, will you be able to get a number from the engine, you know, some kind of rough number?
Application process, yes.
Right.
The grant application is for the, the design and construction of
The diversion.
The diversion and the facilities to provide water to the Matheson Wetlands and that area.
So the pipeline and such is something for, to be thought of in the future. Okay, I, I apologize. I think that's the end.
I did talk to, um, Tony Mancuso, and he mentioned that the system, the actual diversion system is kind of the best that you can put into play as far as it, you know, will not, it's kind of like a salt pump system, right? It's pulling out of the bottom. It doesn't affect habitat. It doesn't, you know, if that makes some sense.
What we hope to do is to horizontal bore, and then they said into the, it's into the gravel.
Right.
Bed beneath the river, fifty feet possibly under the river. We, those are all things that we have to figure out. And it'll have fingers in there, much like a, an underground well. And those would feed into a, a stilling well, and that's where you actually pump from. So there's no stream, uh, bank alterations of, it, it, it's the type of diversion we're hoping to get.
Yeah, right.
Where would that be? Up near the river bridge.
Near the bridge?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Bill.
I, I think this give us, gives us a huge chance here to be forward-thinking because it's very likely that, I mean, I've mentioned before, I'm getting older. It might, some of this not happen in my lifetime as far as the far end of it, but it has to start at some point. And this just gives us the opportunity to kind of be in on the ground to be forward-thinking for future communities.
Uh, let's see, Kevin, and then I'll get back to Trish. Yeah, I, I guess I'm still pretty uncomfortable doing this outside of some comprehensive water planning process. Um, and we've, you know, there's been a lot of talks, and this seems to be just kind of to by bypassing that. I, I think part of the, you know, part of the reasons is it's a big important decision. It deserves more thought from this body than just, you know, one discussion at one meeting. Um, I, I think also, you know, this water issues are complex, not just because of the, you know, geology, but because of the, the way the valley is sub- is subdivided between different political entities. So it's really hard to get San Juan County and this, uh, Grand County and Moab City and a few other players to, you know, cooperate, even though we're using the same aquifer, so. And I think one of the ways to, to make that cooperation work is, you know, it's sometimes there's yeah, there's, there's give and take, and I, and I guess I, I would not, I would wanna, you know, sort of give a green light to something like this pipeline or the first step toward, toward a pipeline. As part of an agreement that also included like how much are we gonna be pumping the aquifer, things like that. Um, I, you know, I think that's been, it's been difficult to get San Juan County to, to agree. You know, they, they just, you know, they're more optimistic than we are about the aquifer. They have different priorities. Um, and if this is something they really want, then I think it should be, you know, it should be hard of a package deal. So again, this, this is, to me, this feels a little rushed. Uh, so I, you know, the water rights are still gonna be there six months from now or a year from now. I don't, you know, I think things change in the water world relatively slowly as far as we're debating it for ten years or more. So I just don't see the need to. I said, actually, let me, uh, has San Juan County written a letter of support also for this?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
They've given five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Uh, we should also say that we have an interconnection agreement with San Juan County. We share water too, what they need it, they share it with us when we need it. Uh, part this, uh, longer project will be included, um, more agreements so that, uh, they can use the diversion as well to transport their water. Ultimately, the same location, the South Spanish Valley, partially in Kent Lake, perhaps theirs with two. They would draw it back out again. But, uh, it is a project that will take a long time. Are, uh, many questions, but the impetus is there for, uh, Sam and Grant, uh, Water Sewer to operate. We haven't heard much from Moab City. We have, of course, we're the largest shareholder in, um, Moab Irrigation Company. So we have had, uh, extensive.
Discussions there, yeah.
But I think they have some of the same questions, Kevin.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Kevin. I'll go, uh, see, I said I was gonna go to Trish then, Bill. Yeah, Mike, so Trish, go ahead.
Um, I, I know, it's a hard one. I, I, you know, I, I, I think I'm receptive to this first phase. Um, because in the end, if it, if it doesn't go any further, it'll benefit the wetlands. Yeah. And, and so I think I'm receptive to that. I, I would, I, and I want to state that I appreciated our Gwissa meeting the other night. I thought it was a really great discussion, and then this, the council meeting the other day was a really great discussion. And I thought there was a lot of transparency that I, you know, it just helps me when people are like, like I said the other night, like, if people lay their cards out on the table, it helps me, you know, feel like, okay, I know where you're going, you know? And so that transparency helps me. Um, I'm, I'm always gonna be reticent, and I think that we had, we had this discussion, discussion at the Gwissa meeting about putting too much money into this infrastructure and/or putting development, you know, relying upon this in, if, infrastructure, if we know that that water's gonna get curtailed down the road, you know? I think we know that the Colorado River Compact is being reworked. We don't really know where we're at. We know that we, you know, have been in extensive drought. And so reliance to me on the Colorado River for development is really scary for secondary water, not so much. Because at any time, you know, we could just stop it. But I think I'm receptive to this idea. But I think I'm receptive to this idea of the first phase. And then if we move into that second phase, I would love to see all of these entities come together, you know? And I think it would be a really strong proposal if you have all those entities come together, you know? That's my opinion, and I think it could happen.
Uh, Bill.
I appreciate that you see the value in this first phase for sure. I also see value in inviting these folks to the table rather than trying to force them to the, to the table. We can be proactive here on this water system and work with San Juan County into the future. But trying to negotiate from a sense of, we're not going to participate if you don't fall into line with our plans for your county. I disagree with. And so I, I think that we've got to be real careful in our negotiation techniques here and our invitation to invite them to the table rather than try and force them to the table. It would, it would make more sense to me to take the upper hand here.
Uh, Mike?
This is not to call anyone out. Uh, I'm one of the younger ones here. I'm not going to see the end of this game. But my kids are. So it matters to me that we get it started sooner than later. That's why I voted for it. Or put the motion forward here so far.
Mary.
Personally, I'd like to call for a vote. It's ten to eight, and we're on item two.
Good point, Mary. All right. Um, anyone have, have a really quick last comment? All right, I'll call for a vote. The motion's on the table. Uh, I think, I believe it was, uh, Commissioner McCurdy who made it. Commissioner, uh, Winfield, you seconded it. All those in favor of the motion to approve the letter, raise your hands. All opposed? All abstaining. I'm going to, I'm going to abstain myself from, from the vote. I don't have enough information on that. And, Kevin?
It passed, but the, yes, the, uh,
Park Street.
opposed, just to show that it's not unanimous.
Okay. Uh, it passed four, uh, to two with one, uh, abstaining. Uh, the two opposed were Commissioners Clapper and Commissioner Walker. The, uh, Commissioner abstaining was myself, Commissioner Hadler. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Um, let's move on to item three, independent contractor agreement, or also known as ICA, with Simple View LLC and Granicus LLC for the Discover Moab website redesign. Ben's been waiting for four hours. Thanks, Ben.
This, this will take an hour. We'll go through them.
Fantastic.
No, I said, um, this is to request moving forward with the ICA for Simple View LLC for the Discover Moab, um, website redesign. This is the result of an RFP. Uh, so, mini RFP where we put it out to, uh, two thousand eligible vendors. Had thirty that responded, thirty-five that stated they would, but did not meet the deadline. Committee met, uh, whittled down, um, to three finalists. Uh, the price ranged from seventeen thousand all the way up to one point one billion. Finalists that we picked, we, we felt was the best cost effectiveness, best platform, uh, and matches a lot of the, uh, good DMO websites, which is, if there's any question.
Great. Thanks, Ben. Mary?
I'd like to call, uh, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the independent contract agreement, ICA, with Simple View LLC and, uh, Granicus?
Granicus.
LLC for the Discover Moab website redesign. This has been discussed, had a, a real healthy discussion at the Travel Council. Majority of the Travel Council were very excited about this, so I think it's time to move forward.
Great. Second, Mike? Awesome. Yeah, this is something that's, uh, been long in the works. Much needed. Mike?
When you have time, little, little report back on ROI, how our website's doing now versus what we, what they do for us.
I do. Uh, the RFP that you mentioned, or question a bit, um, was that, uh, noticed locally as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
We, right, yes. Yeah, we actually put it on the Utah State Public Performance website. Sorry.
Uh, but like local papers or that sort of thing.
It was on the website, for sure.
Yeah. Um, I always think this is great. I mean, this is obviously something that we did in-house for a lot of years. And I think that the more opportunity to kind of spend some of these, uh, dollars locally is always great. So I think it's going to work the extra effort when we're looking for something. I think that we have, uh, people capable of this kind of work in our community, and I was just curious if they're aware of it. Appreciate getting it spread out as wide and as locally as we can.
Uh, Gabe, yeah, go ahead.
Um, I sat in the RFP committee, and I just wanted to give a shout out to Matt Seneseros. Um, his technical expertise with regards to the selection was really instrumental in terms of his awareness of different services and the, the, some of these companies and what they're coming with, and just the knowledge that he was able to provide. And that selection was really, uh, important, and he's a really busy guy, and so I just wanted to make sure to recognize him.
Thank you, definitely. Thanks, Matt. Um, all right, uh, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. I think Mary made the motion, and Mike seconded it. Um, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands, and that passes unanimously. Thanks, Ben.
I just want to say two thanks to the, the whole committee and also the county attorney for working on the ICA.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, man.
All right, appreciate it. Have a good night. Um, so it looks like we're not going to do agenda four?
No, I think that was correct, but I think it was the wrong item I put in.
Oh, okay.
The one that was supposed to be in there is ready anyway, so.
Okay, thank you. And we will.
Oh, that's good.
Yes, great. All right, we will move on to agenda item, uh, five, independent contractor agreement with KCI Technologies for Underground Utility Investigation Services on Spanish Valley Drive. And this one is, uh, goes over to our county engineer, Dan Stenta. Are you still on Zoom, Dan?
I am. Um, for the sake of time, I'll just give you a quick synopsis. Um, this is for some subsurface, um, typically the, the common parlance is potholing of utility crossings for the storm drain line that we're planning to run down Spanish Valley Drive. So places where it crosses existing gas mains and water mains, um, locating those depths. Because we know that we're, we're working with a small vertical envelope there to squeeze through. Um, this was not included in the, uh, engineering scope work with Jones in the Middle Engineering. I do feel like it's worthwhile to get this information before construction so that we can avoid um, long delays and costly changes once contractors onsite and mobilized and doing the work and then encounters these problems. So I feel like this is money well spent. And if there's any questions, fire away.
Sorry.
I'll, I'll change the motion.
I recommend approval of an independent contractor agreement with KCI Technologies with a not to exceed amount of twenty-two thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars. And one.
Wait, is that a typo, Dan?
Thirteen point five cents.
So it's twenty-two thousand one hundred eighty-three and fourteen cents, correct?
Fourteen cents.
For utility investigation services, subject to the following condition. All vendors' insurance certificates and forms must be received prior to start of work. Do not exceed that half cent.
Right, I just want to make it clear that we're not approving something that's twenty-two million dollars. It's twenty-two thousand one eighty-three and some indeterminate number of cents. Commas on the right.
Oh, yes, it's twenty-two thousand one hundred eighty-three and fourteen cents, sorry.
Thirteen point.
Record reflects the fourteenth.
Okay, so motion by Mike, second by Bill. I'll have, you know, Mike, I, I was going to make the motion, but I looked up and Josh was missing, so.
Oh, you're okay. Thanks for doing it.
Switched really fast. Um, any further discussion?
No, I'm just excited. Some, somebody asked me about the shared pathway the other day, and I said, I, I think we're still moving. And we're still moving. So I'm excited.
Okay, all in favor? It passes unanimously, unanimously.
All right, awesome.
Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate that support.
All right, we are now up to, uh, agenda item six, and it says, public hearing to update the land code. I don't think this is a public hearing. It's actually the vote on the, uh, land, land code update, correct? Everybody, are they, okay, thanks. Yeah, I think there's a, yeah, some misunderstanding with the agenda. Anyway, um, we are, uh, Amy Weiser, who is our planning and zoning director, will present. Thanks, Amy.
Uh, yeah, and, uh, I apologize. Something, uh, happened in our transition, uh, with, uh, staff, and things got loaded kind of strange on the public agenda website. So what I did was I, I can pull up, uh, the order of things as they should be. I also printed in order of things as they should be. When you click on the online items, what comes up isn't what it says, so it can be very confusing. So, um, if you need anything, I have it all here. Um, and so just to kind of run through this really quick. Um, this is, uh, four different, uh, land use code revision proposed changes. And what the planning commission did was separate each one into a separate motion. And so we have four separate proposed ordinances that kind of reflect how they made their motions. So, um, there was also some confusion that perhaps there should have been four action items on the agenda for the four different ordinances. So again, I apologize. I think, uh, staff was thinking maybe the commission might want to make one motion for all of them. And there was just a little confusion about how to handle that. So, um, I'll, I'll defer to, to all of you as, as we get into that a little bit more. But just to run through it again, um, and there seems to be some confusion, uh, from public and people on Zoom. And so I just want to clarify, um, for the article two, the change to article two, establishment of, uh, districts, what is being proposed is a brand new zone called RAR twenty, range and resource district. And I understand it's a, I can understand why people are a little confused. The range and grazing zone is not a part of this proposed new zone. Nothing is being proposed for the range and grazing zone. Nothing is being proposed to change. So this proposed land use code revision is to create a whole new zone called RAR twenty. So I just want to make that clear, because there seemed to be some confusion out there. Um, and also, just to be clear, that this new zone is being proposed without a zoning map showing where this zone will go, which, um, is a little unusual. Um, and, uh, what it will require, just so everyone knows, is if the new zone is passed, eventually, um, a zoning map will have to be presented that shows where this zone will go. That will be a whole nother, uh, public hearing and a whole new noticing in order to adopt the map later. So I just want to make that clear. Um, so I just kind of run through this really fast. The planning commission, as you know, forwarded an unfavorable recommendation. Uh, one of the reasons being that a map of the areas proposed for the zone should be included with the ordinance. Um, they also said, uh, they are generally in favor of a larger minimum lot size, but they felt that this hadn't been fully worked through and that there wasn't a map associated with it. So they wanted to wait for a map that accompanied this, so they knew where it would go. So, uh, you all have the rest of their comments, but those were the two major things. Um, so that is, you have a proposed ordinance for that, and that is for the creation of a brand new RAR twenty zone.
I wonder, Amy, if we should just stop right there and just deal with that. Are you down with that? Are you guys okay with that? Just parsing them out one at a time? Are you okay with that?
That I'm fine. And I can pull up the, um, draft boards news.
Is that okay?
So everybody can see it on the screen.
Are you guys okay with that? Just breaking them down one at a time?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, do you want me to put that on the screen so everybody can see it? Those draft orders.
This is, I found this really hard to navigate.
I did too. So, yeah. So I'll, I'll just share my screen, um, and this will just show the one we're talking about right now. Yeah, okay.
If that way you've given us the planning, planning commission's recommendations and we can just.
So this is the proposed, proposed ordinance that would, um, go with the proposed RAR twenty. So just for reference, um, exhibit A includes establishment of districts. It's, uh, section two point one and article two.
Amy, do you mind, um, just expanding that out a little bit so we can see better?
I'll try. I'm, I'm still learning how to do this.
Right.
Um, you just want it bigger?
Uh, that's bigger. Yeah, that, that's better. Much better.
All right. So, um, as you'll see in the establishment of districts table, it shows that, um, added to a non-residential zoning districts proposed is RAR twenty, range and resource, twenty acre minimum lot size. You'll see range and grazing is still there. Nothing's changing with range and grazing. Um, there is a description of the new RAR twenty zone. There's a purpose. Um, there is some lot design district standards, it says, and then there's a reserve section. So, um, this gives you a description of the proposed zone, and the planning commission had some, um, comments on that as well. Basically, the main thing is it says, "To preserve resource lands and accommodate agricultural and agriculture-related uses while allowing very low-density ranch-style residential development on land that will primarily remain in its natural state." So, um, so there you have it. That's kind of the description of it. Um, and I'm here, here to answer any questions or whatever you all want to.
Kevin? Um, yeah, so I, I think of one of the previous public meetings, you said, Amy, like, you know, why aren't we just directly modifying the range and grazing zone? And I think that was what the commission asked for originally, you know, for various reasons, at least, you know, presented in this different way. And I think part of the reason was a looming deadline, but now the deadlines have been reset. So I personally kind of think it would make sense to create a new five-acre lot zone. You know, change range and grazing, you know, go through the process to change, change the minimum lot size for range and grazing. Um, I, I do think it's, so, so I, I guess what I'm saying, you know, I think taking a little bit more time with this makes sense to me. I, I do think it's something we should try to do. Like, I guess also the planning commission was for the, of the ultimate goal. Um, and I, the, you know, the reason I think we should, you know, we shouldn't just drop this, but we should, you know, continue to workshop it and get something passed. Uh, one is if you look at other counties in the area and look at what, how they zone remote property. Typically, the minimum lot sizes, you know, range from twenty acres to eighty or, you know, sometimes more. And so Grand County really stands out. It's having, you know, even most remote parcels have a five-acre minimum lot size. The reason that's significant is if that's the minimum lot size, then anyone who applies for a subdivision like that, it's, you know, it's basically, you know, pre-approved. So, um, so if you want a field of about a five-acre minimum lot sizes, you go to Castle Valley. Those are five-acre lots. You know, that is a ranch that got subdivided into five-acre lots. And so our land use code currently says anybody could do Castle Valley, and it's a permitted use, and there's not really much the county could do to stop it. And I think that we, you know, that's not how our neighboring counties do things. Um, and I, I, I don't think it makes sense, you know, if we wanted another Castle Valley out there somewhere, I think it should go through a careful process, and there should be a vote rather than, um, just having it as permitted use where, you know, pretty much we, you know, by default, we have, we have to say yes to it. So I, I think that, you know, I just, I just wanted to focus a little bit on the big picture, picture before telling these details about, you know, the different zones. How we're doing this. So I, I, I do think that's a goal worth working toward. Um, to me, the way it makes sense to do it is to change the minimum lot size of range and grazing and also create a new zone, this, you know, that called a country residential, whatever, that has a five-acre minimum lot size. And there might be places in Thompson or near Spanish Valley where that, it makes sense to keep that five-acre lots. So that's, so I, you know, I don't, I don't think we should pass this tonight, but I think we should keep working on it. Uh, Bill, you had your head up next.
Yeah, I, I disagree with that analogy. All you're creating here is a place that only the wealthy can afford to build by moving to a twenty-acre lot zone. And as much as I appreciate all of the emails we got, ninety percent of them that are in favor of this are from people who built on five-acre lots. It makes no sense that we would be trying to restrict this even further. And the LaSalle's, which is what this is kind of meant to protect, are made up of a huge amount of public land. There's all kinds of public land up there already, so to further restrict. There's all kinds of public land up there already. So to further restrict people and try and make it to only somebody that can afford a twenty acre lot up there, can have a parcel, makes no sense. Now, when this was originally presented to me by some folks, it was presented that we would look at this as twenty acres for commercial operations as in campgrounds or some kind of a thing up on the mountain where it would, there would be a commercial, whether it's the glamping or whatever. And I could fully support that. I could understand that we would want to limit possibly some land use up there on a commercial zone, but I can't support taking away the privilege of somebody who's got a five acre parcel and saying that it needs to be twenty acres. It's, it's going in the total wrong direction. And for fifty to a hundred years, it's been working as it is. Where is the problem that we're trying to fix here? Who, who invented the problem? Is it just because we feel it would be a good idea? I, I mean, I'd really like to see a problem in order to try and fix it, not just imagine one and then start fixing things here to the public that we shouldn't be doing.
Uh, Mary?
I, I would like to make a motion that we postpone. And like I said, I'm having a real hard time navigating this. So postpone amendment A, would that make sense? How would you like me to put that?
I, I, if you look, yeah, go ahead.
I would, uh, postpone taking action on proposed new zone R A R twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, until, uh, there's further workshopping and mapping exercises.
Okay. Uh, so a motion to postpone from Commissioner Clapper, second from Commissioner McGann. Um, Kevin?
Um, I do think, you know, we should, you know, make, you know, if we want staff to continue to work on this, we should probably, you know, the majority of us wants that to happen, we should make it clear. Otherwise, staff doesn't have any direction. So if, you know, if we, if we want to see something that includes a map come up, you know, in a couple of months, we should say so. If we just want to postpone indefinitely, you know, that's a different.
I, I think Commissioner Clapper's motion gave direction, um, as far as further research and mapping, those kinds of things.
To his point, I, I am in favor of, uh, I don't think the range, the current raging grazing captures everything, uh, all the possibilities that are out there. And so I, I do like the idea of two distinct zonings, whether that's, um, modifying what we currently have or creating something new or whatever. And I think that, um, to the planning commission's point, it's, and to the public's point, it's very, uh, useful to say this is where we think this is appropriate, this, or we don't think this is appropriate. And so, uh, I think that mapping goes well with that.
Okay.
I would like to clarify, just to remind everyone that the, um, land use element process is still moving. And we hope to have a draft by, hoping next Monday. So I just, um, I want to just discuss timeline of that. Um, planning department has a number of things going on and, um, I feel we have priorities that perhaps, um, trump this. So I would just like to check in with the commission on timeline one more time. Um, so just to clarify, um, I, 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 we're happy to do some more research and look at where that would be mapped. We might, um, pull in some other folks to help us do that. Um, but as far as timeline for bringing this back, I, I feel like our priority right now is finishing that land use element, getting caught, caught up on various land use development applications that we are very behind on. And so I would like to ask that the timeline be after the land use element is adopted, that we then focus on this again. But that is, I'll take direction from you.
And, and what sort of timeline are we looking at, uh, having the element come before the commission?
Well, we're hoping end of November.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's not too far away. And, um, I just feel like as we talk about mapping and as we talk about maybe changing other zones at the same time, I feel like that's where we really look at the zoning map and look at this a little bit more comprehensively. And I think all the comments have been great. I just feel like, um, it, it should wait a little bit.
And just to be clear, the, the reason we want to wait for the future land use element isn't because that might affect this, because my understanding is that's really focusing on Spanish Valley. It's not going to have much to say about the rest of the county. It's more just workload considerations.
Yes, correct. Yeah. The, the land use, the future land use map focuses on Spanish, correct? And then the concept apparently was to do, uh, the area around Thompson Springs and Cisco and other areas in the county in different phases, I guess, is what was proposed at the time. So, uh, you're correct. Um, the math that we're waiting on is mainly for Spanish Valley, but it's still going to require a lot of staff time to get that through. We've got got some workshops to do and some edits to do. And, uh, so that's, that's just my request.
Okay.
Good. But we're still working within the same hundred eighty day window, right? So.
Yeah. And I think that's, I think that's doable to stay in that hundred eighty days as soon as possible.
Okay. Uh, I think we're clear. Um, I'll call for a vote on the motion to postpone. I think it was, uh, Mary that made the motion and, or I'm sorry, Evan made the motion. Mary seconded. So all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. All right. We can move on to the next, uh,
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Amy.
Get the next one up for us all to try to follow. And I'm having issues with this, so I apologize. Okay. So the next one would be, I believe, um, I'm going to pull up the, um, outfitter guide service and facility non ATV outfitter.
The next on our list will see you too, buddy.
Okay, I can do that. Okay. Let me pull that up. So if you recall, this, uh, is a proposed L U C revision uh, to remove major utilities as a conditional use in the article three, section three point one use table. And in turn require a major utility overlay for a major utility. So, uh, I'll pull up.
And if you're looking at the packet, if you tap exhibit C, it's actually the information for, uh, B that we're discussing right now. Just to let people know.
Yeah. So if you look at the use table.
Exhibit C.
Yes. Look at the use table on the screen. So right now, major utilities are conditional use permit in almost every zone and a permitted use in L I and H I. And the proposal is to remove it as a conditional or permitted use from, from any zone and create an overlay district. So, uh, there's also proposed changes to three dot four dot eight, uh, just sort of listing examples and, uh, uses that aren't included. So the idea is that minor utilities are still listed as possible under many of those zones without a major utility overlay. And major utilities here are written as waste treatment plants, water treatment facility, water towers and tanks. Um, there were some comments that it should say water towers and water tanks because there was some question about what kind of tanks. So we can talk about that. And then, um, it does say it's required for the development of any of the below uses listed in section four dot one dot two below. Uh, a major utility requires a rezone application, uh, approval by the county commission and a development agreement. So, um, again, examples are waste treatment plant, water treatment facility, water towers, tanks. Um, uses not included are maintenance yards and buildings, utility offices, TV, radio stations, reservoir. So that is what is proposed. And just to reiterate with the planning commission, they forwarded an unfavorable recommendation to the county commission. The following reasons were given. Um, the current use table lists all other major utilities, but does not provide any specific use standard section for both all other major utilities and all minor utilities. The P C felt that if a use specific standard section were created for both, most concerns could be addressed from citing standards to distance to roads, et cetera. Um, they felt the county needs to remain competitive for future utilities to be developed in the county and requiring a zone change is too restrictive. Um, they also felt we should seek a professional in the field of utilities to better define major versus minor. Uh, and, um, they're also concerned about, um, tying it to the G W S S A service area boundary as it's a boundary that we are not in control of. Um, they also asked if G W S S A had been given a chance to review this proposed overlay as it relates to their boundaries. So those were their reasons for the unfavorable recommendation. Do you have any questions for me?
Mike?
Do you want to take this?
No, I think I'll say your answer first. Okay. We all, we all get a chance here.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion on it. I'd like, make the motion to deny, uh, based, based on recommendation from planning, uh,
The, the, uh, planning commissioner?
Planning commission, uh, based on recommendation from planning commission. Does that suffice? Cool. You can, you can deny it for whatever reason, really. Uh, you'd like. Okay. They said it better than I can.
Okay. All right. Second from Bill. So motion to deny, uh, Commissioner Currie, uh, second, Commissioner Winfield. Mary?
If we, if we deny this as opposed to postponing it, does that mean that, that, um, uh, planning commission doesn't continue to work on it? What would that mean if it, it was denied? Because I really, I'm really uncomfortable continuing, I, to have it as a conditional use in so many, I, I, I think that's caused some major issues in this county. I see the concerns of the planning commission that, that they're raising. I, I think they're valid and I think they need to be really considered and relooked at. But I don't think it should be just totally dropped. So that's why I would have a hard time voting for the denial. I wouldn't have a hard time voting for a postponement for the people to continue. It's, we, we don't want another situation like what we're facing right now, that all of a sudden somebody wants to build something and they just built their own sewer plant, I do, or water tower, such. So anyway, that's why I couldn't support that motion.
Thanks. Thanks, Mary. Uh, Kevin?
I mean, I, I, I think we should approve this. Um, I think it's definitely, you know, right, right now we have it as a conditional use without much guideline in the code and that we would change it to a, um, overlay zone. Again, without detailed guidelines in the code. And I, that definitely seems like a step in the right direction. If we, if we do nothing, then you know, we can have another King Creek utility type thing happening. If we pass this, then that, you know, we eliminate that possibility. We, you know, we can vote, if someone proposes a major utility, we can vote yes or no without much fear of it, you know, being overturned by an L J. Um, and then if we had some later date, if we want to add some details, you know, we can do that. But in the interim, before we have those details, I, I think it makes sense to change it to an overlay zone. I, I think that moves it, moves the code in the right direction. And I think, you know, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. So I'm, I'm, you know, I'm opposed to Mike's motion. I think we should pass this one tonight. Uh, Bill?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mary though. I, I think that a postponement on this would be fine. I think that I'd be open to that if Mike is to postpone this so that we can let them go back and do a good job of research in this. I, I think that we're wasting a whole lot of time going through these one at a time here when really they probably should have all been denied on that basis. But I, I'm in agreement with Mary. Let's at least postpone this so they can work on it correctly.
That means.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Am I?
Oh, can you amend? Uh, you can amend your, you made the original motion.
Rock it out. Post, I'd like to amend the motion straight denial to, uh, postponing it. Someone second here.
Okay. Does, I haven't yet.
Yes.
Okay. So, so Mike made an amendment to his own motion. Um, so what we can do is we can have a discussion about that, but then if we vote for this, we'll just vote for the amendment. So we're not actually voting for this. We're just voting to have the motion on the table be the amended motion. So.
As far as the mo- motion to postpone, I would like to point out that for the other overlay districts, if you look at how they're structured, there's a purpose, there's allowed uses, there's lot design standards, there's district standards. There's a lot of standards and criteria once you create this overlay district. And so the way it's, uh, proposed right now, um, what up? If, if you'll see, it talks about, okay, this is going to be a major utility. What does it apply to? And then that's it. So there's no standards, there's no citing standards, there's no design standards, there's no lot size setbacks, there's nothing. And so my concern is that um, if you don't postpone it to add those things, you might get an application and there's no standards. So that, that's my biggest concern. Um, so.
Why don't, uh, yeah, go ahead, Mary.
Just because this is one that, you know, I really want to take this out of the conditional use. This is, it's incredibly important to me. So this is under this, uh, extended, I don't know, it's not moratorium, but extended.
A hundred and eighty day, um, yeah.
Right. Okay. Uh, I guess I would put this, if we do, uh, if everybody agrees to postpone it, I would put this as one of the highest priorities and bring it back to us. I don't want another hundred and eighty days to, to go by because now with this, that nobody can apply for this right now, correct?
So what, so what the hundred and eighty days means, and, um, Stephen will correct me if I get it wrong, but basically what this means is that if someone submits an application right now, um, they have to be advised that we are undergoing some code revisions that may affect their ability to, uh, get their proposed use approved or built. And so when you put the developer on notice, it's their choice to move forward or not. We have to review it based on our standards in place at the time. But if we then change a section of the code that will affect them, they've been put on notice and they will be subject to whatever change is made. So I don't think you need to worry too much right now about if an application were to come in, we've put them on notice that we may be revising this code. So, um, and I'll let, you know, anybody else weigh in, but that, just so you know, that if someone, if something does come in, it could be subject to whatever we end up adopting.
Could be or will be.
It will be. I meant could because I don't know if we're going to move forward with this or come up with something different. But yes, it will be subject to whatever the commission ends up deciding for major utilities.
Kevin?
Um, I, I guess I would just wanted to a- address the idea that it's, you know, the, the lack of standards. Our current code lacks the same standards. We have a conditional use, talks about these exact same things. What are our guidelines for approving or denying that get a conditional use? It's kind, you know, mostly not there. You know, we, we do have some general language about, uh, conditional uses. So I, I don't, so for me, it just does, it's just, you know, Mr. Spock, you know, point here is illogical to, um, to insist on these conditions when we are, they're already, we're already missing conditions. So we're not, it's not like we're messing things up, but if we change it to an overlay zone, that it, you know, it does something that we've been saying we want to, we want to do for years, which is get rid of some of these conditional uses in our use table. This is like the lowest hanging fruit. So I, I just see zero downside to improving this now. And if you need to supplement it later, we can do it later. But I, I think it just wastes staff time, wastes our time to, you know, spend a huge amount of time on just, you know, there's, there's a lot of stuff in the land use code that needs to be revised. This seems like one, to me, one of the easiest decisions to take.
And Amy, it would be, it would be, we could supplement it later. We could like two months or whatever, make, uh, amendments to this or, or add. Make uh, amendments to this, or, or add in what you've talked about.
I mean, it was just proposed that we.
We, I mean, we could, however, wasting staff time, that will be looking at the same thing again. And adding, yeah, but yes, we can amend and, and we can amend anything in the future, but, um. Yes, we could do that. Um, again, I would prefer that it come to you holistically with all of that at the same time.
Right, gotcha. Mike?
Uh, who would be the deciding factor in a u- utility or a major utility overlay?
So it would be the county commission if it's an overlay, cause it's technically a zone change. Which again is an interesting way to do an overlay, so.
I just wanted to make sure before I said my next statement. Uh, that opens the gate for, I mean, the spot zoning that's already a, a problem with overnight rentals, and I mean.
Well. N- not exactly, a- and I, again, the county attorney might wanna weigh on this, but. Uh, as I've read so far in our current code, an overlay requires a zone change. Which is uh, something I haven't seen in my career, where normally an overlay is. You have your base zoning, and then I'm just gonna go to like an airport approach, an airport overlay, okay? And then you have this overlay o- over the zone. So the base zoning district still has standards. That apply to any of that same zone, but then when you have the overlay, you're subject to additional standards. For various reasons. You're in a, a riparian corridor, you're in an airport approach zone, you're in whatever those reasons might be. Um, the way I read it with our code, and it's a little, a little unclear. Is that our overlay, you actually do a zone change. To an overlay, um, and I don't think it would be spot zoning because. It's an, it's an overlay, so it's a little confusing and it's something that. We need to look at in our future code revisions is how we do handle overlays. So there is some language about the base zone standards. But we literally do a zone change to an overlay district, so it's a little confusing right now, um. But I, I don't think it, I'll let the county attorney weigh in on whether it would be spot zoning, because it's a little different.
No, it's not exactly, but.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we already have several overs- overlay zones in our code, so this is not a new thing. We've got, you know. Overnight accommodation overlay zone, high density housing overlay, you know, you're, you have an overlay zone. Um, you know, we usually talk about those as overlays, but technically there's no changes that I think, that I've read is that. Maybe it's different in some other states, but in Utah, overlays are, you know, technically zone changes, but because they're overlay zone, rather than base zone. So I, I don't think there's any problematic, anything problematic about it.
I, I think let's, uh, we have a couple of motions on the table. The first one is to amend the original motion. I think it'd be appropriate to call for a vote on that right now. We're not voting on this, we're just voting to amend the original motion to be a postponement instead of a denial. So, uh, all those in favor of that motion, raise your hands.
We're just voting.
We're, we're just voting to amend the original one to it, so we still have to vote on that, yeah. Yes, yes.
Okay.
Alright, and all opposed? Okay, wait, let, let me, I didn't, I didn't get that from everybody again. All, all in favor of amending the original motion to a uh, postponement instead of a denial? Okay, and then all opposed? Okay, so the motion passes five to one with Commissioner Walker uh, opposed and Commissioner Clapper abstaining. Um, so now we're back to the original motion, we can start having that discussion. The motion is to postpone uh, this. Yeah, into the future. Kevin?
Yeah, so I mean, I, I think I, I would like to just have a straight up and down vote on whether we should pass this or not, so I will move to amend the motion. To be that we approve this and, um. You know, approve that, you know, changes as outlined in exhibit.
Okay, so now we have the, so this is a motion to amend the original to an approval instead of a postponement. Yeah.
And, and I think we've already discussed this. I, I just don't think postponing gains us anything, you know, the. If we want, if we're postponing so that we can write some conditions, we can pass it as it is and add the conditions later.
I like the idea of getting rid of.
And I think it gets rid of the season use table right now, rather than three or four or five months, months from now.
Uh, Bill? I think postponing this gains a lot. Number one, it continues to show respect for the professionals that we've hired. And for the planning commission. I, I recommend that we postpone this.
Uh, Kevin?
I mean, I, I'm not sure about the. I mean, we've got some people working on the future land use element, but it's not gonna have any bearing on this. They're not addressing this type of issue with our land use code. So I think that, that's not a, might be a reason to bring up in highway commercial discussion, but it's not.
Alright, I'll call for a vote on, uh, so the amendment was to um, approve. Uh, Kevin made a motion to amend the original motion to approval instead of postponement. Uh, Commissioner Clapper seconded that. All those in favor of Kevin's motion, raise your hands. All opposed? Okay, so that motion passes five to two with Commissioners Winfield and McCurdy in opposition. Uh, further discussion. So now the motion on the table is motion to approve. Uh, the, uh, major utility overlay as presented.
Oh, gotcha, okay. So say that again, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the motion, the motion on the table right now is a motion to approve. The major utility overlay as presented in the packet, as presented at the uh, previous public hearing.
Right, correct, yeah. Originally, we were denial, then we amended proposal now to approve.
So a yes vote would be to approve.
A yes vote would be to approve this one fourth of what we have in, on this agenda. Any further comments on this before I call for a vote? Alright, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And all opposed? Motion passes five to two with Commissioners Winfield and McCurdy in opposition.
So where are we now?
So we're now on C, and that is the outfitters in rural residential.
Even though when you push it, it keeps.
Right, so that, uh, which, which is.
Discuss them in anywhere we want to.
Uh, I mean, I think, I think, I think discussing it in this particular order is probably appropriate, since that's the order that's there. So the outfitter and then.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So this proposed revision was to remove, um. Outfitter guide service and facility, specifically non ATV outfitter guide service and rental businesses. As a conditional use in the RR zone. So under three point two, three point one use table that on your screen, currently, um. That use is a conditional use in RR as well as general business, resort, commercial, resort, special, and highway commercial. So the proposal is to make it a permitted use in all the non-residential zones where it was previously conditional. And added as a permitted to light industrial. Uh, it's also added as a permitted use to range and grazing. And the ability to have the use in the rural residential zone is removed completely. So the uh, planning commission uh, provided a, a recommendation which was somewhat mixed. So they wanted the uh, the use of the outfitter guide service and facility, non ATV. To remain in conditional use in rural residential, but they accepted all the proposed changes. To allow the use as a permitted use in the zones where that was changed to a permitted use. So the RG, GB, RC, RS, HC, and LI. So they were in favor of that. But they wanted to keep uh, the outfitter guide service a conditional use in RR. So that was the recommendation from the planning commission. And um, the reasons they gave were, um. They felt that the outfitter guide service and facility needed to be further broken down into more categories. Grand County has a wide variety of recreational businesses. A person running a business as an elk hunting guide is very different from Western River Expeditions, for example. Right now, they fall under the same category, but have very different needs. They also felt that this needed more requirements and standards. It currently only lists two requirements. For a conditional use in the RR zone. They felt that if that section included more requirements and standards, a CUP might be appropriate. Uh, they also requested that there be a better system for managing and enforcing current and future CUP. So that was a reason for their recommendation, which again was a little mixed. So, uh, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that if you, for people following along at home, or if you wanted to look in your packet, if you click on the exhibit D, it will give you the information that's on the screen.
Thank you.
Yeah, for exhibit C, yes. Okay, Mary?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone uh, the outfitter guide service and facility.
Okay, uh, motion to postpone from Commissioner McGann, second from Commissioner Winfield.
I think it needs to be more uh, surgical or, you know, strategic. I, I, I do think it's an important thing to do. I really want to protect our residential neighborhoods. It's a, to, you know, we need to protect it. We can't have businesses all of a sudden disrupting it, but I do think. There's a difference between the different types of guides, so if we had a better breakdown, it would benefit. Be beneficial.
Uh, Trish?
I'm okay with post- postponing, postponing it. I, I would almost, I would rather just remove it right now. And that's not to say that in the future I wouldn't return it, but one thing that, I think it was Tony that, that pointed this out. You know, when you look at that land use table and you have a random C amongst nothing else. And then P's all, you know, it's, something is awry. Does that make sense? Like, for some reason, that's awry and, and, and there's, you know, however it got put there, it. So I think that there's, you know, I think in the future, and I think, you know, once we move through this. The system with the future land use plan, with the future land use map, I think we can find areas where this is very appropriate. But I will tell you personally, I have two CUPs on my street. A very small street, a little connector street, it's quarter acre lo- or quarter mile long, and. Those two CUPs have a lot of impact on that street. I'll just, I'll just be blunt. And so I think if we, you know, I absolutely want to support small businesses. I wanna support in-home businesses, but I think we need to be a little bit more systematic as where we wanna place these. And let this move through the planning commission and this process with the future land use pla- plan, future land use map, so. I support, I support a postponement. Kevin?
Um, I, I think some of the sentiment expressed at the planning commission meeting, you know, you know, heard from others is that. You know, there's, you know, these outfitter guide businesses in residential neighborhood, there's, they run the gamut, and some are low impact, and some are high impact. But I, I just wanted to point out that the low impact ones are probably already covered. By our home oc- home occupation business provisions. It's three, three, two in the land use code, it basically says. If you're running a business in your home and you have one employee or fewer, who doesn't live there. And if the activity takes place inside the home as, as opposed to outside, and you're not causing. Um, you know, as reasonable employees, electrical interference, you know, et cetera, then you're okay. So the, you know, if, so I think. You know, if you just need a place to field phone calls and then go out on your guiding business, that's already okay. And so I don't, you know, is, I'm having trouble thinking of potential outfitter guide businesses that. Don't fit in the home occupation, but still wanna allow. So for that reason, I, I think this one's ready to go. As is, I, I, you'd rather than postpone it, just take up even more of our time. I think we should pass it as is. If we in the future sometime find that home occupation isn't handling things, you know, we can make a modification then, but. We've said many times, we've got probably like fifty different C's in the use table, and we wanna get rid of most of it. And if it takes four hours of debate for each one, you know, that's never gonna happen. So I, I just think that. You know, there's a lot of work to be done on the land use code, and by throw, constantly throwing up barriers and trying to make each one take as many meetings as possible. I, I don't, I don't think we're well served by that.
Evan?
I'm also in the camp of uh, trying to eliminate as many conditional uses from our code as we can. I think when these uh. Were created, a conditional use was a lot different beast than what it is today. Um, I am in favor of permitting it, permitting outfitters in these other um, zones as. Uh, as highlighted and drafted here, and I think that to Kevin's point of an elk hunter or a hiking guide. Uh, being able to operate out of the house currently, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. And I think that if we need to revisit uh, what a home occupation business. Looks like and is permissible through that, whether it's one employee or three employees, whatever. That's kind of a separate conversation, but I'm, I'm comfortable uh, with removing this as a conditional use in rural residential.
I think, I think more my, my personal feelings more in line with Mary's, I, I think I'd like to see a little more work and a little more definition going to the outfitter.
And I, just to Evan's point, um, there has been discussion amongst planning commission and staff and. Applicants who express frustration that we currently have the home occupation, which is very limiting. And so it doesn't allow a business owner to grow, um, if they're wanting to start a business and then grow a little bit. And then eventually move and get an actual commercial, retail, light industrial, whatever space they need. At the moment, we have a home occupation and then a home business, so the home occupation is one employee or less. The home business is three employees or less, and so those are things that we are talking about, uh, to Commissioner Clapper, Clapper's point. Perhaps some of those things need to be looked at as well, um, to allow someone to start a business and grow a little. Before they then have to try to find an actual leased space. So, um, I think that's some of the, what's hindering some people right now, and it'd be nice to look at that and figure that out as well.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that we need to do a little better, better job here of looking some of this stuff over. Rather than just rushing through it and making a change, because it's a personal item that we wanna see handled for our own. Our own interests or the people that we think that we're serving. It, it's just better spent a little bit of staff time on this and get it correct rather than. These one-up rushes.
Yeah. So I am gonna abstain from this vote, because it is very personal to me, um, because of the effect, and, and I wanna state that. I do wanna make that known, that it's, it's not just because I live there. I think of other neighborhoods and the impact that, you know, so I will abstain. I think that that's appropriate. But I do think this is something we do need to spend some time looking at, so that we support home businesses, we support small growing businesses. But we also don't affect neighborhoods. I think we can do it right.
Kevin, go ahead real quick, and I'll go for a bit.
I strongly disagree that this is rushed. We first asked for this seven, eight months ago. This exact language that we're voting on now, I think first was in a packet of the planning commission in July. So, you know, this is, this is not being rushed. Um, you know, it's, it's been a little bit rough, because we had some turnover in our, our planning department. But, um, every, everybody's had plenty of time to think about this, suggest, you know, improvements if they need to. I do, I do think, I, I, it just feels very inconsistent for, to me, for us to say for years, we've got too many C's in our land use code. Need to get rid of some of them, and then we, you know, ask the planning staff, okay, let's, let's get rid of a few of those. Months later, the proposal comes and then it goes out in public, and three months later, we decide it needs more work. If you extrapolate that. How are we ever gonna get this done? So I, I think people that want to postpone are making, you know, sorry, but. It, it just doesn't make sense to me, to me, it just seems like a pretty good thing. You know, if we pass this and it turns out to be a disaster, we can amend it later. So it's not, I don't wish down.
Mike?
Amy, how, how many weeks you been on the job?
Eight.
Seemed rushed to me.
Alright, there's a motion on the table to postpone. I think Mary made the motion and Bill seconded it. Um, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. All opposed? And abstaining. Alright, motion passes four to two with Commissioners Clapper and Walker uh, opposed and Commissioner Dean abstaining.
Can you re-say that for a while?
Yeah, uh, the vote was four to two to uh, postpone and uh, Commissioners. Yeah, uh, the vote was four to two to, uh, postpone and, uh, Commissioners Clapper and Wa-. Okay, Commissioners Clapper and, uh, yeah.
You had to give them five.
Yeah, I know, right?
Okay. All right, let's move on to agenda. So.
Was it clear to staff, just? So we want, we do want this to come back? Is that a sense of majority?
I, I, I think so. I.
The conditional use is gone.
I, I think Mary, in Mary's motion, I think she said that, uh, you, you just wanted more specificity about the outfitting. Was that correct? I think that's how I read it. Okay. All right. So now we're on to, uh, D, um, and that is the, uh, I, I'm looking at your screen, Amy. It's, it's.
Give me a second. So, um, this is for a proposal to amend the land use code to change the density in the highway commercial zone from a maximum density of eighteen units per acre to five units per acre. Um, and then, uh, there were also proposals to change a number of, um, standards for a, a number of non-residential zones. So front yard set, bad lot with things like that. So there was, it was sort of twofold. Um, so the, the planning commission, uh, forwarded an unfavorable recommendation to the county commission. And it was sort of in, in two parts. So they, um, as far as decreasing the density in highway commercial, um, they felt that they could not approve, uh, of any changes to the HC zone at this time. The highway commercial is one of the only areas in the county that allows multifamily residential. The PC felt that this proposed revision to decrease the density in highway commercial should go hand in hand with the proposal to increase density in other zones and other areas. The PC referred to public comments and workshops on the pending land use element and future land use map. The public requested neighborhood commercial or mixed use nodes in different areas of the county that would also permit higher density. The PC questioned if perhaps the county commission planned to include a strategy to incentivize increasing the new lower minimum density in highway commercial for some kind of affordable or workforce housing. The PC felt that this should be proposed concurrently with the revision to decrease density. So, um, there was the reasons for their unfavorable motion, and they also said that they would not, uh, change anything in this, um, residential dimensional standards in non-residential districts. So they voted, uh, against any changes to this table and any change to the density in highway commercial. So, um, you've, you've received a number of comments. You've heard comments from various public about, um, where else would this density go? It's the only zone that allows multifamily residential. Um, so I will, I will open it up.
Okay. And first I'll say that it's also if you're following along in your packet, what is it? Stephen is, uh, you have to.
Draft, port and supply design HC.
Yeah, um, I apologize again, um.
It's, it's okay. I'm just.
Why it says lot design, I think because it's referring to the table five dot, five dot three, where there were some proposals to change standards in the lots.
And I'm just letting people know if they, if they're looking at their packets, just, uh, where, where that is. Kevin?
So I, yeah, I'm in favor of some of what you said. I, I think way this was originally proposed by Lisa was as a two-step process where we do the reduction of base density and then sometimes subsequently we offer other zones that would allow how higher density, like thirty units per acre, um, you've seen those. Those have been for us before, um. I do, I, I agree that it makes sense to make, do both of those at the same time. I think it's kind of difficult for the public to understand the two-step process. Um, so I, I would be in favor. I, I won't be pushing right now, but I, I would be in favor postponing this, but hopefully, you know, well before the hundred eighty days, it comes back for us together with, uh, higher density opt-in zones. And maybe also some provisions about preserving highway franchise for commercial uses required than any residential use highway commercial zones, the back of the lot, so that we don't have this. Acres for other commercial uses.
Thanks. Uh, Mike?
Two part. Just so you know. Uh, first part, uh, no one's doing this right now. We should be incentivizing both highway commercial and the hopeful residential zones and increasing density now. There's no homes being built now. Or they're above highway commercial. There's, there's no one doing it right now. That's a, a future argument that we need to have. Uh, we should be incentivizing, uh, apartment complexes with more than eighteen. Uh, the second part of that is I'd like to make a motion, we deny this. Is that good?
Uh, Trish?
I'll, I'll like finish with your, with your, with your motion and then, and, and then I'll come in.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you had finished, Mike.
Yeah, uh, I'd like to make a motion, we deny this, following, uh, planning commissions recommendations.
Okay, um, so motion to deny from Commissioner McCurdy, motion, uh, seconded by Commissioner Winfield. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, there's nothing about this entire thing that should even be on the agenda. This, this is a waste of time. To vote for this is a vote against housing across this county. And there's no reason to postpone this. This needs to go away. This is not helping housing. And that's the number one issue in this county for all of us. Every one of us have stated it. Some of us have it on their election campaigns. This is an issue. This is a housing issue in this county. And there's no reason whatsoever to be even pushing this forward unless it's an agenda. Somebody has an agenda to push this. This is a down zone to people's property. This is a down zone to people's property that we'd like to utilize in the future, and this makes no sense whatsoever. I can't even imagine how we could come up with this and then say that we want more housing and moat for our workforce. Can't do it.
Go ahead, Trish.
I'm in, I'm in favor of denying this. But I think in the future, we need to think outside the box. And if, how do we provide those incentives? Cause here's the reality. This idea that just opening up development will produce housing. It'll produce housing, but it's not going to produce workforce or affordable housing. It'll produce housing. Sage Creek is a good example. Rim Village is a good example. We've given that density and it got filled up with second homeowners. And there's some, there's some full-time residents there. Don't get me wrong. But how do we just be creative in the future that we can produce workforce housing? Maybe it's we incentivize because we cover the impact fees, right? So something along the line. I think the, the future is, and there's plenty of research showing this with gateway communities. We have to be creative to produce that type of housing because, and understandably, a developer is not just going to do it out of their goodwill. You know, people are trying to maximize the profit that they have, that, that, you know, that they have within that land or that, that value that they have within the land. So that's all I'm saying. Like, I'm fine with denying this, but we continue as a county, we have to be creative because in a gateway community, just opening up development, it'll get filled in with second homeowners, period. Airbnb is, we still allowed it. So we have to be creative in the future and come up with creative solutions to produce that housing. And, and we have, you know, we, Royal Crossing is a great example. It's out there. We're doing it, but we need to continue to look at other, other ways to do it.
One, we don't allow Airbnb.
I know, we don't. I know you. I, I think I said that, but I know we don't. I know.
Just want to clear that up.
Good. I mean, that.
Kevin, it's a good, it's a good change, right?
Yeah, I, well, I guess we all agree this is about housing, affordable housing. But I think the difference is just leaving the zoning as it is, denying this is a terrible way to get that. And we know that from experience. I think Trish mentioned some examples. Sage, whatever it is, you know, good village, if we allow high density development with no restrictions, we get a lot of expensive housing. And, you know, we don't need to learn that lesson. We're, we're getting year after year, we've seen it in city limits, we've seen it out, out in the valley. So, you know, the, so, you know, what can we do instead? It doesn't have to be super creative. You know, these are ideas that are tried and true, tried and spouted. Yeah, one, one thing we can't do. A logical thing to say, okay, the base zoning is you can build thirty units an acre, but X percent of them has to be. State legislature has told us, can't do that way directly. Station, state legislature has left open another pathway, which is you can have opt-ins or HDHO, like, you know, so we can start out with a base zoning that's low density. And a lot of people said, yes, you can have thirty units an acre, but some of them have to be. That is allowed. And I think, what, you know, I'd be in favor of, it isn't just denying this and forgetting about it altogether. I'd be there postponing, hoping that it comes back together with the opt-in zones, which was, you know, the plan all along. Except now it would happen in the same year, in rather than two separate years. I, I think that makes a ton of sense. You know, I, um, at the open house for the, um, future land use plan, I talked with Tom Settington, who's a consultant, and he's also the former planning director of Park City, Summit County. He, he volunteered. He thought that was a very smart idea to do what we're doing with this thing, you know, that used to be, this city and then allow people to get it back or even part of it. Sounds great, but I said, oh, we're going to get affordable housing. Can we just throw out density without restrictions? We've seen what happens. Lots of high-end homes and you know, I, I think things are out of balance. We need, we need to put our whole scales.
Uh, Bill?
I, um, I disagree with the analogy that we've got zones. The HDHO is the largest failure, failure to ever come out of this county. It has not created housing in this county to any degree whatsoever. And we can bring in all kinds of people that are trying to make it work. It's a failure. So we can't use HDHO as an example of how to have housing in Grand County. What we can do is open up the doors and incentivize for affordable housing. Don't restrict. Give them more. It's okay. They've already got eighteen. So make it. You're thirty. I think that's a great idea. But then ask them to have the remainder of those go to affordable housing or to use the life tech programs. Mary and I, I don't remember, maybe Jacques or Mike, we all witnessed some of that in Salt Lake. There's ways to do it, but none of them are by restricting. And the worst part of all this is that you're asking property owners to take a cut. You're saying that my property that is right now worth, pick whatever number you want, a hundred thousand dollars. But when you're done with it, it's worth fifty thousand. Um, please, can I sign up for that? I, I'm, nobody wants that. Nobody. It, it makes no sense.
Uh, Mike?
I actually love the, uh, uh, the restrictions there, but that would be a different entirety of proposal. Uh, the locking it up now without clear definitions of, hey, if you were going to build eighteen homes, you can build thirty if you label the rest for, uh, workforce housing. I really think those clear definitions would, would one hundred percent get me on board with this. Uh, uh, because it gives us a, a say in if you're going to build workforce housing. Uh, I understand your argument, but any restriction is still a restriction right now. Not to mention what Bill just said, you'd be reducing land values directly. Uh, I, I mean, in a, in a swing of a pen stroke, we'd be reducing, uh, current landowners' values. But I would one hundred percent support, uh, your previous statement on, on. You could build up to fifty homes if forty of them are, uh, workforce housing. That, that's a genius idea.
Uh, so that's kind of what postponing would do, would be kicking it back and discussing those type of deals. Okay. So we have a motion on the table to deny that, that you presented. Do you want to amend your motion or?
Hmm, I, I want to. I would like to flat deny on the motion part. I'd also like to direct staff after that a discussion. I, I'd like a new after, okay, future land use plan, after that, I would really like that looked at.
Yeah, Mary, go ahead.
My concern about that, I, I see what you're saying is that we, we learned that when we moratorium on bed breakfast and overnight brownouts was that everybody that was vested got to go ahead and do it. And so if we maintain this as it is, then yes, we might get housing and such, but there's a great, there's a larger possibility that the type of housing we would get would be not the ones that are going to support the locals. Because they would be vested. And so even if we fixed it later, because of their being invested in it, um, they would get to do it anyway. But if we postpone it and work on it, then no one can get vested.
And just to speak to the vesting that you're talking about, just to remind her that we are in this hundred and eighty days that the county commission passed. So if some, if you were to deny it or postpone it, if an application is to come in during that time, again, they're going to be subject to whatever changes are made to this.
Even if that's denied.
Correct. Because if it's denied, the current code, if it's denied, the current code stands.
That's what I mean.
So if someone were to come in with an application with the maximum density of eighteen dwelling units right now, um, that current code stands. If any changes are made to this section during that hundred and eighty days, that applicant will be subject to whatever those changes are.
Right.
Just like we discussed earlier. So whether you postpone or deny, they're still going to be subject to the current code as it stands right now for their, when they submit their application. But if we change anything to this section of the code, it will, they will have to amend their application to reflect the changes. And they will not be vested. They are not vested during the hundred and eighty days.
So my understanding is different. I, I think, you know, the start of the hundred and eighty days, we, we said, hey, one of the things we might change or might not would be this density in the highway commercial zone. If we just wrote it down and, and don't tell staff that we're interested in working on it further, you know, then I, I think that kind of kills it. And then someone comes up with an application, I, I would think it should be approved. You know, that because, you know, we've already said that we're, we're no longer working to amend the land use code because we voted in favor of Mike's motion, which is flat deny this. On the other hand, what we've done in the other three is two out of the other three, um, they say we're postponing action, like we're still thinking about it. We still do want to make this change. We just want to do it in a different way, maybe. So that, to me, that's the difference between postponement and denial. Postponement is giving a very clear signal on the record that we're still working on this part of the land use code and we hope to make a change within a hundred and eighty days. I think denial, this says, okay, we're done with this. We're not going to do it.
Right.
I, 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 I think that makes sense.
Yeah, that's like.
It gives, it gives a clear indication that the, that we had had that particular discussion during the hundred and eighty day period we were supposed to be amending, and then we made, uh, an active decision to deny.
Yeah.
So I think that that could be the argument that could be closed.
Yeah, so that's why I don't, I mean, I, I don't think we should pass this tonight. I agree with you about that. But I, I, I think we should continue to work, to work on it in ways that we discussed. So that's why I would say postpone rather.
I, and I'd agree with, I, I'd agree with that too. I think, I think it, yeah. Prefer postponement. Yeah. Go ahead, Mike.
The second part of the argument is, uh, we, we've already sent out, uh, commercial tax rates, uh, for the year. Are we going to hand in hand in, uh, reducing their land's, uh, value? Uh, do a reassessment on their land and lower their taxes retroactively? Because their land's worth more now or worth less? Are we going to hand in hand with an assessor to reassess at a lower value because we know it's not worth as much?
Wouldn't do the assessment now. It's, we wouldn't do the assessment for four more years. Now, the assessments are done on an annual, well. Okay, it should, it should be done on an annual basis and it's done that period of time. It doesn't matter subsequent changes.
So should we, how do you guys, do you want to handle this by, should we, should I just call for a vote on the original motion?
I'll, I'll just offer an amendment. So I, I, I move that we amend the motion to read that we postpone, um, action on. um, action on this city reduction and that we ask planning staff to, to bring it back before us in some reasonable amount of time. Not specific amount of time. Um, that, you know, coupling it with some opt-in zones that would allow higher density housing together with a workforce and affordable.
Second. Okay. I was fast on that. All right. I'll call for a vote to amend the original motion to postpone. All those in favor of the, uh, men, the amend, uh, the motion to amend the original motion. Raise your hands. All opposed. Okay. So that passes four to two with Commissioners Winfield and McCurdy in opposition and Commissioner Hadeen. Uh, abstaining. So now the new motion on the table is to postpone with the conditions that, uh, Kevin stated in his, uh, motion to amend. And, uh, so yeah, well, that, yeah, that's a motion. So we'll vote on that. And, and I agree, I'm absolutely not against housing of any sort, but I think, I think at some point, housing does have to be incentivized or, uh, it would be the best way to go. So housing needs to be workforce housing. It needs to be clear that it's for affordable housing, for workforce housing, for housing for people who, uh, could afford to live and work in Grand County. So the motion is to postpone, um, all those in favor of the motion to postpone, raise your hands. All opposed. Standing again. Okay. So the motion to postpone carries, uh, Commissioners Winfield and McCurdy in opposition and Commissioner Hadeen. Uh, is abstaining. So, all right.
Good luck with all the work we just put up.
Thank you.
And we are finished with agenda item six and we now are on to agenda item seven, twenty twenty-three TRT expenditure report. And this one is, uh, Clerk Whitick.
This is a report. I used a template provided by the state attorney's office. The code section related to this report is referenced at the top of it. Um, as you can see, the out of state figures aren't included in this, um, in this report as currently drafted. I don't think it's at all appropriate, inappropriate um, to submit an amended report. Uh, that's information, uh, regarding out of state versus in-state that I can't look at an expense ledger and determine, and it's not information that I was able to get, uh, for the preparation of this report. As you, as you'll note, uh, as you'll see, there's several footnotes that you can see on the bottom, that are referenced in the bottom of page two. Uh, that allude to, um, pending actions related to ongoing conversation between the commission and the state attorney's office. That could result in those numbers, uh, being different. However, some, you know, in the case of footnotes four and five, those were, would be recorded, um, on the twenty twenty-four report. However, if those, you know, hopefully those conversations can reach, reach a conclusion sooner than later. And perhaps an amended reports, um, can make, make specific references to what adjustments actually end up being made. I think that that's all I have to say about this. It's, um, you know, I want to send it off tonight. And I, I, you know, I, I would welcome a motion that alludes to a potential amended submission at a later date. Uh, you know, a motion to approve the report as presented with the understanding that a, that an amended report may be submitted at a later date is, is a, is a possibility for you to consider.
Great. Thank you, Gabe. Mary?
I make a motion to approve, uh, twenty twenty-three TRP, TRCC expenditure report as presented. The understanding that it may be amended or changed in, in future.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion on the table from Commissioner McGann, a second from Commissioner Hadeen. Any further discussion?
Those amendments, if they happen, would come back before us.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Great. Thank you. All right. Anything else for Gabe on this one? All right. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you for that, Dean.
All right, uh, Mary?
I make the mo- motion that we move into closed session to talk, to discuss pending or reasonable intimate litigation and collective bargaining.
Yes, we.
We've got part reading.
Oh.
And as a family.
Yeah. Okay, uh, do I get a second on that? Thanks, Bill. All right. Motion to go into closed session. Commissioner McGann, second from Commissioner Winfield. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously. We will now go into closed session. Thank you.
Yo, you're okay. How was the chair?
Amazing.
Good. Next time we'll have an ottoman.